All right, we are reconvening from yesterday afternoon. So we're going to start out with first with our planning is on.
Yes, sir.
The floor is yours, sir.
All right. For my budget this year, our total proposed budget at the moment is 891,598. After taking out salaries, longevity, Medicaid, Medicare, retirement, all the group insurance and cafeteria contributions, that leaves us with $109,272 for just to operate throughout the year. So as we start after that, if you want to, we can start with line item 5213, which is uniforms. I don't know, do you want to go from what was currently budgeted to what I'm proposing, or how do you all want to go through the list?
Would you?
Okay, so we're...
David Norris. Great.
I would just give us an overview of where your department is and offer us an idea of where you actually cut your budget, where the cuts have come from, and then provide us maybe with some ideas of how you could possibly provide additional cuts, or if that would even be possible, and then maybe let us know what your biggest concerns are about your department.
Okay.
And maybe even...
Let's sit out the proposal too that you proposed.
And then give us an idea of where you want to be at in the next say five years, where you see your biggest department being at in the next five.
Okay.
We're being on continuously and trying to look for what you got.
Yeah, well, we continue to want to grow and ensure code compliance and safety to community is our main aspect. Far as cuts, I've kind of gone through every line item and pretty much just about everyone has had to cut some. We don't have really any major line items other than contracted services, which is probably our biggest one. And that is for our software system and contracting with MidCarolina. And I think we put in some money in that for cleanup services if we have to next year for any...
What exactly does MidCarolina do for you?
They, with planning is on, they conduct some of the site plans and overview of those from the ship.
Are they helpful, or do you think they provide you with the resources you need?
Yes, sir. Yeah, very helpful. Probably after that, our next biggest item that we would need is for continuing it. Right now, our department, we have a staff of four inspectors, me included, and one of them, Robbie, is fully certified. He has level threes in all four trades. The rest of us, we're pretty much on probationers. So we got a lot of expenses far as going to classes and that kind of thing. I got budgeted $9,000 for travel. Roughly, we're looking about $1,000 or so per, you know, getting hotels and travel for a class. So that limits us about two classes per year for the other inspectors. So that's probably our other biggest thing that we have to be concerned about. Other than that is just fuel and service for our vehicles. And our cell phone and office phones is really our main supplies and our office supplies. Other than that, our budget is pretty much all we got to cover. I do have 4,500 set aside for new code books. They're supposed to come out with the 2024 code books this coming year. They have been delayed, but each set of code books roughly is around $850 per set. We have positions for five inspectors, so that would push around $4,500 to get the updated code books when they come out. As far as where I see ourselves in the future, I would like to get more, I think we need a little more personnel in the office as far as handling our workload.
You have a number for that?
Sir?
What number?
Number for...
How many more people?
I would say just one for upfront in the office. Currently, we have two positions. Our inspection department is covering roughly, we've got 60,000 people in the county, and I got a little note here. And I was just basing off another county. So Pender, basing off their population, they serve, they have 70,000, we're at 60, so we're pretty close in population there. They have a director, five inspectors, three permit techs, and one customer service manager. So we're pretty close on that as far as the director. We have a position for five inspectors, and we technically have two permit techs. And we get a little overloaded on emails and calls. We don't have a whole lot of walk-in traffic, but keeping up with phone calls and responding back to them, voicemails and emails is our biggest problem upfront. I think we have plenty of inspectors to cover the workload as inspectors, just foreseeing that we all get our certifications and are fully certified on inspecting.
Have any of your fees gone up?
Yes, we have proposed some fee increases. Our residential fees, most of the permits are $75 currently. I've just proposed to bring them up to 80, which is a $5 increase on that. And the other fees, like new construction stuff, is based off square footage. Building right now is 25 cents a square foot. I just proposed to go up 5 cent, which will be 30. Plumbing, electrical, mechanical, they're 15 cent, and I've just proposed to go up 20 cent. So just a 5 cent increase on the permits that are based off square footage. Commercial fees, most of them are like $100 permits, and I've just left those the same. No increase on that.
Is that going to be enough to help you in that regard?
Yes, yes, ma'am. From what I've figured on that, it's going to get us pretty close to breaking even on our costs. I think it's a whole lot better than it was last year. I believe we figure about $80,000, you know, to be in running even.
I'm going to step outside to know one here. I see you've got a vehicle in your capital outlay.
We, I took that off.
You took it off?
It was part of our, the missed keys, and just one of the things we missed.
I was just going to ask if it was a suitable vehicle that would address the emergency operations, because I know you have different duties during EOC. I don't want to have a low-level truck, and we need something that can pull something.
No.
I need to make sure it can address the challenges that you may have in the future, but that's beside the point.
Devin, I've been asking everybody, if we had to cut another 1% or 2% out of your budget, how would you do it? 1% or 2% would be $9,000 to $18,000 for you. Where would that come from?
There's a few items that we could, I think we could cut back on. Most, like I said, our biggest item is contracted services. We've got it at 55,000 right now. Currently, so far, we've used 30,000 of it, and from the years past, we're normally running to 40,000 to $45,000 in contracted services. So, like I said, I know we added extra 10 for, if it's necessary to clean up a site or something this coming year.
Let's explain that, though. If we go out and we cite trash alongside the road, or cite, actually not trash alongside the road, excuse me, this is like the trailer park, they have the big dump at the trailer park. And we cite them, and they don't clean it up, then we have to have the money to clean it up, and then we levy, we put a lien against their property and levy the cost of the cleanup that we had to pay for against their property. So that, for you to do that, you have to pay for the cleanup in advance. So that $10,000 is to pay for cleanups that we will then levy against the property owners.
Devin, I mean, since it sounds like you're running that fairly efficiently, we did provide a $1,500 increase to veteran services yesterday so that Ms. Amnos could go to her annual convention. Could we reduce your contract services by 1,500 to offset her increase?
Yes, sir. Yeah, I don't think that would cause any issue on that.
Let's do that, if that's okay with the line item.
Yeah.
And Devin, I hear it doesn't hurt him on that cleanup, and hopefully we don't have any...
Yeah.
Devin, another thing, I know you were saying that you may need more people, and I appreciate that need, and I realize the county is growing, and you probably do have a big workload, but I would like you to consider the fact that the employees aren't getting a colon this year.
Yeah.
And one thing that's going to help us be able to get a colon next year is if we can keep the employee headcount at a bare minimum, because the more employees you have, the more expensive it becomes to give raises.
Yeah, and that's our salary is our biggest expense.
Yeah.
So I agree. I mean, that's just the only thing that I see that would be helpful, but I mean, we do a good job of what we got.
Yeah, and you are now leaving straight from home and going to your first call in the morning instead of coming into office, I think was what Mr. Hudson had indicated a few months back.
Yeah.
And that's helping you out?
Yes, sir.
Good. Thank you for making that adjustment.
Yeah.
And I want to commend you guys for all working together to give us a, what we call a one-stop stop as we're moving forward. I don't think you, y'all realize how much that's helping a lot of people out in the community and providing a benefit of a service, and that's what we're in. I mean, we are, as the county employees and all, everybody's a service. And as going forward, helps to kind of make people feel appreciated for their businesses that work within the county, and I do appreciate it. But with that said, I know that we're, you said you may need a potential of a person, but as we put those departments together, are we going to be able to cross-train those people that where that person, a front desk person can handle some of these issues?
And that will be very beneficial, and I know when we, me and Mr. Hudson talked about doing that, I agree, and I think that's a great idea. And hopefully, once we all get over and all...
Get warm and busy?
Yeah, and all on the same course counter, that'll just come naturally to help each other and, you know...
But it's got to come naturally to environmental health, too.
I've talked with them, yeah.
So, yeah, I think that's a, I think that's a great idea to try to make that one-stop shop. Maybe a little, few bumps in the road to get going, but I believe, like I said, once everybody gets settled in, and I think it'll come naturally to cross-train and for everybody upfront.
That's what we're looking for. I think we're giving a big benefit for this county, for your department, and for us as far as hiring and maintaining good people there to work with.
And that's what I've explained to my staff. I said, it's not really, you doing an environmental's job or learning exactly what they do, but just having to, the basic knowledge of what their processes are if somebody's out, just to be able to fill somebody in if they, if they walk in, just give them that assistance they need to follow next step. You don't necessarily have to know exactly what they do, but just have an idea to help that customer if they come in.
Customer service.
Yeah.
Mr. Hudson, could you leave a note for Mr. Van? And I hope the board agree with it, they need to set up some cross-training days where all those departments can take like a half a day, just however many days they do it, a half a day here, a half a day there, and cross-train one another, so they understand to help make this a more, with the board, see any advantage of that, yes or no?
Yes, yes. That would be helpful. Would help you guys, I mean, your department going in there.
Yeah, it'd be nice just to be able to designate some time, no interruptions, to talk with the other department and...
Because what we feel like as a board, and I'm going to say this as a board, the biggest thing that's been missed out with this county is having things left. If someone leaves, they leave with everything they have, and the next person comes, is blind, we don't want that ever happening again.
Oh, yeah.
And I want, we want every department to have someone that they feel comfortable coming up behind them, that if you're sick, or you don't ever know, you can help up, we're going, some of us are getting on up in age a little bit, and we got elderly people that we're having to look after, and I think you see a dog ahead of you. But I mean, there's things that people have to be out of place, and I don't want any service to ever stop or...
Well, I can definitely understand that. I've felt that coming into this role. I've come into it blind, and a big, big learning curve.
Right.
And I'm still on that curve, so it is all...
How long have you been the department head?
Officially, August of last year was official, yeah. Not very long.
That's a lot.
And how long were you in the planning, the planning and inspections prior to being elevated as a department head?
None. Zero. Zero. I can tell you about the water system.
Do you enjoy your position?
Yeah, it's challenging. There are some days I think, what was I thinking? But it's good, yeah.
I have a question.
Please keep it up.
You...
I was just saying, please keep it up.
You were talking about the trash situation. Does that mean like, if I had my yard trashed, and my neighbors was complaining about it, what would you do in that situation?
On a situation like that, somebody calls in a complaint, we'd go out and do a site visit, address what the situation is. I think right now, we would be more concerned if it's a life safety issue, any health hazard, and fully address it then, you know, send out a notice of violation. If it's just a few bags of trash you got thrown over to the side of the yard, and it's not causing any kind of threat or health issues, you know, I would ask to clean it up, you know, just, there's probably really nothing we can forcefully enforce just on something minor like that. I think, you know, it'd have to be a major issue, health concern or safety concern to send out an NOV and pursue it civilly.
What I'm saying is piles of trash, it's not one or two bags.
Yeah.
Now, this trailer park that we got complaints about, it was ridiculous.
It's, yeah, that's...
Piles and piles and piles. Is there any way we can let, like, the one that only trailer park know that they're going to be fine?
Oh, yeah, that's what, we sent them an NOV, a notice of violation, yes, ma'am. And that states the penalties, you know, what its charges are, you know, give them a certain amount of time to make progress on cleaning it up. And if they don't meet that deadline, then you get a second violation, and that's whenever fees are implemented and they're per day.
That's great.
But if they just completely ignore it, eventually it falls to the county to clean it up.
Yeah, and that's where...
Exactly, that's what I was going to say.
Yeah.
How much are, how much are the fees, how much are we charging? Because I know that's bad, not an NOV order.
The penalties per day.
Penalties.
I think it starts out as $100 per day, and then the second one, I think, goes up to 200, and I won't say the third is 500 per day, I believe.
Does that get turned over to the tax office as a lien on the property?
Yes, it can eventually get turned over to that.
To the tax office or to some other...
Would be to the tax office, correct?
Yes, there's multiple avenues that you can go about enforcing it, but yeah, tax office would be one of them, it could be a lien.
I'm glad we have that in place, because this is going to have our tenants, because it's not fair for them to sit up in a trash pile like they have them do, so, because I've got a lot of complaints, and I go out and look at it and see, and it's nobody's trapped a little bit like that.
Yeah, I don't, I don't know how it would go about to do this, but I think one other thing that might would help on a situation like that is to establish a minimum housing ordinance, because the county doesn't have one.
And that would require enforcement as well and personnel.
Yes, and that...
So you're talking about...
More personnel.
Personnel, and MidCarolina's can't help with that.
Yeah, so, but that's just a, just a thought. Like I said, it...
This is a good start.
Yeah, it is.
We had nothing.
Yeah.
Just a good start.
Yeah, yeah, we, I mean, we got a, we got a good thing in place, and I think if we focus on the bigger issues that are, you know, like the trailer park, those kind of things, we can handle that.
Yeah, I've told a lot of people about contacting you all to get some help, and one of the persons emailed me with pictures of how they cleaned it, and that's, that was great.
Thank you, Devin, for offering up another $1,500 to help offset the increase to veteran services.
Big help, thank you, sir. Any more questions?
Appreciate your outline and your attitude for this as well.
Yes, thank you.
I think you got 30.
Well, I didn't get 30, and I did agree, so it's a challenge, but I appreciate y'all, and I think y'all was giving me the opportunity to take this role, too, so.
Yeah. Thank you, Devin.
All right, y'all have a good day.
I'll be.
Chairman, we've got the Agri Expo Center up next.
All right.
Good morning, commissioners. I just want to thank you all for taking the time to meet with us. I also have updated sheets of the cover of my budget. Thank you.
All right, y'all ready?
Yeah.
Okay. I'll dive right in.
All right, so, so far for this coming up budget of the '25-'26 budget, I have cut 185,000 from the original asking amount, actually from the previous year to this year, it's 185,000. This year, it's 136,000 from my original asking amount of the amount that I have cut. I will say the majority of that has come from the contracted services line item. That was largely our full-time contracted services janitor position. That was the grass cutting. We are doing that in-house with the Parks and Recreation Department, and that is also our weekly mat cleaning with all of the mats that we have at the facility to turn those over for, for new clients in the building, and that's through Centos. That was a, that was the majority of my budget cuts. The first go-round, the second go-round, I dove in, the second and third go-round, I dove in deeper to some of the subscriptions, like to the Sampson Independent, our media, our music that we offer for clients to use for free. That's not necessarily used a whole lot, but we have cut that out of the budget. I have also cut all of my travel. You will see that we have a series called Class Acts that we offer to our school systems for free. That gives a chance for all students to experience performing arts free of charge. As I know most of you are aware, not all children get that opportunity, and we offer that to them once a year for a full week. And so that is actually all, as you can see in your packet, that is all discretionary funding. That is funded through sponsors only, small businesses, large businesses in our community sponsor that for us, so that's no county funding. But I, with that being said, most of the conferences that I attend are going to conferences that have showcases where I can bring those acts in for the students. I've been to two of those since being in this, well, actually, one since being in this position, and one right before I took over as the director to kind of get my feet wet. I've cut that out of the budget along with going down each line item of, like our departmental supplies, our office supplies, how many cases of trash can liners, toilet paper, paper towels. I've been very thorough with my budget as to what I think realistically we can sustain for the next fiscal year. So that is where we're at with what we've done so far.
Where do you look at Expo Center in the next, say, five, six years?
What's your... I have ideas.
That's good.
I do know that one of your goals was to make the Expo Center more self-sustainable. I think that that takes time, for one. I don't think that that can happen realistically over the next two to three years, but I think we can get very close, and especially lessen the amount of general fund that comes to my department in the next five years. By doing so, maybe tagging along with Class Acts, adding in a few more performances for the public during the time that we have the risers in, because that is an additional expense. It's about $4,000 to put those risers in and out of the facility. But adding on to that throughout the year, giving the public more things to do and involving them in the Expo Center could potentially help, help bring more income in. Sometimes, though, it takes money to make money, so there are risk factors in that, but I think it's definitely something that we could do in the next five, six years.
I know you used to, some years ago, let people buy tickets prior to what shows were being done. Do you think that would increase your income, and tickets would already be sold?
Yeah, mhm. So there were season tickets. I was not here during the time. That was, I think that that, it was 2008, I believe, 2008 or 2009, when that was cut out from the budget for the Expo Centers. I'm not very familiar with what revenues that brought in. Ray actually knows a bit more about that. I've had several conversations to see if that's something that I thought we could bring I think it can be doable to a certain extent with selling like preseason shows, but I would be more on a basis of doing, selling tickets as the event comes, trying to make it work that way, but within its own kind of timeframe, because again, the riser cost of putting that in and out of the building is something that has to be considered, and maybe it's something we do for just a season out of the Expo Center, because while we have those in, you're also losing rentals from, from that large, from that large room as well.
The risers, we own the risers, right?
We do. Yeah.
So it's $4,000 to put a rent out?
Mhm, each time.
Are we contracted with the company to do that, or are we using staff?
We are contracted with the company to do that.
Is there anything that any of our public works staff could be cross-trained to do to eliminate some of that cost to help you out?
We talked about that.
Yeah, we have had discussions about that. I just haven't had a formal discussion with Mark Turlington yet.
It's also, it would definitely require training.
Yes.
And it's a more labor-intensive process that you would want, you would not want the risers damaged naturally. Not the public works to try to damage them, but the company that's hired does this repeatedly, and...
It would take, and I'll, in just in a preference, there's usually a crew of 10 to 11 that come, and it takes them four to five hours to put those risers in, and roughly about three and a half to four hours to take them out.
Where are they stored at in the meantime?
We have a building out back that they're stored in, and it takes up the majority of that building, because they're broken down into sections.
Of your 220 events that were held between March, and March 1st last year and this year, how many of those events were events that were held in Prestige Hall but could have easily been held in Heritage Hall?
Not many. I, Mr. Crump, I think we do a really great job when clients come in, we like to know their full scope of their event and what their needs would be, you know, best fit for it. There's advantages and disadvantages of having it in Heritage Hall. We do have the carpet, however, there are poles in there that take up quite a bit of room in that hall. And with the amount of people, if it exceeds a certain amount of people, then we do have to move them over to Prestige Hall, and I try to guide them in a certain way that I think would best fit their, their event and wouldn't put us in jeopardy or them in jeopardy with the amount of people that they have. So it's very few that could go into Heritage Hall, but I would say roughly maybe 10 could be switched, and that's solely based off of some that wanted Heritage Hall and additional cost for events like dancing and stuff where it would be, it would be easier for them to be in Prestige Hall. Those would be the only...
And the only reason I asked this is because I was thinking that if it was possible to drive more events into Heritage Hall, then you could keep the risers in Prestige Hall on a permanent basis.
And that's solely based off of some that wanted Heritage Hall and additional cost for events like dancing and stuff where it would be, it would be easier for them to be in Prestige Hall. Those would be the only.
The only reason I asked is because I was thinking that if it was possible to drive more events into Heritage Hall, then you could keep the risers in Prestige Hall on a permanent basis.
With that being said, you know, Elections has been moved into Heritage B, and that has already cost us some rentals because of the roughly two and a half to three months that they're in the facility for free.
Yeah.
So that costs, you know, that, we lose some, but some people, you know, we just move them over to Prestige Hall if they really want to have their event there.
Yeah, I've never really been all that personally sold on the idea of using Elections for, using the Expo Center for Elections. In Fayetteville, they use, like Highland Presbyterian Church is used as a one-stop voting location.
Yeah.
It'd be nice if we could find a facility like that that we could rent from a church instead of using the Expo Center.
Yeah, I've had talks with Nia and really the main issue is she doesn't, we've locked out certain amounts of time for her to use the facility, but she doesn't necessarily know that she needs all of that time until some of it's a month in advance. It just depends. But we have reserved those times for her, which, again, it loses us out of people renting that part of the facility. And while it is separate, you do have the air wall in between A and B, it doesn't, it doesn't necessarily give that event the privacy nor, nor the noise reduction that it should for a private event to take place.
As we had not talked about, using all of Heritage Hall for that?
Yes, yeah.
Just a portion of it?
Just B. And while we have dance recitals, we've accommodated them because they typically use Heritage Hall for the dancers before, you know, their recital, we've accommodated them in Heritage A, so they'll still be able to utilize that. And then, of course, Night to Shine, as you're familiar with, is still going to utilize the facility, which is great. It's just not everybody wants to use that front part of the room when the back half is being occupied.
I've been asking every, every department head a question, and I have to ask you. If we had to cut one to two percent out of your budget, one percent would be, for you would be less than five thousand dollars, two percent would be less than ten, what would we be able to cut?
Respectfully, I'm not sure that there's anything that more I can do. I have, like I said, with these, I have trimmed it each time as much as I possibly could. I'm partly worried I maybe have trimmed too much, but, but I do promise that with my budget, I have gone over every case of trashcan liners, paper towels, I mean, every line item that I could possibly cut to make the facility be what our clients are paying for, I've cut it.
Commissioner, while she's here, I want to talk about one thing, and that is, I do not believe there's anything else you can cut, but I do believe that, that the number one goal right now of the Expo Center should be to generate additional revenue.
Yeah.
Because among the things that are discretionary, I mean, we've certainly talked a lot about libraries, but your Expo Center is completely discretionary. Of course, it's also a major asset that you have, and if you don't have the Expo Center, that's just one less, that's one less thing that you have in Sampson County. And, and it does attract people with the right events into the county, so that's, that's at least sales tax dollars, even if it's not occupancy tax dollars if they're not staying in hotels. So I do believe that it would be essential to give her any tools that she needs to try to increase revenues. And honestly, I'm just gonna, this is why you pay me, I'm gonna just tell you the truth. I think that we need to examine any time that she's spending in her normal work weeks, and if it's not revenue generating for the Expo Center, which includes her staff of two, then I think the county needs to look at that and pull from it. There's, and I'll tell you, a live after five takes a lot of her time. It's a great event, people in the community go to it, I'm not detracting from that, but it doesn't generate money so much for the Expo Center. And so going through this budget process, I talked to her about this because if I can't find any more cuts, and, and I really couldn't, if I couldn't find any more cuts, there's not a lot more to cut. So my next step was, okay, well, it's just like, it's just like recreation, okay, in the corner. If, if we can't cut, what can we make?
Yeah.
On the library side, you could cut, on the recreation side, we'd increase fees and charges. Here, we've cut all we can, they're a hundred percent discretionary. You don't have to have them at all. But it's a, you've made a huge investment in the center. What can you do then if you can't cut to earn? And the only person, the only person in your whole organization that can devote a hundred percent of their staff time to earning money for the Expo Center is sitting in front of you right now. There's no one else that has that as their job description. So I really do believe that a direction should be given that, that a hundred percent of the director's time should be spent on trying to make that center more self, self-supporting because a year from now, you're going to have other pressures. Like we said, if GFL doesn't work out, COLA, all kinds of other things. And once again, you're, I don't want you to be faced with the same things on the chopping block and you're making a decision, how, how do we sell the Expo Center?
Well, we have made a big investment in the Expo Center and, you know, the Prestige family, for instance, has donated a tremendous amount of money to the county, and I would hate to even consider completely closing the Expo Center. We need to try to make it viable for the county.
I agree.
Do whatever you can to try to spend all your time focused on generating revenue for the Expo Center.
I can do it.
Your plan, just saying, three to five years, say, five years to have it where it's very self-sustainable?
Yeah.
And I like that plan.
I do.
I think it's doable, but it's going to take a lot of time and investment in your expertise or whatever you want to call it, but, I mean, you're going to need to stay at it.
Yeah.
And getting diverted doing it with some other stuff is not what we want to do.
Yes.
We want to focus on what generates, excuse me, generates money so we can maintain that facility.
Yes, and.
That's a good focus to me.
I would, and I'd just like to reiterate, I've only been in this position July first will be a year. I did work previously with Ray Jordan for about a year and a half prior, and I will say there are some things that, you know, he and I have talked about. I've seen that we're changing, increasing some fees where I think that there was money to be made in those little steps with the other time spent trying to bring things to the facility that, A, the public can be engaged in and participate in. It gives them something to do, but it also generates money for the facility.
Well, it's just like what you said, if, if people are coming to the facility and they're, let's say they're coming at, I was at a dance recital for seven hours, but anyway.
Multiple times.
So anyway, there was money being generated, the whole time that I was in town.
Yes.
And my whole family was there, and my grandkids was there, and I could see the outflow that we get from it.
Yeah.
There's more to it than just renting the building and things. It's, it's, there's a pride issue. It's ours, it's something that belongs to the county, it's a pride issue with the family of the Prestiges and all that, what they've invested in it. And I'd like to see it maintained, and I'd like to see you come up with ideas that can help us to stay there.
Yeah.
I think generating sales dollars is a big deal, more so, and it doesn't get considered.
Yeah.
It's not on, it's not on this paper anywhere, and I understand that.
No.
But it is a big thing that comes back to.
It does, it does.
That's what I'm sorry.
Have you considered getting somebody to help you get some acts in?
Yeah, so.
Both of us know.
Yes.
You know how irritating that is.
Yes.
But he's good at what he does. I mean, he can, he can generate good acts into town, but he's not capable of being in charge because he doesn't know, you know.
Yeah.
But he might be helping that area if, I mean, if he can tolerate it.
Yeah.
A lot of people come to his acts now.
Yes, yes, they do. Respectfully, Commissioner Lee, I've spoken with you, you know, about this privately as well as, as well as you, Commissioner Godwin, and I don't know that that's the partnership I'd like to see. I've had conversations elsewhere that I think that might could help with that. The conferences that I typically go to a year opens me up to a broad range of other acts as well and performers as well, but with, with the one individual, I'm not sure that's the route I'd like to go. Open for him bringing his own to do, but just as far as a partnership goes, I also think that if you open one door with that, you open a lot of other doors with that as well, with what we, with what we get hit up with in a weekly timeframe of, we're a nonprofit, can we do this for free? Can we do this for free? And you, across the board, it just has to be a no. That's why we do have our nonprofit rates in place for people that do try to do, you know, good throughout the community, they can get it at a discounted price, but I'd like to see maybe where I can take it first. With maybe partnerships down the road.
Right.
Yeah. But I do agree, he does, he has, he has a really good turnout at his events. Just some of the, some of the disorganizational aspects of that. But yeah, always a possibility, though. Never say no, never say never.
That's right. You don't know where we're going to have to go.
I think she's looking some acts.
Yeah.
One of the biggest questions, I have different events, which is the easiest comparable. They have different events that occur, and people ask, why don't you do more like that locally? I guess it basically comes down to sponsorship and funding and a lot of stuff.
Yeah, it does. And I've actually spoken with her, and it's interesting because they do have some of the acts that I've tried to reach out to, and when I've heard prices back, I often wonder how, and it's through streams of that sort. So it's something that I'm definitely looking into to see what we can bring here with some sponsorship help.
Thank you, ma'am.
Any more questions?
Thank you.
Well, thank you all for your time and for listening to each department head over the next three days.
Thank you, ma'am. Commissioner, you've got emergency services next, and we'll invite the whole emergency services team up. I will note that you do have also here GIS as well, which falls under emergency services. Until, until this year, that's been part of administration. So your county administration budget went from nine twenty-four to five oh four, but your GIS budgetarily went from zero to two fifty-eight. So that's, that's just a shift. It's kind of like what we did with economic development, making sure that economic development is, is taken care of, and it's a little bit more, more clearly shown in the budget. Mr. Sarah?
Commissioners, I have a PowerPoint presentation that if you'd like to see it with some stats and graphs and stuff like that, it's going to take me a minute to set up if you want to take a few minute break or something.
Take a bathroom break.
Bathroom break.
Bio break.
I'm sorry.
May I close that blind right here?
Yes. I put this PowerPoint presentation together and it's split up into the different budgets that we have, so I'm not sure if you want me to go through, like, the first one's going to be nine-one-one. If you want me to stop after nine-one-one and then talk about the budget, we can do that, or I can run through the whole thing and then.
You give us paperwork that way, each one, so when you get to nine-one-one, we'll stop and move.
Okay, all right, very good. And please stop me as I'm going through if you have any questions. I'll give you an overview of emergency services here. We're made up of a bunch of different divisions, nine-one communications, and this is the order that I'm going to present in. Emergency medical services, emergency management, and just to make sure everybody's clear, here in Sampson County, a lot of people call us EMS. EMS is emergency medical services. Emergency management services was a term used by North Carolina and across the country many years ago, but there's a lot of people still in this community that call us EMS, but essentially we're emergency services. When we refer to EMS, that's emergency medical services. Then we have the fire marshal's office, and then, like Mr. Hudson said, geographic information systems or GIS. That was formerly nine-one-one addressing. So with communications, these are our first first responders. We provide nine-one-one services twenty-four seven, three sixty-five. Currently, we're doing emergency medical dispatching, which is life-saving instructions over the phone for people that call that have a medical emergency. Just this year, we've started EFD, which is emergency fire dispatching, and we're basically doing the same thing with those fire calls. When somebody calls and says, I have a fire, we give them instructions what to do or what not to do. And then we anticipate starting EPD, which is emergency police dispatching sometime next year, and that is all grant-funded, so that's no county cost that we do. So Sampson County nine-one communications is the only nine-one-one center in the county. We call it a public safety answering point, and we serve many different functions. EMS, fire, law enforcement, emergency management, but twenty fire departments, fire marshal's office, forestry service, law enforcement, public works, and then other services such as social services, animal control, Red Cross. After business hours, all, all non-emergency calls go through our nine-one-one center, so we've got a lot of administrative calls there as well. Some of the concerns with nine-one-one, we have an increase in call volume, we have increased time for dispatch time for first responders. There's a standard nationwide and statewide that we answer ninety percent of the calls within ten seconds. Unfortunately, we're not meeting that standard. So think about when somebody calls and the phone is ringing for ten seconds, sometimes we, we can't get to that phone because we're so busy. We obviously do the best we can. We have a high turnover rate, it's a stressful job, we have inexperienced staff, half of our staff has less than two years' experience. Shift supervisors, we're unable to adequately supervise, so they're, they're supposed to be supervising our staff, but they're actually working a radio channel and answering the phone because we, we don't have enough staff to do that. And also, we have a lack, lack of training opportunities because of low staffing, so if we want to send somebody to class or take them off the floor to train them, we don't have nobody to backfill them to answer the phones and the radio and so on. Our nine-one-one training officer position was cut, and then we still have some computer monitors in the nine-one-one center that are not working. We've been working with IT and vendors to try to get that resolved, but we still have that problem, it's been two years. So our staffing, we have twenty-two, twenty-two full-time staff, including the manager and system manager as management positions, four supervisors and sixteen telecommunicators. We have a couple part-time staff that are very dedicated, but they have to be dedicated because of the amount of training and certifications they need to have to continue working with us. There's a lot of people part-time that don't want to spend the time with those certifications, so our part-time staff has dropped significantly. What we try to do is, we have four shifts, one supervisor and three telecommunicators, and we try to keep them staffed with four telecommunicators on at any one time. When we fall below that minimum staffing levels, it's going to be at night where maybe we have three, and you'll see in a minute, sometimes two or three o'clock in the morning, there's not a lot going on, we don't necessarily need four dispatchers sitting there. And we're trying to create a peak hour shift, and I'll show you in a graph here in a minute of what I mean. So we have four radio channels, fire EMS, sheriff's department, and Clinton PD. Our dispatchers work those channels, but they also monitor multiple other operational channels if there's something going on in the county, whether it's a fire or, we had the thing at the sheriff's department the other day. So staffing, this is what our staffing looks like. We have four shifts right now, A, B, C, and D, and each one has a supervisor, and just for instance, shift A, our supervisor, has five years' experience, but he was just promoted to supervisor this past year, and that person's training a new hire. Shift D, as the supervisor, has eight years' experience, but she was just promoted last month, so they, they don't have a lot of experience in that supervisory position. You'll see that we have our supervisors training new staff, so we have five new people that we're trying to train. It takes us six months roughly to train them, but you can also see at the bottom, our assistant manager is also training a new hire. We don't have enough people to train our dispatchers, so our administrative person has come out of her office and is not doing administrative work to try to train and get people up to speed. And then on shift D, you can see telecommunicator only has two years of experience, and they're in the process of training a new hire because that's the most experienced person we have to be able to do that, most qualified person. Staff turnover, we have a turnover rate in the last four or five years of thirty percent, and full-time staff is twenty-two percent. So the cost to train a new telecommunicator, and this is about six months of training, nationwide average is fifty-two thousand dollars a year. Our base salary for telecommunicators, thirty-six thousand dollars a year, and that's for entire year, not just six months of training. So we think it might be cost, more cost-effective to raise our salary to try to reduce that retention problem that we have, and we request for a salary increase, but that was not, we didn't receive that, and understandably so. So this goes from two thousand twelve to two thousand twenty-two, and you can see the call volume at nine-one-one. It continues to go up. The blue is nine-one-one calls, the orange is administrative calls, and the gray is a total amount of calls in that time period. Now, it only goes up to two thousand twenty-two because we changed some software, so here's a different. two thousand twenty-two because we changed some software. So here's a different graph just to show you that it continues to to date. So this is two thousand to twenty-four, and those numbers continue to go, continue to increase. This is, this is, it looks complicated, but it's really not. It goes from midnight on the left all the way to midnight on the right-hand side. So you can see at midnight, call volume, and then it starts dipping about three, four o'clock, five o'clock in the morning. And then when people start waking up, it starts going up a little bit. And then you see at five o'clock at night, it's our highest time, and then it starts coming down when you get to midnight. So this is what we call our peak hour. We've tried to create an additional shift to bring people in to work like a nine to nine, nine AM to nine PM, to answer the phones and work extra radio channels. Problem is, we don't have those, that staff to do that. We're hoping that once these people get trained, that maybe we'll be able to put some of those people in that position. But because of the constant turnover, we're, I don't know if we'll ever get there, but that's that's our goal, is to try to have that peak hour shift. So that's just personnel with nine on one. I've got a few slides here about some of our infrastructure concerns. So we have essentially two different radio systems. We have a Viper eight hundred megahertz system that is maintained and paid for by the highway patrol, and that's what we use. Our dispatchers in our nine one center calling the people on the road, the ambulances, the patrol deputies, and that's communication back and forth. And then we have our county VHF and UHF paging system. That's maintained by the county. We have one primary radio tower, and that's in Taylor's Bridge. It, we've had complaints from fire departments that there's a reception problem, that sometimes we'll set off the tones for fire departments to respond, and they never get the message. So that's some safety and liability concerns. We have no redundancy in place. This is our only radio tower. If this radio tower goes down for whatever reason, whether it's a hurricane or tornado, terrorism, or it's just structural failure, we're gonna lose all communications with our first responders to to call them out. Taylor's Bridge Tower is about twenty-three years old. The life expectancy is about twenty-five to thirty years old. It's a six hundred guided, six hundred-foot guided tower, which means there's cables holding the tower up. Just this past year, we found out that we were over the weight limit on this tower. It's overloaded. So we had to reclassify or downgrade this tower from a public safety radio tower to a commercial radio tower. And also, there's been limited maintenance on this radio tower over the previous years. This has since been corrected. So we found some money, and we went out and we hired a company to do a study. And we actually got a second report back from them on Monday, and Cliff and I are reading through it to look for the recommendations. We asked them to prioritize what we needed to do to maintain our paging system, break it down into phases for implementation and costs, so that depending on the cost, we can maybe implement different things, and then make some recommendations. So we hope in the near future, we'll have some solid recommendations, be able to take some action to improve the tower in Taylor's Bridge. I just wanted to mention that we recovered about ninety-one thousand dollars from Piedmont Communications in October of last year. What happened was the county had a contract with Piedmont to maintain and manage that radio tower. That contract was ended in June of twenty-one, right before I came to Sampson County. AT&amp;T Wireless Communications is up on that tower, and we received funding from them, a monthly bill. AT&amp;T didn't know we canceled the bill or canceled the contract with Piedmont, and they continued to send the bills and the payments to Piedmont. We found out that in probably August or September of last year, and we were able to recover that money from Piedmont. So that was ninety-one thousand dollars. The payments now go to our county finance offer office, and we've used that funds that we recovered to pay for that paging study. But we also used that funds, and it was sixty-seven thousand dollars, to do repairs on the tower that needed to be done. So now we're gonna use that money as recurring funds coming in to use to try to maintain that tower. So as soon as we get the recommendations from the paging study and we study that, we're gonna try to implement that. I just want to point out that we have a brand-new, state-of-the-art nine one facility, and we have a infrastructure at the tower that's nearing its life expectancy. And we're only as strong as our weakest link, so we're gonna have to put some money into that. And nothing in the budget right now is there, but I just want to give you guys a heads up that at some point, we're gonna have to pay for that. And we'll hopefully get some grants for it or something, but you know, that's that's down the road a little bit. So just a quick summary on nine on one. It's a fragile system, both personnel-wise and infrastructure-wise. As many of you know, I had to do a presentation in front of the board in September of last year for some mistakes that were made in October with nine one dispatchers. And that, we've tried to make some improvements, but like I said, we lost our training officer, so we've had to step back a little bit from trying to make some of those improvements. Increase in call volume, as you saw with those graphs, decreased dispatch times below the standards, and we have a recruitment retention problem. Like I said, it's a stressful job. They're working hard, but there's constant turnover, and half our staff is less than, has less than two years' experience. So that's nine one one. If you want to spend some time, and if you have some questions for nine one, now in the nine one one budget, there's actually three small budgets. There's communication, there's the tower, and then there's the Fund Fifteen. The Fund Fifteen is completely reimbursed by the North Carolina nine one one board. So that's when we spend money, we get reimbursed for those expenditures. But if you have any questions, any three of those budgets, we'll try to answer them for you.
On the radio systems, moving forward, I'm assuming you're putting together a plan to move forward as upgrading systems going down the road?
Yes, sir.
Is it viable to maintain VHF and UHF, or just convert UHF users over to VHF?
That's that's what the plan initially calls for, and that's what we're gonna study a little bit.
With only EMS, having eight trucks on the road in subtown EMS, and now Clinton coming back, I mean, I don't see trying to maintain two systems, just switch over everything, just have two different frequencies for fire and one for EMS, and just maintain that one VHS system.
I apologize. I didn't introduce some of my staff. I meant to do that. This is Cliff Brown, our nine one manager. Jesse Matthews, our GIS coordinator. Prentice Madgar, our fire marshal. And Eric Herring, our EMS chief. So they'll all get, if you've got questions, you could ask that, but I'm sorry.
I just want, on the tower, what would be the price of a new tower?
It's a thousand foot for a non-guided tower, a thousand dollars a foot for a non-guided tower, and two thousand dollars a foot for a non-guided tower.
Now, the good thing is.
That's a good thing.
The preliminary study is, and we asked them to look at this, Taylor's Bridge Tower is six hundred feet tall. We think we can, when we replace that tower, we think we can get away with maybe a four hundred and fifty-foot tower. So it wouldn't have to be as high. But we're looking at propagation maps, which is basically coverage, and we're looking at in-building coverage. So when a firefighter has a pager like this on their hip, and they're in a store with the concrete and steel, that that message will penetrate that building, so they get that message. So that's what we're looking at right now.
Commissioner, as a side note, our lobbyists that are engaged for us in Raleigh, we've asked them to pursue two million dollars to help our radio infrastructure. And if we're able to go with, because I actually believe what you'll probably end up with is is more than one or two towers. Ideally, you would have, even if you had five hundred or six hundred-foot towers, if you could have three to four five hundred or six hundred-foot towers, supplemented by putting some some repeaters on some water towers for hard-to-reach areas, I think I think that would work. In Onslow, we ended up with an eight hundred megahertz radio system, and we daisy-chained it. So we ended up with five eight hundred megahertz towers daisy-chained, so that if any any loss of one tower, we could still broadcast going around the other way. So it was literally a ring system. And if you can end up with something like that here, that would be the best thing that you could do.
So to piggyback off Mr. Hudson, that's what that's what we are looking at with the VHS system. What we'll do is, our main stuff will be at Taylor's Bridge.
Yeah.
And then we're gonna ask the state to use their back halls of the microwaves they have on Salemburg and Newton Grove. And like Mr. Hudson said, it'd be a complete ring. So if Taylor's Bridge went down.
Right.
And we also include our new tower in the nine one center. So there'll be a complete ring across the county. If one goes down, the one here, if Taylor's Bridge goes down, the one here at our nine one center will cover the southern end of the county.
So if you had, we had to put up a new tower, you would put it up at Taylor's Bridge and take the other tower down?
Yes, sir.
Or you would put your tower up somewhere else and continue to use it?
Yeah, we would discontinue Taylor's Bridge because it's overloaded. Because like he said, we've had to downgrade that tower from a public safety tower to a commercial tower. And we would, you know, dismantle that tower and put a new one up, I guess, kind of beside it.
Yeah.
At a lower footage.
The county, the county doesn't own the Taylor's Bridge Tower. That's owned by the Fire Association?
No, the county owns it. The county owns the tower.
One time.
When it initially come up, yes, there was something. But I think after the tower was built, the county initially took ownership of it.
So in your proposed budget, it's actually had an increase for communications from one point nine million to just over two million. You may have already, if you explain exactly where that increase came from, and I didn't hear you exactly, where exactly is that?
So eighty-nine thousand dollars in the capital outweigh is for a upgrade to our consoles that the state mandates you have to do periodically. And then twenty-seven thousand under dues and subscriptions. In this last couple of months, the state highway patrol has tried to pass in a bill where it's always been free to use the Viper system. But now they're having a hard time maintaining, keeping maintenance and everything up on the Viper system. So they're putting a bill together, and I think it's in there, Mr. Hudson, I don't know more. I think it's still in there. It's not been saying yes or no, but they're looking at charging twenty-five dollars per radio to be on the Viper system.
I do have a little bit of information on that. It is meeting a lot of resistance. So I don't know that it'll pass, but we we budgeted that.
Just in case.
Just in case. If it doesn't pass, that's that's money.
I've been asking every department a question, and I have to ask you, if we had to just pretend that the state passed a law or Donald Trump made an executive order that no taxes can be raised anywhere, and we couldn't raise taxes, how would you be able to operate with what we could provide you at a reduced rate?
I mean, we've pretty much trimmed where I can trim. There's some other things in there that are mandated by the state, like the QA for quality assurance. We have to QA our costs. So that's in there, I think it's like twenty-seven thousand dollars. There's some other things where, let's see.
Respectfully, I don't think we can. And one of the reasons is, is the mistakes that were made in August with our dispatchers. If we don't have qualified dispatchers there, that's when people need help, they call nine one. And if we screw it up, they're not getting the help that they need. So I don't think it would be prudent to do that. And I, at this point, like Cliff said, if we went line by line and tried to cut everything out, and I don't know, without reducing services or people waiting longer for their nine one call to get answered, I don't know if we could do that safely.
I've trimmed everywhere from our, all of our departmental supplies, office supplies. I've reduced some of our training, because we do have a training budget in the Fund Fifteen and communications, because Fund Fifteen will provide or cover some training classes. But there's other classes that we might want to take that are not covered by Fund Fifteen. So that's why we have two training budgets, one in each. But I cut that in half. I cut all of our conferences out, our NINA conference, our APO conference, our Southern Software Conference, who's our CAD vendor, they have a conference every year. The only conference I left in there was our, there's two conferences I have to attend every year to the nine one board. I had to leave them in there because they're mandated.
Ms. Sawyer and to your staff, I just want to commend you on what you do, because I have used you so many times in twenty twenty-one, probably every week I was calling, because there was no way I could have lived with my husband and put him in the car. And I had to call for your services, and you were there to help, help us out. And there's no way that I know that everybody in this county needs to cut, and everybody know that. But one place I don't want to cut is our life savings. So what good would anything else do if you were there? Nothing. It wouldn't help you none. So if you're saying you can't cut and give us the quality services that we deserve, then you can't cut it. I mean, I just couldn't see asking you to do that, knowing that you know that we wouldn't get the services that we're getting now. And our citizens, not only me, but all our citizens deserve that. We deserve it. And I'm just so glad that you were able to maneuver your budget and figure out ways that you can continue to help all the citizens in the county.
Thank you.
My hands go off, because it's not an easy job. I was calling all of them.
I would like to also, I mean, you probably can't answer this question, but I wanted to ask it anyway. What do you attribute the increase in nine one one calls when the county population's really not growing that substantially?
So over the summer, over the summer, summer months, our call volume increases because of our expanding population coming into the county during farm season, and also people traveling back and forth from western part of the state to the coast. So we see influx of calls during the summer because of those two reasons.
I'm gonna take a guess, and I don't know the answer to that, but I just think people don't sometimes know who to call, so they end up calling nine one one.
Yeah.
And they try to get an answer from them. So that's that's probably a lot of those administrative calls. I'll tell you, and it's in my presentation, this past two weeks, we've had two calls for human sewage on the road. Not animal spills, but human sewage. So people don't know who to call, so they call nine one.
It's Monday night.
Yes, sir.
Up in where you work. Yeah, I was in Smithville Chicken and Barbecue, about to go to the town hall meeting, and ran across one of y'all.
Yes.
And a honey dipper in the middle of the road.
My.
Let's just say chicken don't taste the same.
[laughing]
And that's going on outside.
Oh, man. Ms. Sawyer and Ms. Dillon, has it ever been looked at that because of their overturns, a follow-up of those is leaving, just to get a knowledge of how and why that people leave, so?
This is not unique to Sampson County. This is all over the country.
This is nice and wild.
It's a problem of, I think it's salary.
And I understand that.
Yeah, I think it's salary to some degree. I also think it's the stressfulness of the job. Some people sign up. I also think it's a stepping stone, and I'll admit, forty years ago, I started off as a dispatcher, and I started my career there, and then I moved on. So I think a lot of people use that as a stepping stone to find other, find other careers within public safety and emergency services.
Has any came back? Any of the ones that leave, they don't come back?
Not gone to another, like EMS or fire. We've had, I mean, like you said, it was kind of a stepping stone back when I started in oh six. A lot of people were going to Blitt, and they'd go to the sheriff's office or Clinton PD. Some of them, while they were working there, they'd go to paramedic school to be a paramedic, or they'd go to firefight school to be a firefighter.
I did hear that.
Yep.
Back to one thing that you said, and I want to make sure I understand, two years we've had monitors that the vendor and our people have not been able to get straight.
Yes, sir.
Have we paid for that with the vendor on it?
That was paid upfront through the grant, because all that stuff was covered through the nine one one grant. But when that stuff was initially installed, it was not properly checked before. And the issues, we have screens flickering, some turn off by themselves. They can be in the middle of a call, and a screen will go black.
Have we talked with the county attorney about this? Any seeking any legal recourse and then forced them to comply?
I have not, but that's some, that's something we can do.
I mean, it's been two years now. So in this, in my Fund Fifteen budget, I have in there to replace all the computers and monitors. We're going to a different monitor setup, and that's all nine one reimbursable. So I'm changing all computers and all screens.
But we paid for two years worth of product that we've not been able to use.
Well, I mean, it's not, it's not everyone of them. It's maybe this console here has one, and this console over here has one. It's not every one of them.
They've been trying to troubleshoot it. So in the nine one center, each dispatcher has eight computer screens. So one may flicker, and we've tried to troubleshoot it. Was it the monitor itself? Is it the computer that's not strong enough to power all eight screens? And they just haven't been able to, between our IT department and vendors and other outside contractors, haven't been able to figure out the problem.
Not throwing blame, just trying to get you guys the resources.
Yeah, well.
So what my plan is, is we're, so on our CAD screen, so we have a phone screen, and we have a radio screen, and then we have six CAD screens. We'll still have the phone screen and the radio screen, but I'm reducing the amount of screens because I'm going to a forty-nine-inch ultra-wide monitor. So we only have two screens to deal with versus six. So that'll limit how many, how much video card stuff you have to have to run those screens, with only two versus. with only two versus six.
Maybe Mr. Allen can get you some money back, back kind of being helpful there.
Yeah, I would, I would like to entertain that because I don't, I don't, when I'm looking at it as a business also, and business, well, that's not good, because I don't care who they are, they are supposed to honor what they put in, and it don't sound like to me that they fix the problem. I think there should be some, they should be, we should get some cost share back from them to help pay for those other monitors that you're putting in. My, I don't think it would be a big expense in this county to send a letter from my lawyers or whoever. I think they need to know that we are on top of it, and they're not going to just walk away. I don't, I don't agree, don't get me wrong, but I don't, I think they need to be held accountable. If they give us what we thought was supposed to be a viable system, and we're not, we can't use the whole system, well, that's not good. I wouldn't, I wouldn't put up with it in my business, but I'm running trucks and stuff.
And and Chris, well, he kind of spearheaded that back then, and I don't know if far as warranty wise and all that stuff, we'll have to look in that. I guess we'll, you know, talk with Mr. Allen about that, about warranty and all that in the contract.
That'd be good.
Well, thank you. Any further questions?
We'll move on to EMS, emergency medical services. So our emergency medical services is formerly a hybrid system of career and volunteer-based ambulance service. Back in 2021, when I first came to Sampson County, we had six volunteer EMS agencies, and we're currently down to one EMS agency, and that's Sutton Town EMS. Um, a couple of different reasons, lack of volunteerism, not only here in the county, but nationwide, increase in cost and increased mandated training. And those agencies basically just said that we can't do it anymore. So we have a career-based paramedic, which ALS stands for Advanced Life Support, um, we're a provider. We have seven ambulances. Our goal is to have seven ambulances on the road 24/7/365. We did add an additional ambulance in February of '22 after the board approved it in the fall of '21. Currently, we have 53 full-time employees. We do have about 12 to 15 part-time employees, both paramedics and EMTs, that are able to backfill some of those positions when somebody calls out sick or somebody's on vacation. Administratively, we have an EMS chief, assistant chief, and training officer, and then we have three 24-hour shifts. On each of those shifts, we have one supervisor, 15 paramedics, and some of them are advanced emergency medical technicians or basic EMT. Um, and again, seven ambulances and one QRV, which is a quick response vehicle. That's essentially a paramedic in the back of a Tahoe with medical equipment that goes out and tries, um, to get there quickly, um, to provide medical care. And, um, all our ambulances will have at least one paramedic onboard. We try to get two paramedics onboard for our busier stations, um, but that's not always possible. Some are concerns in EMS, increase in call volume. Again, I'll show you some charts with, um, our increase in call volume, increasing response times, increasing transport times. Um, and one of the reasons with the transport times is we're decreasing our transports to our two closest hospitals, Sampson Regional and Betsy Johnson. And the reason is, is that our paramedics do a diagnosis on the patient, and if somebody's having a stroke, we're going to send them to a stroke center. We're not going to go to Sampson Regional. Somebody has trauma, we're going to a trauma center. Somebody's having a heart attack, we're going to a cardiac center, and we're not going, we're going right to definitive care. In fact, um, last week, we sent somebody to Cape Fear, and we bypassed the emergency room and went right to the cath lab, because we're communicating with the hospital with EKGs and reports, and the doctor will say, right to the cath lab. Um, so, um, we're doing, so we're decreasing those transports to closest hospitals. Um, we have increased waiting times, and you'll see a little chart on that with the the emergency rooms. And then, as I said, volunteerism across the country is declining, and here's Sampson County as well. We have, um, our EMS stations, we have Clinton, obviously our new building, we have two ambulances staffed out of there. In Clement, we have our QRV staffed there, and then the rest of, um, the locations, Garland Harrows, Newton Grove, Plainview, and Roseboro, all have one ambulance staffed there. Our stations are are pretty good geographically located, um, in in good locations. In Newton Grove and Garland, we've increased, um, the the living quarters, they were in pretty bad shape. Um, we, that's been addressed. Currently, we're addressing Roseboro. Um, we know we, uh, we were planning on addressing that. They had the fire, so we had to take a step back, but we're we're addressing that, um, as we speak. One of the questions to the board is that in future years, as we address these stations, do we want to rent locations, or do we want to buy locations? We now have a cookie cutter footprint for a a basic EMS station, and as, um, these other places and buildings deteriorate, um, do we want to continue to rent or build? And that's a, that's a question for, um, years to come. Here's an example of our call volume across the county. Every little red dot is an EMS call. You can see in our city centers is where our most volume is, Clinton, um, Otchaville, uh, Plainview, and so on. Um, and down the lower half of the county, we still have a lot of calls down there, not as many, because that's not where our population centers are. Increase in call volume. Here again, from 2012 to 2024, you see an increase in call volume. This is our average response time from 2012 to 2024. That continues to go up. Um, so the big jump in in '21, we we contribute to probably COVID to some degree, but our current response time is 12 minutes and 45 seconds. We would love to to do better with that, um, but it's difficult. As the call volume goes up, um, it it's difficult to to do that. This is a very similar graph to what you saw on 911, and you probably would expect the same. This is from midnight to midnight. Um, and you can see it up far left, as it dips down, 2, 3 o'clock in the morning, 4 o'clock in the morning, we don't have as many EMS calls. And then people start waking up, and we have more EMS calls during the day. And in the evening, it's a slower taper off, because people are still out and about, they're they're visiting friends or or out for the night, and as they go home, that decreases. This is a little graph about transports to, um, hospitals outside of Sampson Regional and Betsy Johnson. And we didn't put all the hospitals on here because it would have been too crowded, but this just gives you an idea that, um, slowly, we're transporting people to other, um, other hospitals, which increases our transport times a little bit. Our average ER wait time, this is very stressful and frustrating for our crews. Again, 2000, 2001 COVID, um, we knew we had problems in the hospital, but those times really haven't come down. So whenever we go to a hospital and they're ready to drop off a patient and transfer that care to the emergency room, they're waiting 45 minutes for that transfer to occur. Some of it is is dialogue with the charge nurse and and making sure the continuation of that patient care. We've talked to Dr. Howerton, we've talked with other hospitals, ER staff, and so on, and we continue to try to battle this, but, and again, this is a nationwide problem as well. We wanted to look at average call, total call volume, um, by base. And you can see the call volume, it's it's slightly going up, but with all our bases, and and this is part of our strategy, and I'll talk about that. We're we're looking to try to improve our efficiency with EMS, and we've created a small internal group to try to look at the data to see how we can improve. And this is just one of the things that, um, that we've looked at. This is a graph for volunteer EMS from 2012 to '21, and this is when a lot of the volunteer EMS agencies started canceling their contracts. And you can see it was going down well before, um, some of those contracts were canceled. And I didn't go to '24 because all we have left is Sutton Town EMS. Staffing and span of control. So span of control is basically how many people can one person effectively manage? In emergency services, that's three to seven with an optimum of five. Currently, each supervise, each supervisor has seven ambulances and a total of 15 employees that they supervise on a daily basis. And that's beyond our span of control to supervise, do evaluations, but also mentor them, because we still have a lot of young paramedics that join our, our service. I just mentioned here, during the interim period, um, when the, my predecessor left and when I came here in July of '21, Mr. Causey opened his door and invited our EMS staff in, and a lot of the EMS staff he talked to said that they wanted more supervision, which sometimes I find that a little hard to believe. You'd think maybe people would want less supervision, but they wanted that more supervision. So, um, as I mentioned, we have seven ambulances on the road 24/7/365. And the supervisor is also doing patient care. So they're specially trained, um, airway medics. We have other paramedics that are too, but not everyone in our service is specially trained in airway medics. So sometimes that supervisor hops in the back of an ambulance, is helping with the treatment of that patient as they're going to Wake Med or Cape Fear. And then, uh, the current, the supervisors all have, also have additional responsibilities of scheduling, if somebody calls out sick and making sure that there's coverage, inventory, uh, maintenance of vehicles and so on. It sort of takes them away from their supervisory, um, duties. Here's just a history of EMS and staffing levels in the county, going back to 2006, so about 20 years. Back then, there was only four ambulances during the day and then four quick response vehicles at night, and that was because the volunteer ambulance corps were strong, and we were able to spread out our crews and have more coverage. That has gone away. In 2012, we lost one admin supervisor position to staff as, uh, another paramedic, and that was before I got here. Um, and in 2024, we did add an assistant EMS chief. So that has helped with some of the logistics a little bit, but, um, maybe not as as much as we had hoped for. Ambulances and mileage, this is something that we struggle with. Um, the top chart or graph there is EMS 1 through EMS 7. We have seven frontline ambulances, and that's the current mileage as of February, when we submitted our budget of of the ambulances. So, um, you can see EMS 2 has 34,000 miles, EMS 6 52,000 miles, but then the other ambulances are over 100,000 miles. And currently, EMS 3 has 262,000 miles as of February. That's concerning to me from a safety standpoint, but one of the reasons EMS 3 has so many miles is that was a spare ambulance. We try to maintain five spare ambulances. Well, we have difficulty doing that as well. The old EMS 3 was wrecked in March of '25. We were hit by a drunk driver. Last week, we found out that they're going to total that ambulance. So to get a new ambulance, it's going to take us, and there's another slide, a year and a half to two years. We are looking at options with a demonstration model, um, that we're going to probably go take a look at, and we're working with Melissa and Mr. Hudson to try to find a little extra money to be able to get another ambulance.
Now.
Yes, yes, and we're going to try to do that now. Um, with the insurance money that we've got, we're going to need a little extra money. We're trying to find that in the budget, um, to be able to get us another ambulance. So then our spares at the bottom here, 220,000 miles, 252, 176. So that the bottom one, 176, um, we just put a front end into that ambulance, um, and and that's costing us $3,000 to $4,000. And at some point, when do we stop trying to repair these ambulances, keep them running on the road? Um, and when we, it's, it's a constant struggle with, um, trying to keep the ambulances running.
Can I ask a question about that?
Sure.
I've been asked this before, actually, since I've been here, and that is, you know, you can, you can replace the ambulance box on the chassis. So how many times are we replacing ambulance box? Are we doing it twice or are we doing it once?
We're trying, so.
Trying twice?
Yeah, so so the manufacturers say not, so basically, the the back of the ambulance, we pick it up off the chassis, put it on another chassis. We we try to do that. So, um, we're currently doing it right now with one.
There now will be remounted.
And then, we, when we get to that point, we ask them to inspect the box, if it's been hit or tweaked or damaged a little bit, they may not be able to do that, but we've done that, I think, three times in the four years I've been here, so.
We can remount, but that's, but we can remount potentially up to twice.
Yeah.
And it's not saying that everything can be remounted twice, but potentially.
Right. So this is where standardization of your fleet is important, um, so that, so that everything matches up. Yeah.
My question comes onto it. A type 3 versus the type 1. Type 3 being the van front ambulance, for those who don't know, and a type 1 being a pickup truck. Would we be better off to convert the type 1 ambulances for the maintenance and repair costs? And I know that when you get to take a van apart and do the stuff that's, you know, becoming a five-person workup, would that help with some maintenance issues on it? And would help with the remount issues?
The remount, I don't think is going to be, uh, much different either way. The type 1, um, is a more expensive vehicle than the type 3. Uh, our trucks are, like you said, the type 3, they're gasoline engines. The only thing that you can get a diesel engine in now is a type 1 vehicle, the truck style type vehicle. It's about $60,000 more than what our type 3 trucks are. So, you know, you, you might get a diesel engine, and a diesel engine lasts a little bit longer, but you've also got a, a, no, an ambulance with 200,000 miles on it, even though your engine may be good, you've got everything else wearing out on the truck, you know? Um, but to answer your question, the type 1 is more expensive than the type 3, so that's why we've kind of wasted up the type 3 right now.
I don't know if there'd be long-term maintenance issues that could be addressed or not, I just ask.
Eric, with with the type 1, they're hired as well, right?
Yes.
So they would not fit in some of our buildings.
They're hired, and we have concerns with some of our buildings, um, uh, two, at least two of our buildings, uh, potentially may not be able to get them in, or if we do, you're only going to have two to three inches of room, you know, if it's fair, is they're taller.
So some, some safety concerns. Um, in 2024, we had 47 documented times that there was no ambulance in service in the entire county. So one thing that we do, and our supervisors do, is we stack calls. So what we mean by that is if we have six ambulances out treating patients and transporting patients, um, we save that seventh ambulance for high priority calls, cardiac, a trauma patient or something like that. If it comes in as a sick call, or if it comes in as somebody has fallen, we don't commit that other ambulance. Um, so the supervisors are doing that, but not including the stacked calls, there was 47 times, um, last year that we did not have an ambulance, um, available in the county. So that, that's concerning from a safety standpoint as well. Our personnel, um, as we have increased call volume, I'm concerned about, um, our crews falling asleep at the wheel, essentially. So I'll give you an example. About three months ago, we had an accident on 403. Um, we, it was a head-on accident. We transported three trauma patients, three separate ambulances to Wake Med. It was a a bad night, and the helicopter weren't flying. They're going lights and sirens to Wake Med, their adrenaline's flowing, they're doing a transfer of the patient at Wake Med, and now they're driving back, and it's 2 o'clock or 3 o'clock in the morning, their adrenaline's starting to come down, and I'm concerned about them falling asleep because they've been up all day. So that's, that's one thing internally we're trying to look at is, is what, how can we try to combat that to prevent that from happening? Um, I'm also concerned that if if they've been up all night, that they're going to administer the the wrong amount of drugs or the wrong type of of medication and make a mistake. And and obviously, we don't want that to happen as well. Um, other concerns, we talked about the ambulances, the order time, if we ordered one today, 18 to 24 months, a year and a half to two years. Currently, in fiscal '23, '24, we ordered three ambulances. None of them have arrived yet. Um, we have two that they keep saying this month or next month, but they've been saying that for several months now, so we're we're waiting, we're hopeful. Um, that third one that we ordered, we don't know where it is, and we don't know where it is in the production line. And then, um, fiscal year '24, '25, we added two additional ambulances, and we're still waiting for those, they say maybe the fall of '26. So it's, it's difficult to keep that replacement plan going when you don't know when your ambulances are coming and so on, but again, that's a nationwide problem, and it's just something we have to deal with.
What you're looking for is like a demo for the one that got rid?
Yes, yes, yeah. And and what we want to do is, yeah, and and also to be very similar to our ambulances we have now, so the compartments are are similar, so they know where the stuff is, so they can grab it quickly and do our patient care.
I don't, I don't know enough to know, yes, but the the other ambulance, the box, I know, everything was going right.
Yeah, yeah, it tipped over and landed on its side, yeah. So it's aluminum, and there's cracks in it.
Where are the ambulances manufactured at?
AAV.
In Northwest, West Jeffers.
West Jeffers.
And so, like I mentioned, we've been starting to, um, establish an internal committee of of us five and a couple other people to look at safety concerns, ambulance concerns, um, and so on, to see how we can, um, do better. So summary with EMS, increase in call volume, increase in hospital wait times, the ambulance mileage, wear and tear, recruitment, retention, we still have a problem with that. We still have a lot of people coming and going, um, our span of control, and our safety concerns. So do you guys have any questions about, um, budget-wise?
Yes, sir. I have a question. Uh, with regard to your budget, you know, EMS is such an important service, and I appreciate the fact that you've cut over a million dollars, so I'm not going to ask you if you can cut anymore. So I'm not going to ask you if you can cut anymore. I would like to ask, though, how exactly were you able to cut that much? And if you could give a quick summary of how you were able to manage a million dollar cut?
Well, I will, and I think Eric will have to add to it. We cut one ambulance. It's three hundred thousand dollars. We cut one cardiac monitor. It's fifty thousand dollars. We cut a blood program that we wanted to start that's not in service right now, but that's to help trauma patients. So if somebody's involved in a wreck and they're bleeding, whether it's external or internally, we would have blood on our ambulances to be able to pump them up with blood. And that's proven to be, to increase the survivability rate of those patients. We wanted to start that program, and we cut that program out. And that was at least sixty thousand or better there.
Right.
We've tried to streamline our medications. So we've cut back on the medications, partly to reduce waste if something expires. But we're also trying to take similar medications, and if they're doing similar things, maybe cut it down to that one medication and try to reduce costs there. Is there anything else I missed? Oh, cardiac monitors. We had requested thirty-six cardiac monitors for the sheriff's department for a tiered response.
AEDs.
I'm sorry. Yes, AEDs. AEDs, much less expensive than a cardiac monitor. But.
Still a hundred thousand bucks.
Yeah.
I did hear that sheriff deputies are on the road, and they can be the first ones on the scene to administer AED.
Exactly.
So when we dispatch a cardiac arrest out, whatever, where that, say, fits on, just say, Altory Mill Road, that deputy working that zone, the sheriff dispatcher says, hey, we're dispatching EMS to cardiac arrests. And they're easily, nine times out of ten, the first one there. They initiate CPR. So having an AED could help.
Yeah, that's what we were thinking.
And in other, other places, most law enforcement agencies already have those. I mean, most do. And your deputies are trained in how to use them. They just don't have them. I have met with the American Heart Association, Blue Cross Blue Shield, and I know that we gave them information as well. You are getting, by the way, the cheapest cost per AED is two thousand five hundred dollars is your current quote for an AED. That's, that is cheaper than the American Heart Association can get them, because they got back with me, and they said, you can get them on government contract cheaper than we can. Let's just see if we can find you money. So they have made contact. Honestly, American Heart Association made contact with the anonymous trust to ask if the anonymous trust or anyone else would be able to donate. Haven't heard back from them. I also have not yet heard back. Have you heard back from them?
I had a meeting with Ms. Sharp and Ms. Alberson yesterday.
Oh, yeah. Logan?
Logan. It looks like, I mean, it's definitely nothing set in stone, but it looks like we may be able to obtain at least ten AEDs right now.
Okay.
Of course, the bigger goal is to hopefully eventually obtain enough to put in every car and every county building.
Yeah. We took a poll, actually. Brandon Wiggins in HR became, worked on a special project for me, find out everywhere we don't have AEDs. So in school systems, in county buildings, and in the field, and in fire departments. Because not every volunteer fire department, actually, volunteer fire departments even responded, that some of them have AEDs, but they are out of date. So, so that actually creates an amount of liability. If you start using medical devices that are out of date, with out-of-date pads. So, but, so several fire departments, and the school system, and our county buildings all said that, that, you know, we need AEDs. And it amounted to more like, I don't know, was it seventy, eighty AEDs? I can't remember the exact number. Thirty-six, thirty-six is the number of deputies.
Just the deputy for the sheriff cars.
Just sheriff cars, thirty-six.
That was primarily, I think, the road cars.
Yeah, patrol.
Didn't include the officer, officers, detectives.
Yeah. But the thought is that they're always, those thirty-six are always on the road. You don't want to have to worry about getting the AED from one car to another. And EMS agreed to keep track of the dates of everything and make sure that pads, because your AED pads, the leads expire. And so if we keep track of that, we can swap out, take older leads, put them on an ambulance while they get used, and put new ones back in the patrol cars. Because we don't expect deputies to keep track of medical devices like medical people will keep track of medical devices. So that's just some, some of the considerations.
Do you have a lot of AEDs that are now in your churches that are accessible? If we rented that, that might be. So I'd love to know if you could have a list to say where all AEDs were, that people in the county would know.
But, sir, in talking to American Heart Association, most of those churches are locked most of the time. And they're always inside.
So you got to stay out there. So, yeah, you're right. But we have.
So, I mean, you, because when you need one, you need it now.
That's where we go, in churches. That's the reason we did that.
Right.
One thing, just kind of a little fun fact about AEDs, Sampson County EMS is actually entered into a contract agreement with Duke, University of Duke Hospital, where they are studying the feasibility of deploying AEDs via drones. We, for the last two, maybe three years, have been sending them all of our data, you know, response times and such for all of our cardiac arrests. They're collecting, in the process of collecting all that data now. I think it's going to be like a five-year program, pilot program, where, you know, they collect the data and then look at the feasibility of can we put drones in rural areas and deploy AEDs. You know, so don't know where that would go, but that is something that, you know, we're working with Duke University and Duke Hospital on that.
We could house them in the libraries.
I'd like to.
I have another question. And this is just for curiosity. It's not something that I would envision us trying to do right away, but I just want to know from my own, own knowledge. A lot of people that live on the western side of the county have told me, you know, why can't Sampson County outsource their EMS like Cumberland County did to the Caper Valley Hospital? And I realize that might be impractical for us in Sampson County, but how would that work? And how is it working for Cumberland County that they can do that, not have it a part of the county, but have it with the hospital?
It, A, you'd have to get hospitals to agree to it, I think, you know, obviously. But I, you know, how it would work, I really don't know, other than the only thing I can tell you that it is, you know, by statute, it's the county's responsibility to provide the service, whether it's a county-run paid service, hospital service, you know, the county's going into a contract with the hospital, or the county's going into a contract with a private ambulance service, or whatever the case may be.
I was speaking with a Cumberland County Commissioner a couple months ago, and he, I asked him why they did that. He said they couldn't do it fast enough. He said that it saved the county a ton of money, and it's working out better to the hospitals managing it versus the county. And I just wondered how, how that would possibly work in Sampson County. I realize the hospital would have to be involved in it, and I, I think we've kind of asked that question, why, why wouldn't that work in Sampson County? And I don't think the hospital was able to do that or would be interested in doing it.
Yes, sir. The CEO specifically said they have no interest in running EMS system. They are having difficulties with staffing, their own, their own staff and their own ambulance.
It's just, it's just amazing that Cumberland County is able to do that, and it's apparently saving them money, because the hospital's able to more effectively run the EMS versus the county government, according to what the county commissioner told me from Cumberland County.
Commissioner, this is speculation, but I'm wondering if they're using it as a diversion. Because if, if a patient shows up in the emergency room, it's very expensive for the hospital. I wonder if they're using the ambulance service to provide frontline medical care and divert those patients from showing up at the emergency room at all. I don't know for that for a fact, but, but every hospital CEO I talk to talks about, you know, the write-offs that the hospital has to do for indigent care. And when they show up at the emergency room, that's the most expensive care you've got when you show up at the emergency room. So it may be a diversion.
There's got to be a financial reason.
And I think the thing that you can look at is, you know, in Cumberland County, Caper Valley is the sole hospital that, you know, everything Cumberland County EMS transports, everything goes to Caper Valley. Whereas in Sampson County, only about forty-two to forty-five percent of our patients go to Sampson Regional. Rest of them go to outline hospitals, you know, because of Sampson Regional not being a trauma center, cath lab, things of that nature. So I don't know. You know, I'm sure that's part of it, because we come to the EMS, the majority of the patients go to Caper Valley.
I just realized that EMS, even though it's very important, it's also becoming a very intense call center for the county government. And we have to, just thinking outside the box.
How much, how much did you say you cut for the AED system when you booked it?
It's about ninety-five thousand.
Ninety-six thousand.
Ninety-six thousand dollars.
Ninety-six thousand. That is a life-saving device. And, I mean, I can't see trying to cut anything else from your budget, when we don't even have one of the life-saving tools that we leave for people to stay alive. I mean, how are we going to furnish anything in the county or anything for you if we did? Because if you, if you need it and don't have it, you're not going to, you're not going to make it. So, I mean, this is just my opinion. I know we can't afford it, but we need to find money from somewhere to put that AED. I've been there. I know. Anything that can save your life, if you're the one dying, you want it. And I'm sure everybody else feels the same way about it. If they want to live.
Commissioner, one thing, along those lines, one thing I'd recommend is wait until you hear back from American Heart Association and Blue Cross Blue Shield. Remember, you and I met with Logan Alberson. She's the one I talked to about the AEDs. If they're able to fund ten, that's, that's the equivalent of two, you know, twenty-five thousand dollars. If they're able to fund ten, but that's it, then, then I think the commissioners could always take a look, and if you needed to later on, what you might need to do to increase that. But maybe it would be more. I mean, the people that they're talking to, they have the capability of doing all of them. But, but I would, if you, when you know that you can't get them. But I'd like to highlight one other thing, too. Really, I'd like to go back, if we're talking about life-saving measures, the, the procedure of using real whole blood for infusion on scene versus put, just pushing saline and IV bags, really, what that would entail is it would be blood coolers, blood warmers, which are machinery that would be in your ambulances. And then you would have an ongoing recurring blood expense. The expense of the blood is about, I think, sixty thousand dollars per year. The initial coolers and warmers are a little bit more money. To their, to their credit, I talked with the EMS training officer, and she indicated they tried to work out a deal with Sampson Hospital, and they were unable to do that. The deal she tried to work out, I believe, was we'll do a bunch of blood drives, and we'll give you, we'll give you blood here, you know, take it. But then you give us blood products so that we don't have to buy it. But that, that was not possible. And it's not, it's not also possible for us to all line up and, you know, donate on the spot and put it on an ambulance. So that, that has to be a purchase situation from medical supply. But, but if you have a trauma incident, then pushing whole blood on the scene is really going to be much better for life-saving measures. I really think the two things that stood out to me, not counting the fact that we, you know, the, the third ambulance you didn't get, you're getting to, you can get by. But if you're talking about procedures that paramedics can use on the ambulance to save a life, that's, that's really something to think about later on. What, what did I say wrong there?
Not a thing.
Okay.
Well, I think we should continue to work toward getting a grant for the AEDs and trocars. I think that's a marvelous idea. Fortunately, we can't afford to pay for right now with the county money, so we need to continue to pitch for grant money. Hopefully, something will come through. And even if it ends up being a case of we can get a matching grant, and the county has to buy half, we can consider that at that time. And even if we have to do a budget amendment next year, do that.
Yeah. You, you could, after you find out what they'll pay for, I mean, that's kind of where I was going, you could do a budget amendment to at least put some more in sheriff deputy cars. If you just did thirty-six, then those are deputies on patrol twenty-four seven that have them in the community, and they can probably respond as quick or quicker based on where they might be than an ambulance to get to a heart attack victim.
Yeah, I got called out on ours in our church. I did the safety stuff there at the church, and it works for you now. And I was asked, I had it once last time I checked. We went and checked them, and they were good, but I hadn't really thought about it. So I know the maintenance part, and make sure that they are followed up on will be a big thing. I apologize to you guys. I appreciate y'all taking that on, because it's, not only do we want them in the cars, I do, to make sure that they are maintained and they work. Because I got a friend of mine, he said that, he said the next time they shook him, he wanted to be sure he was dead. He said they lit him up, and he said he never forgot it. And he said, I had quit breathing, so they hit me. He said, it take my word, they work. He said, you were gas for air.
With the upgrades to the sheriff's office ABL systems, have y'all had better capability to see where people are at now, you know, dispatching better?
Yes, Eric, actually, he's switching over to credo points and ambulances as well, because the hotspots just weren't working. And some AT&T will work some spots, and Verizon, Verizon will work some spots, and, you know, vice versa. So he's putting credo points in all the ambulances. Now that they're the same thing as Marcus now.
So we have better management and resources.
Any other EMS questions? Okay, fire marshals, emergency management. This is, this is under the emergency management budget. And I don't, I don't believe this will take as long. So, so real quick with our fire marshals, we have one fire marshal, one deputy fire marshal. Part of their duties is to do fire code inspections. We have thirteen hundred occupancies across the county. They review commercial plans and construction, renovations, and so on. They do it in some municipalities as well. We have some contracts with them as well. They review plans for subdivisions, and they serve as liaison with our fire departments. The emergency management side, we have, so back in twenty-two, I asked, and it was granted, to reclassify one deputy fire marshal position to emergency management coordinator. So this position, their, the EM coordinator is essentially making sure we're prepared for any kind of disaster. We know we're impacted by hurricanes, but any natural disaster, public health crisis, or other type of emergency. They're reviewing emergency operation plans for, for a bunch of different facilities across the county. They also ensure compliance with FEMA and North Carolina Emergency Management, so we're eligible for some grants. They, they're doing risk assessments for threats and hazards in the county, making sure EOC, our emergency operations center, is ready for any type of emergency. And they're involved in a lot of training events and making sure that people are sharp with their skills. So combined, the fire marshal and the emergency management office only have three people. They're on call twenty-four seven, three sixty-five. We recently signed an MOU with the city of Clinton. They created a fire marshal position as well. So now the city of Clinton has put their fire marshal into our rotation twenty-four seven, and it's, it's working out pretty well. It's only been a couple months. But it's reducing some of the overtime with us. It's given that fire marshal some experience. He'll come into the county, and we go into the city. So it's, it's been working out very well, and no additional costs for us. And they're on call for fire investigations, searches for lost persons or fugitives, spills. I talked about the human waste spills and any other type of emergency that may, may come in. Like I said, some people don't know who to call, so they call nine one. There's just a quick graph of fire marshal and emergency management callouts. From two thousand and fourteen to twenty-one, they had an average of one hundred and fifteen callouts a year. From two thousand and twenty-two to twenty-four, in those last three years, that's increased to one hundred and sixty-nine callouts a year on average, which is about a forty-seven percent increase. Couple of reasons for that. One is an arson problem. OSFM, the Office of Safe Fire Marshal, came to us a couple years ago and said Sampson County has an arson problem. So we've been trying to combat that with our partners, our fire marshals, the fire departments, law enforcement, created a little task force. We've been involved with the district attorney's office. And in fact, on Monday, we were invited by Ernie Lee, the prosecutor for the four county region, to go to the courthouse, where they sentenced a gentleman, a defendant, for arson, murder, burglary, life imprisonment without parole. And he didn't challenge going to trial because of the work that we did and how an airtight case it was. So, I mean, it took many, many hours for those guys to work on. One of the other callouts, the big reasons for callouts is drone requests. A lot of people think a drone is a toy, but it's a, it's a very useful tool that we, we use very regularly. We used it Tuesday at the sheriff's office. We can get eyes on, we can see what's going on, we can search for people quickly. It's a, it's a good safety factor, searching for people and fugitives, and saves a lot of time and money as well. We can cover a lot more area in just a short period of time. So some of the concerns with the fire marshals and emergency management. EOC readiness, we still have monitors in the AV system that's not operational in the emergency operations center, and we have problems with our camera and control access that needs attention. This is all due to essentially budget cuts from COVID. So they went out to bid in the building pre-COVID, cost increased, we had to cut in the budget, and there's still some things we're trying to work through. So generally, whenever I have a little extra money at the end of the operational, end of the fiscal years, I try to use some operational money to, to fix some things, but we're still struggling with that. It's, there's some things that broken, but don't get me wrong, we're in a lot better shape than we were at the old building. So, so we're making improvements. We have a nine, or a two thousand and five Winnebago that's twenty years old that acts as our command post. It's been retrofitted with some radios and a little work area for people to get out of the weather. That was not included in our budget this year, but I just wanted to give you a heads up that at some point, that's going to need to be replaced. That's a minimum of a half a million dollars. We're looking at more like one to one point five. And we're looking for grants and then trying to seek out additional funding. And then at some point, we're going to need another drone. We put that in our budget this year, but that was. We put that in our budget this year, but that was not granted. And again, we understand, but we're looking at grants to try to find funding to fund another drone.
What do you consider your drones at this time?
Depends on what we're looking at, Commissioner. The one we're looking at to switch to now is still a DJI product. It's a smaller airframe, but it has the thermal capability and the zoom capability. Just like yesterday, or the day before yesterday, at the police department, sheriff's department, we could, we could look down in that vehicle. We could see everything that man was doing all the time. We can, we can live stream back to a command post, back to your phone, whatever you want. So that zoom capability makes a lot, we didn't have to get so close to be freaking him out. With the thermal, the thermal saves us, it saved at least four lives last year in this county. Well, three in this county, one in another county. So thermal is really needed. So what we're looking at now is around about 8,000, just for the drone and two batteries. The batteries on. Eight thousand, yeah. The batteries usually last about 30, 35 minutes. So we usually buy what they call a flymore package, which gives us five batteries. That way, when we put that drone up, we've got four of the batteries waiting, so we can continuously fly.
That makes sense.
So it's under 10,000 for the air drones.
And I'm asking for a reason, because I was curious about what their cost is. Right now, we're flying three $26,000 drones, because it's wet and we can't get any fields in any place, so we've got three in the air today.
Yep.
We've got three people sitting on them, pre-mixing stuff, and they're flying. Those are $26,000, that's the reason I was asking you. Thank you.
So that's all I have for fire marshals and emergency management. I don't know if you have any specific questions or additional questions for us.
Well, I'd just like to point out that your budget reduction was over $400,000 off of a million dollar budget, which is a significant reduction. And so thank you all for that tremendous help.
With regard to the drone operations, my previous experience, I hired July 31st of last year. They were just as quick to respond as other deputies, as far as getting the drone up in the air and getting stuff immediately. And when you're dealing with a life in the woods, especially an elderly person, and you're dealing against elements, that made all the difference in a lot of, a lot of different cases. I think one thing, a lot of the drone technology we have has been implemented through, initialized through grants, and initially by the fire marshal offices to try to get those grants to make that, and I appreciate that effort. They are a viable, viable option, and they have reduced a lot of man hours to this county through searches.
My other question about that, because it just helps me, how restricted are these type drones to, let's say, weather conditions?
The one that I fly is the only one that we can fly in rain and snow. That drone is going to cost you around about 20,000.
We set ours down Saturday, we couldn't do the wind. We couldn't go on the ground, it couldn't run.
Yep, we could fly, I had phoned that one in, up to 35 mile an hour wind. So it does pretty good. We flew it in the snow, we flew it in the rain. We actually found a woman, end of last year, they rigged her car and ran off in a cut-down. And she was laying face down in the water. They looked for her for over an hour and a half. They called Lee within 15 seconds. When they put the drone in the air, I had her found. And she was barely breathing.
It was like 38 degrees or something like that, right? It was cold and, yeah.
They're, they're, they're not a toy. They're, Eric can tell you, he's been on several calls. You know, we had an ambush, ambush, ambush situation on a horse she rode one night. A man had dug a foxhole, was sitting there with an AR, waiting on the deputies to walk by. I spotted him, and turned the light on him, and he stood up and gave up.
Appreciate that, too. I do.
One question, one of the deputies came by my house, and he told me that he saw a bear cross the road and go back behind my house. Did it find that?
Yes, ma'am, ma'am.
You put it there, you can say deer, bear, or anything.
Rabbits.
But for clarity, for clarity, it should not be used for hunting. Our Wildlife Resources Commission frowns on the use of thorn holes.
All right, we'll move on if it's okay. So GIS, Geographic Information System, this was formerly known as 91 Addressing. This originally fell under Emergency Services. Then it was, when we created the GIS function, it moved away from Emergency Services, and then it's proposed to come back to us. So GIS has three employees, a coordinator and two technicians. They maintain three EGS websites, combined views of 175,000 views last year, which is about 480 views per day. They maintain our 91 CAD system, so, and the maps are included with that, which is vitally important to us. So when somebody calls, we know exactly where they are. They assigned 277 dresses last year, and we named eight roads. They also maintain our parcels, and that's primary for tax purposes, so they mapped over 4,000 parcels last year. And she works very closely, the GIS team, with the tax department, and I've got a list of other departments, county departments, that they work closely with. And this, the GIS function is only two years old roughly, and there's lots of potential growth for this. They're very busy, there's a lot of demands, and I meet with Jesse often, trying to get, or to get more stuff done for us, especially as we're getting the hurricane season, and they've been very responsive. So that's the only slide I have for GIS, and then I have a couple of other things I'll run through if you don't mind, and then.
One on GIS. So I'd like to commend Jesse, who's with us today. I went to her, told her about our desire to create one-stop shopping for development services. But there's a part of development services that cannot be located in Building D. I mean, we are able to put building inspections, environmental help, who, many of those employees, their number one office is out in their truck, they're in the field, but, but there will be services provided there. There's no way to put GIS over there. However, we were able to develop an online form for addressing purposes, because if you walk in there, you're going to need an address of your property. And I've asked Jesse to coordinate with Chris Rayner with IT to put basically a self-serve kiosk computer on the service counter over in Building D, so a person that needs addressing could go to that computer and basically communicate pretty quickly, directly, if you will, with GIS, and just make it more one-stop shopping. So while we may not have a person there, it's the equivalent of an ATM machine for an addressing. And so thank you for taking the initiative to, to put that together and working with Chris on that. It's a highlight for y'all. This is innovation, right there.
And we were able to add that on to the county website as well, too, and that's something I could even just send you a link to today, or anybody that requests it. So it's been a very good tool for people requesting an address.
Thank you, and thank you, Jean.
So I've got a couple more summary slides here of some of the things that we've been doing and so on. So, back in September of '21, I did a presentation to the board regarding a five-year improvement plan for emergency services. So some of the things we did in the fiscal '21, '22 is we added that seven ambulance, we reclassified that deputy fire marshal position to emergency management coordinator. We contracted with a fire inspector to do some of our fire inspections to take the load off our fire marshals, and that's been a very successful program. In '22, '23, we added four telecommunications. Although we created those positions, it's been very hard to keep those positions filled. We added the EMS assistant chief that I spoke about, and we updated the living quarters for Garland and Newton Grove. In '23, '24, we had planned to upgrade the living quarters in Roseboro, and as I mentioned, that continues to be a work in progress. In '24, '25, we completed the construction of the storage warehouse out behind our building, between our building and the sheriff's department, to consolidate our disaster equipment, but also provide some storage for the sheriff's department. And that's been successful. So we've made some significant improvements, and we'll continue to evaluate what we can do to be more efficient and to use our funds wisely. Some of the goals moving forward is in 911. We lost our training officer. We'd like to try to get that back at some point to increase, as Cliff mentioned, our quality management, quality insurance, quality improvement, reduce our errors, and reduce our training costs. So when that training officer was here, we actually did a mini academy, communications academy, with six new staff members. Instead of sending those six staff members to other places and pay for their training, that training officer was able to do it in-house. And we have some numbers for that, if you need that, but that was very successful. So we're going to try to push to get that back. We're going to initiate the EPD program to complement EMD and the EFD, and that's, as we mentioned, covered by 91 funds. And then we're looking to improve our infrastructure for communications and our paging system, and we'll read through the recommendations from our vendor, from the study, and then we'll be bringing recommendations to the board. For EMS, some goals and improvements. We requested six additional paramedics because of the response time for, and as you saw in those graphs, to try to improve our services in EMS. And we understand those positions were not granted. We're going to continue to look at possibly a peak hour trucks, so those hours during the day when we're busy, we're going to look to see what we can do. We talked about the blood program that was cut. We've been continuing to search for funding for a community paramedic program. So when we did a presentation to the board last year, the board was in favor of a community paramedic program. We went out and tried to get some grants. We were not successful with that. We're going to continue to do that, because we think that's a worthwhile program as well. And then we're going to implement the post overdose response team that we spoke about the last board meeting, and that is grant funded as well. For emergency management and the fire marshals, we're looking to increase our capabilities on our EOC, our training. We just did a training program last month with all our staff that would staff the EOC. This coming month, actually next week and the following week, we're doing some specific position training with our different sections to give them more comfortable. So if we do have to activate, our EOC will be better positioned, I feel. And then our AV and technology, we're trying to work on. We're also going to try to increase our subscribers to our emergency notification system. That's a thing that we try to get people to go out and subscribe for, so we can send quick emergency notifications, and we have a low subscriber rate, and we're going to try to push that a little bit to see if we can get more people to sign up. We need to, we have some supplies in other locations throughout the county. We're going to try to move those to the warehouse when time allows. We're going to seek grant funding for a command post and a drone program. Going to continue to work to reduce the arson rate across the county. And we're going to look at artificial intelligence. There's a lot of things that are new to most of us, and we're going to look at different programs and different ideas to try to save money, try to increase efficiency in what we do in emergency services all over, department-wide. In terms of GIS, Jesse and her team is going to try to develop the websites to become more user-friendly. We're going to try to reduce the liability on Withers Ravenel. So back in '21, we had a $90,000 contract with them to provide those GIS services. The proposed budget, it's at $15,000, and essentially, that's an insurance policy. Jesse and her team are getting better and better with their abilities to do the GIS stuff, and we're going to lean on Withers and Ravenel if we need to, but at some point, hopefully, that will be zero.
One, one word here, this is a cross-departmental piece for you. Remember, we talked about the need in the water system to do hydraulic modeling? You're going to need, you're going to need a water system, and do we have now, do we, has Withers provided now, Jesse, a water system overlay?
Oh, we have a utility viewer that includes all of our water lines and any kind of inlets, outlets, that sort of thing. So we do have a setup system for that.
Are you, are your lines sized?
They are.
Okay. That will be what, what your engineering company that does your hydraulic modeling is going to start with. And so there will be, there will be interaction between public utilities, whatever engineering firm's able to do that. And this morning, Mr. Turlington was text messaging me, asking me, what engineering companies were those again? So I provide him with that. But GIS is also going to probably be involved with that, your, all your hydraulic modeling. And so you all know, once hydraulic modeling is in place, when you get a request through planning or zoning or GIS for subdivisions, it'll, it'll go into that hydraulic model, and we'll be able to determine what our pressures are and what pressure drop would be through the system based on the number of new users and new lines and new diameters. So all of that is going to go, all of this is interrelated.
Which takes me to, no, that's fine, sorry. It takes me to my next bullet. We're going to assist Public Works to collect data and so on. So right now, Esri's clamping down on user licenses, and that's why there's a little cost in the GIS budget. Currently, we're using one license, and we have 12 users on that. They're, they look frowning upon that, so there's a little cost increase for that, but it's probably well worth it as we expand our capabilities with that. And GIS is just going to continue to work on some apps. Jesse did a map for me yesterday for EOC, work with environmental health and other departments, just to try to continue to move forward. So just a summary on our budget requests. In 911, we eliminated that training officer position. This is something I haven't talked about, is our administrative assistant. This is something that's going to hurt us, but we'll get through it. Emergency Services has about 100 employees throughout our entire department. We have about 18% of the county workforce, we have about 15% of the county budget, but we only have one admin assistant, about a 5% admin assistant. So our admin position, one of them was eliminated, and that person didn't lose her job, was going to be transferred to another department. I asked, so then, the person that was now going to do the work of two jobs resigned because she felt it was too much work and not enough pay. Then I asked the one employee that was going to be transferred, would you like to have this position? And she said, no, it's too much work and not enough pay. So we're going to have a problem. We just offered a position to somebody, looks like she's going to accept it, and we're going to try to move forward, but it's going to be a difficult process. I know HR and finances offered help in us trying to get through that, but there'll be some struggles here. The budget impact on EMS, and we talked about this, staffing, we asked for new, new positions in EMS, we asked for the blood, the AEDs. One ambulance was cut, and one of those cardiac monitors was cut. Some of the concerns with our replacement plans is that that ambulance and that cardiac monitor is essentially, we're kicking that can down the road. At some point, we're going to need those, because they're going to die, and we're going to need to replace them, so we're just going to have to try to find some funding for next year's budget. In emergency management, we talked about the EOC, AV and security issues and camera issues, and then the drone, trying to find some grant funding for that. So some final thoughts. We fully understand the budget deficit and the cuts that we had to make, and we understand that. We cut about $1.6 million from our entire budget, which was a 12% request. And it was the largest cut of any county department. So we will continue to best, to do the best we can with the resources we have. We have some really good, dedicated people that do a great job, and we're going to continue to work to try to make improvements. So with it, I don't know if anybody else has any comments or questions for us?
I have one more question. About the ambulance you was talking about, and the drone, it serves Garland, Harrells, and Ivanhoe.
The primary response area for that truck is the Garland area. However, it does back up the Harrells and Ivanhoe area. We've got a truck in Harrells as well, but if that truck's busy, then the Garland truck would respond to Harrells and Ivanhoe area.
They just switch back and forth.
And we do the closest unit, whoever's closest to wherever it is.
There used to be one ambulance to service all three of them.
The whole setting, sir, again, yes, ma'am.
It's only one, and now it says people having more sickness and more problems. We managed to get enough.
So that ambulance that we added in '22 was stationed in Garland?
That was all the, all the problems going on, the sickness and stuff.
I have a final question for you, as the department head and all the different departments you manage, the subdepartments of your emergency management apparatus, what's the one thing that is most likely to keep you up at night? Tower, or the lack of ambulance EMS workers, or what is the biggest concern you have?
Yes. So when I first got here, I met with, with these guys, and I met with Cliff, and when he told me we only have one radio tower, I said, what? That's probably our, because if, communications is huge. If we lose our communication system, then we have a problem. So that's why we're trying to push forward this, and we think we're going to, if we can come up with some funding, we think we're going to have some short-term solutions to that, but there'll certainly have to be an investment down the road when that Taylor's Bridge Tower reaches its lifespan. But we, you know, in public safety and emergency services, most people, it's ingrained in their brain that we're just going to roll up our sleeves and do what we need to do. their brain that we're just going to roll up our sleeves and do what we need to do. And people are willing to jump in, and we adapt and overcome. So, we're throwing a curveball, and we just continue to do the best we can. So, yes, our dispatchers, our personnel, our tower, and EMS, I think, is our three biggest things, and that's a lot because of the turnover and the low pay. We've got three people in emergency management and fire marshal's office, though, well, we've just hired a new EM coordinator, but that's, it's pretty rock solid. The institutional knowledge with Prentice and Josh that are here, great guys, know the county inside out, know the people, get whatever done. When I call them anytime of the day or night, they pick up the phone and they say, "I'm on my way." So, we have a lot of great people that do, a lot of great things for the county.
Thank you for all you've done, the sacrifice to help us make this budget work.
You're welcome.
With regard to the EOC, I know you said you had some stuff that was not completed or issued. Is there anything that will impact operational efficiency if we had to open the EOC?
Like I said, it's better than where we had it, but it's not where I'd like to see it. And I'll just give you an example. We have nine computer monitors, TV monitors around that entire room. My vision is to be able to bring in a tablet and hit a button and put up whatever information we need on those TVs. So, the local weather report, the national weather report, electrical outages, flood gauges, the CAD system, and where our concentration of calls are and what part of the county.
Web EOC.
Yeah, web EOC, and just move things around and be able to see that. Currently, we can't do that, and that's a goal that we're going to continue to push to try to get.
What does it take?
Money. So, our first, our first estimate was $750,000.
How much?
Seven fifty. We got it down with other vendors to two fifty.
Two twenty.
Yeah, two twenty, two fifty. Now, we're in the $100,000 range with probably not the state-of-the-art technology, but ways that they're able to figure it out. So, we're going to keep pushing, and we're going to try to get it done.
It's just a backend AV system. I mean, the monitors are there, it's just a backend system is what we're needing.
Start after college, I hear $750,000.
Just the AED, that's all we need.
That's a penny right there. That's over a penny.
That's a penny.
Yeah.
$724,000?
$46,000 over. So, sir, the closest AED is in building A, just outside.
Hold on, we're going to get it, okay?
More of Commissioner's Boardroom.
But no, I do appreciate y'all, want y'all there. You show what direction we're trying to look in, and I appreciate it.
Good job.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you all.
Thank you.
Could we take a five-minute recess for animal service or animal shelter?
Yeah, that would be good. It's all you, dear.
I'm up. When we, starting the budget process, I knew that there would be some cuts that needed to be made right off the bat. So, we went through, we've got Tractor Supplies going to start giving us 5% to 10% off of buying bulk dog food, whether it be canned food, dry food. We've also decreased our vet contract to $4,500 a month versus $5,000 per month. That was one of the things that we had proposed. I had a vacant position with our vet tech, and originally, I was going to reclassify that to a shelter attendant position, and then it got cut, which is understandable. But, so now, we went from seven employees to six employees. A perfect example, the staffing is more than likely, or will be, my biggest issue. A prime example, yesterday, we had five scheduled staff. One of ours, his son was sick, so he called out, and then we actually had a temporary worker that had passed away throughout the night. So, then, we had three, and it was me, our shelter manager, and then a shelter attendant. So, yesterday, there was three of us to run the entire shelter. Obviously, in the mornings, from eight to 12, we are cleaning, medicating, that's when surgeries are being taken place, to get everything ready for 1 o'clock opening to the citizens. So, yesterday, we got everything ready, but then the citizens were coming in, so then we were, you know, accepting the surrenders or the stray drop-offs. And we were pretty much ran thin, to be honest with you. I know the way the scheduling is, since we do have to be staffed 365 days a year, a lot of people, I mean, it needs, it's almost equivalent to poultry farm, hog farm. You have to go in those every single day, clean, medicate, feed, clean properly per state law, so, and to prevent overtime, we have staggered scheduling. And so, every other Friday, there will only be four people that are staffed. So, then, if we have somebody already scheduled off for vacation, and then we have a call-in, that's going to put two people having to run the entire animal shelter, dealing with citizens, doing adoptions, the welfare of the animals, and so forth. We do try to participate in public events. I know every year, we've been doing the cleared the shelter where there is a day where all the animals are free. We have set aside that. We've been doing that for four or five years. But due to staffing, it's hard for me to be able to accept public events if, one, I can't go into overtime, or if I don't have the staff to do it. I know that I will take animals to the nursing homes. I've taken dogs and cats to the library. We just participated in the event this past Saturday with the library. We took seven animals. We ended up adopting out five. It was just me and my, me and one other staff member. Obviously, I had to have two at the animal shelter cleaning and doing their normal task. We do have an event when we do the street fair. We're going to be at the Dog Park in Clinton. I'm probably going to do that, go ahead and combine cleared the shelter for dogs that day, so we can have an event out there and combine that. I mean, on a day-to-day basis, like I said, as we're, just like many department heads, as we prepare these budgets, I don't, and I can speak for other ones, we don't fluff what we need. It's kind of hard to anticipate how many animals we're going to get in a year. Looking at the past three years, every single year, we've had over 2,100, 2,100 animals brought in. I understand that the animal shelter is not considered an essential department. However, it is a, it's a service that I feel is needed. If we weren't there, where would the 2,100 animals be? And I'm just going to be transparent with you, a lot of the public, when things don't go the way they want at the animal shelter, or we're full, or we can't take this dog, they don't understand, we are taking the burden of irresponsible pet owners within our county. It is not your fault, it's not the animal shelter's fault, until owners can be responsible, and not all owners are irresponsible, but we are taking the burden of citizens that are not responsible pet owners. And so, I know that me and the officers sat down with the county attorney, we're revamping the ordinance, and that'll probably be on the agenda within the next few months, where we are trying to increase fees, where the way it was worded, officers had to go, like, I think it was one or two times before they could do a citation. So, now, this, the changes in the ordinance will give officers a little bit more leadway to go ahead and give these citations. We've had in the past where we get the same dog every few months because the owner just lets it run loose, and they can come and reclaim it. So, now, we're going to, after three reclaims, if it comes in a fourth time, it's now the property of the animal shelter. They cannot reclaim it. When we have cruelty cases or bite cases, sometimes the cruelty cases, we would hold, we have to hold for months to get through the court, the court proceedings, and the only thing we can charge them if they win is a $25 reclaim fee. So, we have worked it now where anytime an owner is negligent, it is $10 a day. So, if you have a cruelty case and they're in there a month, the reason they're in there is because the owner was negligent, so that they will now be getting charged. Once, if y'all approve that, it would be $10 a day. I can tell you, this past year, we have started a rabies vaccination clinic. Anytime, Monday through Friday, special events, we will give citizens a rabies vaccination for $10. No citizen, very, maybe, we've had maybe 20 since we've started it. Citizens aren't taking advantage of it, yet the animal shelter is not doing enough.
You said it was $10, correct?
Yes, sir.
They have it how often?
The rabies clinic, we, whenever we're open, Monday through Friday, one to five, or all they have to do is come in, it's $10 a day, show up. They don't bring the animal in the shelter. We pull up the rabies vaccination, we go out to the car, they never have to come in.
Do you increase that?
Yes, I mean, I possibly could, but like I said, none of the citizens are taking advantage of it.
How are you advertising it? Do they know?
We've advertised it. I've talked with Jean, and we're going to get more on public, you know, letting her know, but we've advertised it, the animal shelters advertised it. And so, it, and a lot of times, people don't understand, when they complain about the space in the animal shelter, we're moving them out as quick as we can. And like I said, I'm going to be transparent again, I could euthanize every animal in that shelter today, and tomorrow, it would be full. And I think a lot of people have comments, criticism, but until you can come in, two days, ask people to come in, two days, walk in our shoes, see what we do, and I am the one that chooses basically who lives or dies. And people don't know the toll that takes on someone.
How long do you keep stray animals before you euthanize them?
By law, we're required to keep them for 72 hours. Now, 72 business hours. If they are an adoptable pet, I will hold them until space. When it comes time for me to have to make decisions, I always go off of the long-term cares, the one that's been there the longest. The ones after 72 hours, if they're deemed not adoptable by myself or the vet, then they can be euthanized after the 72 hours, and that's usually if they're sick, dog aggressive, aggressive towards humans. I mean, it's also a public safety perspective as well. I mean, I can't knowingly adopt out a dog that I know is animal aggressive. It gets loose from an adopter and goes next door and kills the next door dogs.
But you do euthanize that dog when 72 hours has passed, or do you continue to?
No, I euthanize it for sure.
How much does it cost to euthanize a dog?
Not a lot.
Not a lot? I have several questions I had prepared to ask you, because the animal shelters, since it is considered totally discretionary, it's, and it's, the budget's almost a half a million dollars, or is a half a million dollars. I definitely feel like I need to ask some good questions. My first question is on the vet contract. It's listed here that it actually went up, and yeah, I thought you said that it went down. Contracted services was $45,000, and it's now $58,000. Did you say that you had decreased that?
We had to combine, last year, when we started with the, hold on. When we initially did it.
You got it?
It was, oh, hold on, I got my last.
Here, use that one, that's what the measure is looking at.
This is the new one?
That's the last one, yeah.
Okay. It, the vet contract, it should have, it's 58. Shoot, I have my line items, but now I can't find it. Give me just a second.
Okay.
The, originally, it was due to, the reason it increased is because they, we were having to pay back the vet for purchasing scheduled drugs because they couldn't, the ketamine and the ones you'd used for surgery. Now, we have switched our DEA license where we will be paying for it. I've got to look back at my line item.
Now, how, the surgeries you offer, when you're providing surgeries, is that for the general public, or is that for a stray dog?
That's just for the ones that are within the shelter. It's just when they're adopted.
Why would we be providing surgeries for a stray dog? Is this for what?
As they're getting adopted.
Okay.
It prevents.
Does the person adopting pay for the cost?
Yes.
So, like, to be spayed or neutered?
Yes, sir. And we've actually increased our adoption fee. It'll be $100 versus, right now, the dogs, male dogs were 85, the females were 105, male cats were 70, females were 90. So, now, across the board, it'll be $100.
So, it costs $58,000 a year to provide the surgeries through contracted services, right?
Yes, sir.
What's your revenue for adopting out these dogs that we're providing surgeries for?
Melissa, can you pull up the revenues, please? And well, and I'm going to be honest with you, we don't have a lot of revenue.
I mean, I hate to sound, this is going to sound terrible, but from the county's standpoint, are we subsidizing the adoption of dogs? Would it be cheaper to just euthanize them?
If you will take the brunt of that criticism, I would do what you tell me to. But I will not take the brunt of that.
The county is basically subsidizing pet ownership by encouraging people to adopt animals. We spay and neuter them, don't charge them what it costs to spay and neuter them, and then...
But Commissioner, one reason you do want to spay and neuter an animal that you adopt out is...
Because they'll continue to breed and have more.
Exactly. You're forestalling growth in the animal population.
I get that, I totally get that, but is it more cost-effective just to euthanize the animal versus trying to be politically correct and keep them alive so that people can adopt them, and half the time, they don't even adopt them, and then they're going to take them and be irresponsible pet owners too, and they might wind up stray again.
So, you would rather euthanize every animal that comes in?
Well, I would personally lean toward that. I'm not saying that's what we would do, but that's my personal opinion.
I disagree with that, but I understand.
Commissioner, in all honesty, you won't have any employees in animal services. So, you won't have, you won't have a staff to, if you have 100% kill shelter, first of all, the county will be on the front page of every newspaper. And the second thing is, you won't have any staff in that department to do the will of the county in that regard.
Yeah.
And I mean, I'm just being completely honest.
And who's going to do it?
It may be, it may be more cost-effective.
Me?
Yeah. I'm not asking you to do it if you don't want to do it. I'm just saying, this is just a cost of the county, and we got to figure out a way to make it more responsible. Do we need to, do we need to increase what we charge people to adopt animals to offset the cost of euthanizing them?
Well, just one statement. A few years ago, animal shelter was bought out for one animal. I think we had national news for the animal shelter.
Twenty eighteen, and I have...
Yeah, and it was devastating to our Animal Shelter. Not just to the Animal Shelter, to the people located here, and went nationwide. It went nationwide. I hear what you're saying. Everybody in here that had a little animal gonna look at you like you.
Terrible person.
I didn't wanna say it.
But we need to encourage people to be responsible with their animals.
Well, see, it's not...
Because the taxpayers having to subsidize.
Everybody that gets an animal are not that way. They are some, but...
I have a dog and it's spayed, I have a cat and it's neutered.
I bet you got a good dog.
I take care of my pets.
Well, most of them, I believe most people do, but we have that, those few that don't. And we can't let the few dictate what happens to most of the animals.
That's just like what we're doing here. We got good people who help us. We can't let those bad dictate the county service or the county treatment that was trying to do their best. I mean, I have an animal and, I mean, he's just like my child. I treat him just like he's my child.
How can we raise more money through donations with all the citizens who are very concerned about animals?
We do very well with donations. Multiple times throughout the year, I'll make posts and they buy them off of our Amazon wishlist. The library does donation drives.
That's what it does, dude.
Commissioners, in terms of revenues, last year was, it was, oh, $21,200. And in the coming year, it's projected, that's page 93, I couldn't immediately find it in my book, but it was projected just about doubling it at 44, so 44,000, 40, 44,900.
So we're... It covers the cost of contracted services.
No, it does not. There is one other way, though, that we could, I believe, decrease cost a little bit. And I've thought about this, we set this aside, but we are, we are spending a lot of time in terms of, operation of a shelter, keeping it clean is very important. You wanna, you don't want all the various illnesses going through a shelter, which would kill a whole shelter population. I've actually experienced parvo once through a shelter population, and that was not good. So I have talked with the sheriff, two things. I've talked with the sheriff about using inmate labor to help with that. And I know that you've talked with the sheriff as well. In fact, one of those, you're not getting out of this building until you give me a new budget. I started putting people together and Animal Services and the sheriff's office got together and we're talking about it in the EOC. One other thing that would lower cost a little bit, but also still maintain personnel to clean, is if the board would look at, and I know it's a shift in money, but we could save a little bit, I think. If we would look at contracted services, right now, we're paying contracted services to come to the shelter. If we turn those into two-part-time people, instead of contracted services, we would get out of paying the fee for contracted services. And that's something that I had looked at earlier in the budget cycle. But we set it aside because I was also trying not to add to the rolls. But if you're just looking at cash, we could save some money giving it to the temp agency and put people onboard, you know, permanent part-time, that would give some flexibility in scheduling. So I would, I think that we could save, we could save money while still probably better cleaning the shelter by doing that. But that would mean, it would mean we shift a few things and we could come up with how much money we could save by doing that.
Let me shift, that was just a hair here. You work with rescue organizations? Can you talk about that just a little bit, please?
Yes, they, sometimes to prevent euthanizing, if we get any critically ill or injured, they'll come in so that we don't have to euthanize. We do have good relationships with rescue organizations that'll come in and pull to prevent euthanasia. I've thought about, I don't, I know that some counties do it where they charge a rescue pull fee. If that was something we wanted to look at. I guess, in the past, my main goal was to decrease euthanasia rate. That's what the citizens want. I mean, if it increases, then we're the bad people and all I do is kill animals. So I don't know how to fix that.
I wouldn't have your job. But, and I appreciate the fact you're in position to show compassion. I do appreciate that.
Well, I either get emotional or I get mad, so I figured it'd be better for me to get emotional.
Let's keep mad out.
Have you considered any sort of education campaign? I know that you post stuff on Facebook. I've been following you on Facebook and I applaud you for that effort. But is there any way you can do more to try to educate people that the cost of being irresponsible puts the burden on the taxpayer? That's what most concerns me. It's not that I dislike animals, but I care more about human beings than I do about animals. That's just my nature. I think we live in a society now where people care more about animals than they do about children. And that's something that bothers me. And how can we educate the public that they need to be more responsible with their pets? Because the burden is being placed on the taxpayers. I know it's just $500,000, but that's $500,000 that could be going toward keeping libraries open, properly funding the recreation department, or even giving more money to schools that were having to spend on dealing with irresponsible pets running around free. How can, how can we educate the public better? And how can we drive revenue so that we can offset the cost of these contracted services?
I can get with Jean and we can come up with some ideas to educate.
Is there any, is there any room to drive revenue through higher fees?
I know we've already increased the fees and then, like I said, with the new ordinance changes, we should see some increase in fees, especially with the boarding fees that will now be in place.
I feel like you addressed a lot of, a lot of the problems to the point to where you can and understand that you're trying to move forward and making some things happen. And I know it's not a quick process. But I also understand where the Commissioner's coming from as far as education. And I appreciate you reaching out and I just want to see you, see us get more involved on that side. And we, I hope that the people of this county start to understand that it's not the animals that are the problem.
That's right.
It's the citizens that are the problem.
That's right.
And we're trying to maintain it to where we have a solid program for everyone. And as we move forward, it will get better. And all it's gonna get better is that the citizens of this county decided they're gonna make it better. But I do appreciate what you're doing, but it's gonna have to come from the people, the people of this community.
And I'm gonna be honest with you, Mr. Crumpler, not everybody feels the same way you do about animals. But the morale of myself, I mean, you just said yourself that the animal shelter is probably the least important department of the county. And that's disheartening.
I'm sorry if that's the way I made you feel, but I do feel that it is a department that we need to be very careful because the cost of the county government is continuously increasing and we have to find every way necessary to maintain sound finances.
Commissioners, with us looking at the animal control ordinance again, I reminded of something that was mentioned by the sheriff at the Newton Grove Town Hall meeting. He mentioned that there were 3,000 animal control calls per year. It may be that, as part of the animal control ordinance, that we could leverage additional fees or charges against those people that are in violation. But now, where that money goes, if it's a violation of the ordinance, is it a fine and forfeiture? Is it a fee? Is it, you know, I'm not sure, but it would possibly be more money to the county. Also, we were talking about how much the, what was the original dog and cat fees? It was 105 for a female dog, right?
Yes, sir, and 85 for males.
And 85 for male dog. And we had gone 100 to 100 across the board. The maximum fee you were previously leveraging was 100. We could put it at 105 across the board, that would leverage a little bit more money. Other than that, I would like the boards, I would like to ask the board to let us try to cut contracted services by adding two part-time people and see if I could, if I could save money there by doing that. That's the only other place I know to save money, other than us getting more free food. She's getting free toys, free food, using inmate labor. I don't know another way to cut. And even if, even if we weren't taking care of the pets, your dangerous dogs, your animal cruelty situations, and your large animal situations as well. Because it's not just dogs and cats. I mean, we've got everything, goats and horses and everything else too. So, but most of it's dogs and cats. Yeah, I think all that is at play and we could take a look, Melissa's working on it now, how much money, how much more money we could save. And also, if we looked at increasing the fee to 105, I don't think another $5, if we're already at 100 across the board, 105 isn't gonna matter. It shouldn't matter on adoption. With the board's consensus, we'll just do it and it'll be part of the budget. I don't need a separate motion from the board, as long as we're in this budget workshop. But it really is up to you.
I say go for it.
Yeah, same here.
And I'll go back and look and see if there's some more, without it affecting the animals, but if we're gonna be euthanizing them, then we won't have to need as much as we do for their well-being.
Well, now, that, the instruction of the board is not that you euthanize all animals.
I know. I'm just saying, if that's where we're leaning towards, then the medical supplies and stuff.
We're not leaning that way.
I have just one Commissioner. There's four other Commissioners here that seem to disagree with me.
I just want you to continue doing what you do, have the love for the animals that you have because anybody's job, your heart's not in it, you're not doing the job. Your heart got to be there and your heart is in it. And there's no other person that, if their heart wasn't in it, couldn't do the job that you do. And I just appreciate it for the animals. They can't speak for themselves, but that's what we're here for, to speak for the animals. Those animals, some of them are humans.
Yeah, I want a dog. I can't have one. My wife allergic.
No, you'd get in trouble if you took one home.
If you do have other ideas, contact me. But we'll take a look at increased revenues, we'll take a look at what kind of savings we can have from contracted services. Jean, will you please work with Animal Shelter to better advertise? One other way that we can probably save money is if we had a quicker time from collection to adoption. That's less time for the animals in the shelter and it's less time that we have to take care of them. So making sure that we have the biggest social media presence to get the animals out of the shelter the quickest will help us with some expense. I mean, we'll still be vaccinating them and doing the things that we naturally do, but it'll help with boarding. Oh, also, one other thing, from the dangerous dog stuff, I've been in several dangerous dog things, remember? I think one thing, and you've been there too, that's right. Remember one thing that we've talked about, I believe that if we are collecting animals and we are forced to house the animals, then the owner should pay, the owner should pay 100% of the cost by dangerous dogs that we pick up. How many dangerous dogs do we have right now in the shelter?
We don't have any right now. About two months ago, we had three.
We had three. So, and you have to keep those dangerous dogs all through that due process and the hearing. So for weeks, for weeks, she's had dangerous dogs. I think that we should be paying the full cost of housing the animal. The owner should pay the full cost of housing the animal as part of it.
I believe that is in the proposed ordinance that we have made those amendments. But if it is not, we will be definitely go back and make sure that we leave that having the reasons.
As we're revising ordinances, we probably need to start looking at some type of codification system. Because right now, when you look at our website, it's just a hodgepodge of ordinances. If we could go ahead and assign some type of numbering system to them and then as we add them, put them in a chapter, that way, one, the officers, when they write their citation, they can reference. That specific ordinance, whereas right now, it's Sampson County Dog Ordinance or this or that. I think it's the County Ordinance 1021.
Do we have that serviced, Stephanie, with Munis?
We don't. Well, I'm not sure about Munis. But historically, we just have ordinance books that clerks in the past have taken the minutes and then from the minutes, the ordinances are filed into the ordinance book and then incorporated in the minute book.
Are they hard copy only?
Yes, except for the ones that are scanned and are all on the website.
I think the animal ordinance is on the website.
They are on the website.
But it's not every ordinance.
As we move forward, we need to develop some type of system to take it where it's not just in the minute book, but we have a printed...
You, okay, well... This is, this is something I've just now learned, I'm sorry. But you need your ordinances codified. Munis is who I've used in the past, but it is not, it is not cheap, but you need to do that. You absolutely need to do that. The only place you have your ordinances cannot be hard copied or necessarily scanned in. So a codified ordinance book of all county ordinances that's up to date, now, that will cost something, but we can get the cost. If you don't do it this year, put it in the budget for next year, but you really do need that. That's how, that's how you're going to convey the will of the county to everyone from developers and subdivisions to people that want your water department and what they're doing there, to analysts. And it will also make the clerk's job a lot easier, honestly, a lot easier.
It's been very difficult in the past trying to find ordinances and get the information that people need because when you have multiple clerks over years and years, the way that they file things is different, the way that they organize things is different, and there are several different books that things are kept in. It is difficult to find.
And just for clarification, my understanding, this belief Stephanie is completely correct and just my understanding from the previous county attorney was that that had been a request made at some point in the past, or at least at that point, that the will of the board and budget probably considerations was not such that there was a desire to have this incorporated into MUNI code and to be codified officially, so...
We have discussed it in the past, but it was not done because of, is what I was hoping for.
Commissioners, can your clerk get a price for codification so that you'll at least know that for the future?
Please. It comes back to the cover of Hima Rabi, keep the ball of the oil it is.
That's right. And I'll say this, I'll go ahead on a limb. I think that, first of all, this process will be a 12 to 18-month process. It's not, it's not easy and it's certainly, but it will be easy once it's done. Once it's done, you will be able, everyone will know what your laws are. Everyone will know, be able to reference them. Law enforcement will be able to cite and reference them. All your departments will be able to do that. And your clerk will be able to maintain everything. But initially, I guarantee, you will find things through a codification process that your clerk doesn't even know exists. And that's no implication on your clerk, but there will be aha moments. Just, I imagine you may find that you have ordinances in opposition to each other from the past, if they're hard copy only, or if they're scanned or hard copy and things like that. But, but that's, this is, we have just uncovered one of the very basic tenants of government right here.
That's just like, we probably need to do this trash deal that we're doing.
Well, ma'am, it's, it is every ordinance of the entire county. It's the entire set of ordinance codified and digitized with cross-references and, and easily, you can easily find, after this is done, you can easily find anything on anything. Probably, probably by keyword search.
Okay, that's what I was talking about.
That'd be good.
Do we have that now?
We have this. I'm sorry.
She's cheaper, but.
You don't have, you don't have any of those around now.
That's what I was saying.
In your service. In your service, yes. I've had several to ask him, but what's the order? And I'd be honest, I said, I don't know. I mean, I find it, I'll take it.
Just wanted to deliver it and it comes up once they get back.
Yeah, it'll be nice.
Everybody else good?
Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you so much.
All right, we're going to entertain lunch at this time, so if everybody wants to.
It is.
Lunch here, I looked at how she said it was.
Would y'all like to eat in here or in the kitchen?
Where would y'all rather eat, in there or here, or what?
Commissioners, it doesn't matter, I mean, if, if you want to take a break, I'd say go in there. And if you don't want to take a break and want to eat pizza while the Register of Deeds is here, she is sitting right there.
She is here?
Floor is yours there.
Okay, so I assume everybody has had lunch, you took a break. So everybody's come back, you're full, you're happy, you're content, everybody's doing right, in a good mood. Mine is relatively short, simple. Hopefully fast, but if you have any questions, I'll be happy to answer them. Our office at the Register of Deeds is a little, maybe a little different than some of the other county offices. We don't just provide services to Sampson County citizens. If you've ever lived in Sampson County, if you had family that was born in Sampson County, if you don't live here but had family that passed away in Sampson County, if you ever bought land in Sampson County and moved away and no longer live here, we service any and everybody that has ever lived in this area. Back to, our records go back to when the county, to the inception of the county. So we have a massive amount of records in our office, and we get a lot of, we do a lot of services, provide a lot of services for people from out of county, out of the state, that once lived here. Got any affiliation here, we have those records. I have tried to cut my budget as much as I possibly can and have money to operate. Probably, well, by far, my largest expense is the contract we have with Logan Systems. Logan Systems is our vendor that provides all of our computer equipment, software, hardware, they keep our system updated. They were just there last week, as a matter of fact, brought in a lot of new equipment with, and there's no additional fee for it, it's in with the contract. Their contract reads that they have to keep our equipment up to date, current, the newest of all the software that's out there. They also provide the service. If something breaks, something is not working, we call them. They're based out of Greensboro. If they can't fix it remotely, then they come down here. They will drive down here that day. They were down here three days last week, just updating the equipment. The only equipment that we have that they do not service is our copy machine. And we've got that contract through office value that all the other offices have. So, the line item that I cut from, the office supplies, I cut $800 out of that. Departmental supplies, I cut 700 out of that. I took $1,000 out of the travel that we use for workshops and things because we can utilize Zoom meetings to go to a lot of these workshops now. That will save us on travel. I'm going to terminate the contract that I've got with Pitney Bowes. We're going to do our, I'm going to put my postage on the machine here at the office. I have to come here to finance pretty much every day anyway to take my, bring in my banking and transaction reports so I can meter the mail here and get rid of that lease. We cut one of our fax lines out, we turned in one of our copy machines. I took $500 out of maintenance or repair because, mainly because Logan services our equipment with no extra fee, other than what's in that contract. We do have a typewriter in there, a lot of people don't have those anymore, but we still utilize a typewriter. And occasionally, it will tear up and we'll have to get it repaired. So I left a little bit of money in maintenance or repair. Employee training, I took $1,000 out of that line item because of the accessible Zoom meetings that we can attend. $700 out of rental equipment, which is where the postage machine and everything was. And I cut my dues and subscriptions. I also cut out all of my conference money. I was hesitant to do that because I attend two conferences a year, one in March and one in September. They are not mandated. I cannot lose my position because I do not attend these conferences. And there's a lot of good information that is shared at these conferences with legislative changes that we have to follow with the legal documents that we record. If I do that, I will take that out of my pocket. And normally, they're informative enough that I, you know, I would be willing to do that if I need to. I hesitated to cut that out, but I did because it is not mandatory. I will not lose my job if I don't, if I don't attend those. Some of the things we provide, these are not necessary. They're, they're nice, people like them. This is what we put their legal documents in, once they come in and get a certified copy or record something. I don't have to have those. This paper right here is mandatory, and it's expensive. And we have a lot of people that come in that need certified copies of birth, death, marriage license, and it has to be on this watermark security paper. This paper is expensive. I cannot cut, I cannot cut this out, and we use a lot of this. I've, I've cut everywhere that I know that I can cut and still have money to operate with, and I'm going to have to be very careful to be able to operate within the money that I have left myself. But if you have any questions about any of these line items, I'll be happy to answer them any way I can. This, what we do is mandated. The Register of Deeds, we have to, you know, we have to operate. We're mandated to house these records, record these records, issue these records upon request. I do not have any fluff in my budget. I didn't before, but because of some contracts, leases, and conferences, I was able to cut some, some out of it. So, in looking at this, if you've got any questions at all, I'll be more than happy to answer them.
How much is it to go to your conferences?
The conference class, the one in September, the fee for the class, between the class and the meals, the total thing is about $700, $800. The one in March is in Raleigh. So sometimes I just travel back and forth to that one. And that one's probably $300.
What, how would you have to go, what would you have to go to, to increase your fees? Like birth certificate?
We can't. They're mandated. We are not allowed to charge additional fees for a birth certificate or a death certificate. We can't. The government issues that through the legislature, and we don't, we can't change that.
What are y'all doing to, you know, you get all these advertisements all the time about needing title insurance for your home?
We have got a section on our website where you can go to this website, there's no fee for it. You can put in your email address, and anytime a document is recorded with your name on it, you'll immediately get an email alerting you, something has been recorded for Houston Crumpler. You can look at it. If you've got a name like John Doe, you know, you may get emails quite often. You look at it, and you think, that's not my property. If you get an email and you're alerted by it, alarmed by it, or if you just question it, all you got to do is call our office and, you know, we'll look it up for you and tell you what the transaction. That's on our website. It's on the homepage on the website. That's a free service that Logan also offers.
Is there anything you're doing in your office by way of recording to prevent something like that from happening, where people file false deeds?
Well, we have recording rules, regulations, and guidelines set forth by the legislature. And if a document comes in and it meets those recording standards, we're not attorneys, so we don't have the authority to turn it down. But we can alert people that something has been recorded. But if it meets recording standards, and it has the preparer's name, so the legality of that document is going to fall back on the person that prepared it, which is normally an attorney, or the notary that notarized that document, stating that she actually witnessed the signatures of those people, then it becomes a legal issue because somebody has committed fraudulent activity. But we don't have the resources, or we're not attorneys, to look at it and say, this document's fraudulent. I mean, if we see something that we think looks fishy, we'll definitely look at it before we automatically put it on record. But thank God, we've not had any trouble with that here. We've had a lot of people that have had questions and concerns about it. And I just take them in and explain to them how it works and help them log on to that, sign on with your email. And a lot of times, if you, a lot of senior adults will give us their child's email address because they're not familiar with emails and internet and things like that. And their children will get that alert, you know, something has been recorded under their parent's name.
May I have any more? Thank you. That simple, ain't it?
That was simple enough.
We just appreciate what you do.
Please leave sales tax money in topsoil.
Oh, we have been. Oh, my goodness.
Oh, you going to topsoil today?
We're thinking about it. I'm a kid.
If you do, just be sure to fuel your car up in Sampson before we leave.
My son has already called me, what time you coming back? But I think he's wanting help with the grandkids.
They're a better price if we get a taxi out there.
Thank you, ma'am.
You're welcome.
Appreciate all your help this year.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to ask you to change things up. I think the library might take a little bit longer. Soil and Water has a very small budget, so could we ask Soil and Water to come next?
Sure.
Good afternoon, how are y'all?
Good. How are you?
I am good. Got a couple of handouts.
I'll put it for you.
Okay. Probably got extra, I think I've only got five of these.
Okay. Have you kicked one for yourself?
So what Mr. Hudson's passing out is a copy of our most recent annual report and my updated budget cover sheet. So as he said earlier, we do have a small budget. Our services are not mandated, but we do provide a service to the county to help and protect the county's natural resources. We take technical and financial and educational resources and administer programs designed, and all these are voluntary, to encourage individuals to reserve, conserve, and improve and sustain our soil and water resources for future generations. We also work with the federal staff in our office. So we work together as a team for the farmers and the landowners in the county. Together, we've provided over $5.6 million in conservation incentives for the 2024 program year. These funds are in the form of direct payments and incentives to farmers and landowners to install these own farm conservation practices. For the 2024 year, we awarded, out of state funds, we awarded 26 contracts. We still have 50 state applications on file. The total amount of state funds awarded was $195,313. Federal funds, we awarded 53 contracts. We still have over 300 applications on file. Of course, we've received a lot more federal funds. There was over $5.4 million awarded in federal funds. We also work with the Caheri Tribe and the Friends of Sampson County Waterways to keep our rivers and streams clean. And we've helped them secure $263,000 to do that under what's called a STRAT program. It's called Stream Flow Rehabilitation Assistance Program. We also do outreach and education, not quite as much as extension, but we do generally go to the state fair and work in our conservation booth. We participate in Sampson County Ag Day. We assist in the Area Envirathon and the State Envirathon, Resource Conservation Workshop, which is a week-long conservation camp held at NC State. We send our education coordinator, she goes to that. We're also available for school presentations. So the numbers that you're looking through, that doesn't include the amount of technical assistance we provide, where there's no cost share funding involved, where people come into the office, they need help with, maybe they need a soils map or something for their property. We also assist other departments and agencies, such as the Farm Service Agency. We also provide forms to the tax office. We'll have people come in and they think maybe their, some of their land might be a wetland or something, so they want us to kind of look at it based on the soil map data. And we send a form over to the tax office to kind of help them out with that. We also assist with the voluntary ag district. So if you look at my budget cover, you can see I did ask for a little bit more this year. That increase is all under salaries. I have one employee that's been diligently working to gain his, gain some job approval authority and certified conservation planner. And in years past, when an employee has obtained that, the county has been able to increase their pay. And he has not obtained it yet, but I feel like that's something that he will hopefully be finished with. I think he's turned everything in, should be finished with it sometime in the upcoming year. That was the only difference. I was able to cut some line items. I did take, cut about half of our travel. What I cut out was our, we have a soil and water annual meeting where we attend with our board of supervisors, if they're able to go. It's an opportunity for us to receive training and updates from state and national leadership. It's one time a year in January. I did cut that out because I felt like it was better for us to attend our annual conservation employee training, which is also one time a year. So I cut about half of our travel expenses. I cut out the $120 rental equipment. That was our copier that was on the county's lease agreement. Since we do, are co-located with federal NRCS, we're able to use their copy machine, so I was able to cut that copier. I also was able to cut some of our dues and subscriptions. I left the most local dues and subscriptions because I felt like we would hurt their funding if we, if I cut those and I did away with some of the national dues. So I cut about $1,100 out of dues and subscriptions. And like Mr. Hudson said earlier, I don't have very many line items to choose from. I believe about 98% of our budget is salary and benefits.
Any questions? Do you have revenues?
Yes, we do receive $30,000 from the state, from the North Carolina Division of Soil and Water. We've received the maximum based on our workload in Sampson County. Not all of the counties in North Carolina receive $30,000, but we've received, which unfortunately... but we've received, which unfortunately, only 30,000. Several years ago, it used to be $54,000, but the state budget was cut. And of course, the conservation districts, they received a cut from the state as well, but we received the maximum of the $30,000. In our matching funds budget, we also received $3,600 in matching funds from the state. And that's to help us cover meeting costs. When we have our Soil and Water Board meetings, we can use that money to pay for anything other than supervisor travel. It's a tiny budget. It's, there's like $3,600 that comes from the state. And then we are working with the Foundation of Soil and Water. We have 13 contracts that we monitor every year. And we've received $1,950 for monitoring those contracts. I think that contract with the foundation ends maybe two or three years. So we do get that money in. So we can use that money to supplement our Fund 11 budget. If, if, I have to ask for permission to use it from the water commissioners, so we can use it to supplement that budget if we, if we have enough money for something else.
Do you have any questions?
I think it's a pretty tight budget. I mean, most of the salaries and, not much you can pull from.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you. I appreciate everything y'all do, and I do not envy your position. Feel free to stop by the office and, and see us. And in your bedtime reading, look over our annual report and let me know if you have any questions. Yes, you'll probably find James' picture in there. Yes. He does. He, I would, he's.
He's so smart.
He is, he is. James and I were in college together.
Oh, really?
Yes. As a matter of fact, he was a student in a class that I helped TA. I don't, we graduated about the same time, but yeah, when we were at state, I helped TA a class one year, and he ended up being the student. And that's where we met. And then all these years later, we end up working together.
That's all right.
Yes, he's a smart guy. We certainly appreciate him. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good afternoon. Pretty good. How about y'all? No, she said, oh, I'm sorry.
I, I can project. If, do you email me something or have it?
Um, I printed, I printed copies. You said there was no presentation, so I printed copies.
We now have capability.
I gotcha. I understand. Okay, so, um.
Do you need those handed out to each of us, or?
Um, well, I guess it depends on where you want me to start. I can certainly start there.
Oh, you don't mind.
I'm trying to hand out, you can give them.
Okay, well, just go ahead and hand them that. But I'm not going to talk about that quite yet. I want to kind of just start in general, and then I will get to that. And then I also brought new budget cover letters. Do you mind handing those out? Thank you. Okay.
You all did.
Yeah, he did. I, I don't think, I don't think I have anything else. So hopefully, this brings back memories of when I was running the homeschool connections and, and I was, the parents were all passing out the flyers. Um, let's see. So, um, I, I guess I'll do a little bit of a budget walkthrough like everybody else did and just talk about the library briefly. So library services, we of course provide book checkout, and that's traditionally what everybody thinks we provide. Beyond that, we provide public computer access, whether through our computers that we offer. We also provide public Wi-Fi. We provide printing, faxing, copying, and scanning at the majority of the libraries. The scanning, copying, faxing, printing, that is all fee-based. Other services that we provide, we provide some online services such, well, as of what's in there right now. I'm going to tell you what, what we may still provide. We have something called Brainfuse Online Tutoring. That is a online tutoring resource where kids can get online and get a tutor K through 12. They pick their subject and the tutor interacts with them live while they are online with them. Currently, we also offer student access on an opt-in, no, I'm sorry, it used to be opt-in. It's opt-out basis for Clinton City Schools and Sampson County School students. So with their student ID numbers, they have access to what I just said, as well as the eBooks and the audiobooks. Some of the kids' portions of that are actually offered to us through a state kind of consortium that only costs us $100 a year. The materials that are for adults, those cost us a bit more, but if we were to drop that, we would no longer have access to it. And I have heard from some people who are unable to get out that they still use their library card to access those online materials even though they can't come into the library. Other services that we provide, we have NC Live. That again is at no cost to us other than we have to remain a state aid eligible library. And that offers free online language learning. It offers local history research. It offers peer-reviewed articles, some nursing articles, some history articles. Just, it's, it's millions of resources all available through NC Live. And that's available to our cardholders as well as our student access holders. Just trying to think. So other things that we may end up doing on a little more personal level, because we offer the computer service, the printing, the copying, the faxing, doctors' offices often refer their patients to us when they are having trouble, like accessing something online for us to get them started. We have someone who is going through cancer treatments and they have to come in and fax their, their reimbursement things in to get reimbursed for some of those cancer treatments. Those are just a few short, short stories there. So we also do programming. The majority of our programming right now is for children. Right now, we're in summer reading season, and that is a time for us to encourage reading and learning through the summer for our students. And we offer fun and educational programs more heavily during that time period. And people also use the library more often in the summer for their children to get books because their school libraries are closed, to help prevent the reading loss, reading proficiency loss during the summer. So I don't want to keep going on and on. So I'll, I'll talk about our budget for a moment, and then I'll go into the sheet. So in your, the original cover sheet, when I first submitted the library's budget, I did decrease it slightly by $18,000. That was mostly through looking at different vendors for our faxing and our printing, copying, scanning, as well as computer and print management. As well as cutting some cleaning contract money as well. So I'd already done that. But then as of where we stand today, our budget has gone down from $917,259 for the current year to $7,000, uh, $734,725, which is a reduction of a little, about $182,000, a little over. So that is the reduction where it stands. The majority of that reduction was done through part-time salaries, as well as reductions, totally cutting out some contracts as far as cleaning contracts. I cut out another online resource, not the two that I mentioned to you, a different one, that didn't have as much use and I didn't think had as much impact on our community. Let's see, other line items that were already cut. We cut our supplies. We cut contracted services was a huge one that was cut. Programming, we cut that almost in half. We are hopeful we can get some donations or some sponsorships from the community to help with those numbers. Dues and subscriptions, that is where we cut out some things. We really cut out most of our print periodicals except the Sampson Independent. We do need to retain that because we, we microfilm that and keep it in our library so people have access to it later. Again, as far as I know, we're the only local resource where you can get access to that further, further back. Other things, we, we cut our book budget by about $20, $21, $22,000. All right. And of course, a lot of that did come from the decision made that county support would not be continuing go for the Garland Library because of low usage. All right. Out of my budget, about $115,000 is state funds. As part of that, though, our state funds are somewhat dependent on the local funds we receive. So at this point, I don't expect we'll receive a lot less in state funds, but the further we go down, the further our state funds may reduce. And that would mean we would kind of have to reduce, if you say cut out $5,000, I'd really have to cut out maybe $7,000 or $8,000 out of my budget. But being said, I'm very thankful for all the community support and business support and, and the Town of Garland support for what they are offering to help extend the schedules for the library branches. So what I have given you is a proposed schedule as of today with, this is taking into account funding that is being provided by the Town of Garland, by Commissioner Crumpler's family business, by Mayor Sterling, as well as a amount of money from Monarch Bioenergy. The money from Monarch Bioenergy, I'm stretching that to give Newton Grove some additional time because no one else has stepped in to offer a donation specifically for them. I will say, this, this proposed schedule is going to be tighter just on the fact that, you know, where we want to try to do more and try to, to, to get out into the community and, or not, sorry. Do more to get people to come into the branches and do more to get people notified about what we're actually doing. So they know better, you're not just books. They know the other things that we offer. But I do think this is something that we can do based on our current budget where we think it would stand plus where we think our donation commitments would stand. So you can see, I actually took the proposed hours per week slightly up from what they are now. But again, that's going to take a few different things. People will have to work alone more often in the branches, but for lunches, you most likely will need two people during that time to, to get the person out for their lunch. Or there can be some other creative scheduling done. It, it is good as much as possible to have a couple of people in the branches. I'll give you an example today. When you're having a program, you can't have just one person. You need one person who can run the branch, do the copy, do the checkout. And sometimes when we're helping people with more complicated things, it may take 30 minutes to help that one person. So in Newton Grove today, we're having a program and we have two people there, but one person is there to help the patrons and the other person is there to run the program. All right, let me just see if there's anything else I wanted to go through. Oh, also as part of this proposed schedule, I had cut out some contracted services for a security system. I would need to put that back and get a, a mobile panning button because that is something that we did not have. Let me just see.
I, I suggested to Kelsey that we look at that. If we have one person in a, in a library, they wear the lanyard around the neck and it's a panic button, like I fall in and I can't get up, but it's a, it's an alarm system. You call the police or whatever. Maybe there's, because we have actually had instances, and every place does, where someone comes in and it's a little squirrely. You have that in, in the Garland Library, actually. There was basically a sexual assault that happened a few years ago in Garland Library with a, a person that came in. And that's, that's part of what, I mean, I know that we're in open session, but I mean, you need to know why. That's part of what is contributing to the concern about one, one female librarian, or for that matter, sometimes a male librarian being there. The, the cash drawer was stolen at another time, but it was not during hours of operation. So, so there, you know, there are considerations, but a panic button that a person wears is a lot better than trying to get somewhere and push a button on a desk.
I mean, we talked about that a little bit earlier. This is very inexpensive, but it's, it could be a line safety. We were in agreeance with that, I'm sure. That's no problem.
So, so like I said, that, that's kind of the consideration. Again, we would still need two people at certain times anyway, just because of what is going on. Also because, you know, at some points with safety, some branches you may need some, again, he did speak about Garland, just because there has been more issues. But this does include some time at lunch that they would definitely, you know, have to be alone, but that extends the hours for the day.
You're, you're going to be able to stay open at lunchtime?
Yes, with, with this schedule. With this schedule. It will, it will take other allowances, but, but with this schedule, yes.
I believe there is a possibility. I can't promise anything, but I, I have some promising prospects that we will be, we're going to be able to raise the additional funds for Newton Grove to stay open four days. At this time, I'm not sure, but I'm very confident that we'll be able to get the funds for that.
That's very good news. Thank you. I probably have forgotten something I want to say, but I actually was, was expecting questions from, from all of you, so.
Well, I was going to ask about the two people because that was one of the concerns that some of the people in Roseboro had. Having the two people may have contributed to the cost being more excessive than necessary, but the fact that it's been explained, I wasn't aware of a sexual assault in Garland. And that kind of explains why you feel a need for the security of having two people there instead of just the one. But if you have the lanyard like Jim was talking about, that could, could help remedy the security concern.
Yes, yes, sir.
Have you thought about any more programming you could do in the libraries to interest people and get them excited about coming to the library other than reading books?
So we already do stuff other than just reading. We have storytimes, but we also do things more for school-age kids such as Lego Club, such as STEM activities and things like that. I will say, we only have had a permanent youth services coordinator in place, not even a year yet. For about a year before that, I was doing all the youth service program as well as directing the library other than some help from some, the branch managers from now on in. So this summer, we have more things going on, but we have discussed, you know, so, so for example, maybe in Garland, the storytime's not working, so let's try something else. And we have some more plans to try some more adult programming as well in the branches. Kids' programming is a library's kind of bread and butter, and it is what people are more, you know, like, oh, I have my child, I'm looking for something to do. But to try to see what different things might draw people in. We've received some feedback of some different ideas from the Garland community, from one of the residents there. So those are some things that we're going to try to explore. But what some of, so you asked that, so do y'all mind if I, I kind of talk to you about what I'm hoping we can accomplish this year? Is that okay? So these are some things I think will help us determine the best direction to go. Do an hour-by-hour door counts for a period at each branch to see which hours are the best used rather than just the day. Like an hour-by-hour to see which hours are being used the most. Survey the community to see what types of resources, programming, and services they would like to see the libraries offer. That doesn't mean we can offer everything, especially with a restricted budget, but we can see what we can do within our capacity. Explore establishing a Friends of the Library. There was a Friends of the Library several years ago. A previous director disbanded it. The trick to that is we have to find some community members who are very passionate and excited and willing to take that on because that is not something that the staff has, can run with. You know, we can get it started, but they are the ones that have to start. Did you want to say? You look like you want to say something.
Oh, yeah, I'm going to say something in a second.
Okay, all right. All right. So the purpose of the Friends, though, would be to help supplement our funding. That would be the primary purpose. Continue, this is just a simple one. Continue to serve our library patrons. Um, continue, this is just a simple one, continue to serve our library patrons to the best of our ability in all the different ways we're already serving them. Um, explore, expand adult programming through free and low, low cost programming, um, and work on ways that we can collect data to show more than just our door count. So for example, all of the things we do don't necessarily take place in our library branches. We might have a program that's not even in our library branch. We might visit a school. And we keep up with that to a point, but we don't, haven't been keeping up with it where I can separate it out once it's all been compiled. So that is a goal that I have for the next year, is keeping that separate so we can see, hey, wait a minute, that door count doesn't include this number of people that you serve outside the building. So, um, those are just a few things.
Sounds good.
Moving right to Rick.
So I was going to suggest that, that a friends of the library program can be successful, uh, but it needs to be thoughtful. If you think about how volunteerism is overall, uh, it's difficult to get volunteers, especially in emergency service areas, but I think the library will attract volunteers that may be a, a different type of individual. They, they're not ready to go out and jump on a fire truck, but they do, they do enjoy helping other people, uh, perhaps, you know, retirees, um, especially those with an education background. Uh, but I think that you should also recognize volunteers, just like I think you should recognize county employees. Um, with volunteers, maybe they get special perks, uh, special, special events for the volunteers. Um, you know, I don't know quite what that looks like, but other, other libraries, they have friends of the library or volunteer librarians that, that can help the permanent staff, uh, and the paid staff. Uh, but you have to be careful about the usage because at some point, if, if, if you're overusing a volunteer, they have to think, well, I mean, I'm, I should be paid for this. So, uh, you, you do, you do have to think about that, too.
Yeah.
Um, but I, I do believe that it's, uh, something worth exploring in the library.
And, um, my only encouragement there would be to make sure you work with HR, to make sure that that person or a people who volunteer fit the mold for what we're looking for. We don't have someone that just wants to come in and be trouble or whatever. I mean, go ahead and run the process background.
Oh, yeah, you got to do background checks.
I mean, I just want to be sure that that is part of the program.
Now, this, this may be something actually to talk about with the school system. This is another area that crosses the line, but it's, it's innovative. Uh, I, I don't know, I don't believe you do, and actually, um, Ms. Dillman might have more knowledge having worked here in the school system. Uh, and I think we may have talked about this once before, a sponsors for academic talent program. Um, basically that seniors, scholarship, scholarship funds are, are created for seniors, but for them to be eligible to receive those scholarships, a certain amount of community service work is required, number of hours of community service work. And in, in Onslow, that's been very successful to get a twelve-hundred-dollar scholarship. They're required to do something like seventy-five to a hundred hours of community service. So if you have high school seniors that are actively seeking community service, one of the places that they work in, in Onslow, they work at the museum and they work at the library. And, uh, so you have responsible kids that are trying to get scholarships, um, that, that are helping out in a safe environment. Um, and, and just, you know, they may not be able to handle some things, but, but they can handle others.
Um, and I would like to say with the friends, a lot of, one of the hu, like one primary purpose a lot of times of the friends is not always to volunteer inside the library anyway. They're more doing fundraising. Some of, depending on, so, um, so they actually end up usually having to make their own nonprofit and, and then, then manage their own, um, funds. But then they would still be able to be used at times for certain volunteer purposes. I do know, we don't typically allow volunteers to use our, our system because it's, it's against state law to disclose the private information in the library system. Um, I mean, we could if it was someone we really, you know, really trusted and they were with us long-term, but if they're only going to be with us for a short time, we would probably have them do other things, so just help with programming and, and things like that.
What exactly, how much, you know, does Newton Grove lack now because you've got that extra grant money?
Um, so if, to be honest, if someone had just, um, twelve thousand, five hundred, that would, hold on, I'm trying to do the math. I think that would be fine. Or even just twelve thousand would probably be fine.
Right, right now I have pleasures for five thousand. Um, I think I can get the rest of it.
Commissioners, one note, since this additional money is coming in, um, we will need to hire additional part-time staff. The part-time staff that you have now to, to now fulfill the hours of obligation, you'll go over twenty hours per week, um, and you'll, eventually you'll be moving them from part-time to full-time status, then we'll owe benefits. So the, this, naturally it stands to reason that, you know, we were cutting back on hours. We went back from twenty to ten. Do you know with this, how many, you know, what we will need now? Two more?
Um, so, uh,
The two more that we, the two that we took?
The two, the two that we took, um, if, if the additional day comes through with Newton Grove, then I would need the third that I cut myself.
Is there any way we could reframe the hours so that it would allow us to maintain the same staff without increasing the headcount?
Well, what, what I had thought, so, so unfortunately, because part-time staff can't work over so many hours in a year, um, there's not a way to add enough hours to the staff I have unless I do cut back from the schedule that I just provided. What I had thought perhaps we could do, and, um, Mr. Hudson, um, may or may not agree with me on this, but if we were to have to hire some, and Nancy, you can jump in if this wouldn't work either, but to hire them with a donor, it's a time contingent thing. You know, you are only guaranteed temporary, yes, but, but even go as far as say, hey, as of this date, you're, you're, you're done possibly, uh, which will be June thirtieth of twenty-twenty-six. Um, but the hours that I provided, there's, there's not any way for me to do that without having, um, additional, at least long-term. I can do almost anything short-term. I probably shouldn't tell y'all that, but, but I've had a lot of, I, I've had a lot of staffing things through the, through the time. Again, I told you, you know, I was the youth services coordinator and the director for a year, basically. Um, so I can do almost anything short-term, but a year, uh, it, yeah, that might be difficult because right now we're also maintaining, um, and we had to do a little funky stuff to maintain the current hours with only seven people. So that may have bumped up some of their hours temporarily for the month, which would affect it closer to the end of the year.
This is more than Kelsey and I talked about, um, she's not, we don't need to be constrained by what we've done in the past. If someone got a one-hour lunch hour before, they don't have to have a one-hour lunch hour. If we opened at nine AM, we don't have to work open at nine AM, we could open at ten AM. I think what I've heard from the public since, since I've been out there and, and the public have not been shy about talking to me, uh, is that we'd rather have library open more days than particularly the same, the same hours per day, the same hours per day that you were open before. Uh, and then it would be up, up to us looking at data to see, well, when is the slowest time? Is it from nine AM to ten AM? If that's the case, should we open at ten AM so we can cut back on daily hours and be open more days? But all of that is kind of in flux. Uh, any changes, however, that need to be made with the library, whether it's additional revenues, we need to budget that in the form of donations to the library system, or if it is, um, you know, putting, putting the alarm system and the, the emergency button back online, Melissa needs a cost for that, like immediately, so that we can add that to the budget.
Well, I'd just like to reiterate that I'd like you to relook at the hours to make sure that we can try to hold the number of employees consistent without having to bring on additional part-time help. Uh, that would be a ma, may be a concern for many, I mean, the donations we're trying to generate is to maintain the service, not necessarily expand the cost, um, because the donations may not be available next year, uh, then we might be back in the same boat.
So.
I would just be very careful about changing the hours to the point that it causes you to increase your headcount.
Right, so I guess the way, um, the looking at it is if, if the public was trying to get back what they felt they were losing, um, I just don't have enough staff, even if I get donations, like, even if I get donations, I don't have enough staff to spread the hours out and pay them because of the cap, because of the cap of the nine hundred and, you know, I think we try to keep it at nine fifty, but that's even going up closer to nine ninety-five, which is a thousand hours you can't go to there. So it's just more the fact that I, I can't maintain the, the similar hours, like if we're adding back days, because I've already almost maxed out the staff I have left, um, with the three days in Garland. Once you go to the fourth day in Garland, then you're very close to being maxed out. Um, or actually, I think you are, you are already maxed out. You can do part of it, but then the rest would have to go over to another employee. So with the donations, though, like, we were able to work it out where I'm actually using less donations to put more hours back. Like, I figured that part out. So, you know, originally it seemed, you know, for Roseboro, we might need twenty-eight thousand, but I'm putting back all the hours at twenty thousand. So, so I am already working in that way by trying to be creative with the scheduling and look at how we can do things differently to still staff. Um, but I, I don't know how we do that without at least having definitely the other two, at least the two, so.
Mr. Crumpler, as I may, we took her two part-time people, they're up front here now because we were taking her hours. If we give her the hours back through donation or however it is, she's going to need those two positions to provide the services.
Yeah.
Because we took them from her already.
Okay.
So it's not really adding back, it's just now we can pay for them, so we're going to have to put them back in.
Okay, I got you.
So I'm sorry, I wasn't doing it. I was trying to explain, but Nancy did that much more eloquently than me. She doesn't want me to get too close to those hours.
Good.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Thank you. Thank you.
I promise I'll call you at seven in the morning.
It's alright. Yeah, well. Ah, thank y'all very much. I do want to say, I really have appreciated all the, all the support from the community, from businesses, I said that at the beginning, but I, I really am appreciative of that, so, and your support as well.
Thank you.
So thank y'all very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Ready to move on?
Yes, sir.
Brad, you up, bro?
Brad.
You just cut it?
Yeah, you did.
That way you go to that suitcase, you didn't know.
Hey, I got the case with me before I go.
It's page, on page fifty-four, North Ron Carpet Ascension went down a hundred and five thousand dollars. And in the budget, page fifty-four is your cheat sheet, and, uh, I'll find it in a second, Carpet Ascension. Yep. Two hundred and twenty-eight in your budget, page two-two-eight.
What you want to know? I'm ready for you. Um, our budget, I'll go ahead and start, without salaries, because we didn't do anything without salaries, you know, we have been cut, uh, thirty-nine percent this budget year without capital outlay, uh, without capital outlay. Uh, with the capital outlay in there, we've been cut like fifty-three percent. And we're not only seeing cuts, um, in county funding, but we're also seeing cuts with NC State funding and USDA funding. So, uh, last Wednesday, we got the word that USDA was cutting funding for land-grant universities twenty-five percent, and we got word on the, on Friday that we were getting cut through NC State travel twenty percent. So, um, it's trickling down to us, uh, slowly from every direction. The travel is, uh, one thing that I'm concerned about, and the reason why is because we have such a large county to cover, and we have farmers on every part, not just farmers, but also citizens that we're also delivering, uh, programs to. One program that we're delivering is up in Plainview. We got invited to go up there and do some programming this year. And for, uh, one of my agents hits a sixty-nine mile round trip from, from our office to there and back to deliver that program. And so far, that programing has been, uh, fairly well-received. We're not only doing, um, home and gardening, but we're also doing health and nutrition, and we're doing 4H development. So all of that is being delivered up at Plainview. We looked at going to Harrell's, uh, to the Harrell's Community Building, and we didn't have the interest that we had down there this year. We looked at doing it maybe next year, but that's probably something that's going to be cut out just because of the budget cuts that we've received so far. So when I went into my budget again and looked at cutting, or things that were in here, I do have one thing that we can cut out of the budget. And this came from a conversation that I had with Mr. Hudson. I sent him an email and said that, um, hey, why don't we get the inmates to wash the vehicles? And we'll save some money. And he said, well, we've already cut county washing vehicles out. Well, ours had somehow snuck through when I went in and looked at it. So in our maintenance repair of vehicle line item, we have two hundred dollars for cleanings that was not taken out, so that's something that we can take out, Melissa. That's, um, five-three, five-three, zero, zero.
For the record, this is an honest man.
Yes, sure. But I'm fixing to get to the bad part.
Thank you for your time, Brad.
Back to the travel. With our five-two, five-one, zero, zero, that's our gas, oil and tires, when we figured this budget back in February, uh, we had just received a brand-new, uh, vehicle from the county. And at the time, we were using it about three hundred miles a month. But now that was October, November and December, and January, which is basically our slower times of the year. From March, April, May, and so far in June, we have doubled the mileage that we're using it, uh, and just because that's our busy time. So I have wrote very low on that line item, and it's about fifty percent low. But I'm not going to come in here and ask you for any more money because I understand the situation that we are in. What I would like to do is, um, talk with Melissa, in our maintenance and repair buildings and grounds, we have, uh, money in there that's been proposed, not approved, proposed, to replace our greenhouse cover and our inflator fan on our extension greenhouse. Well, it's four years overdue already anyhow. One more year's not going to hurt it, I don't think. Um, we could move that money to our gas, tires and oil, two thousand dollars of that, the gas, tires and oil, to make that line item four thousand dollars. And then we could just cut out the rest of that six hundred dollars, and there would be six hundred more dollars going back into the county fund.
This is now the board's budget, so at their direction, I can do that.
This is now the board's budget, so at their direction, I can do that.
Okay. Will you write that up for Melissa?
I will. I'll write that up for you.
Now's a good, now's a good time.
Yeah, travel is. And if, you know, we hadn't have been cut from NC State like we're going to be cut, it wouldn't be as bad. And because of the cuts that we're having, we're not getting reimbursed for private. Matter of fact, I'll go ahead and tell you, I have already eaten February, March, April, traveled myself. Whatever traveling I've done for programming, I've eaten. Um, the good thing is, though, the rest of my agents have not had to eat their travel. Uh, they have been approved to get their travel put in, so um we are desperate in that area. And I would, I appreciate y'all allowing me to move that money around and keep us being able to serve our clients here in the county.
That is the only way that you can do your job, is do that travel when you get to go somewhere. Your work is not in the office.
You you know, it's, you're exactly right. And I, I know Mr. Hudson's talked about Mr. Crumpler being a ChatGPT guy. Well, I am too. I'm a huge ChatGPT guy. I took a class at NC State about three years ago on artificial intelligence before it ever come out and started doing stuff. And I actually went in there and asked if extension was going to be viable in twenty-five years. And the response I got was, yes, if there's changes made. And one of the changes that it said had to be made was we still had to be personable because that's what people rely on with our service, is the personal connections that we have, the trust that we have with our clients, where our clients can call us and say, here's my problem, or I'm seeing this, what can you do to help me with this? Well, then that's a trip there, make observations, have an hour-long conversation, figure out what to do. And a lot of times I can't figure out what to do when I'm there, so I call a specialist at NC State. And I'll turn around and I'll say, look, I need your help. And then they travel, you know, down here. Matter of fact, I had a specialist down here Monday.
Their, their travel is going to be cut off, is it?
Their travel is going to be cut off. So it's.
We don't, I I don't know if everybody understands this, but I do because it's my business. If you go and get good, I mean, everybody at the road gets good. And I don't have the um, in my business, I rely on them. We do a lot of conversations back and forth and um we communicate, and now it's going to be, I mean, I'll be honest, there's other ways we've got now. I'll be in the field taking pictures of everything, sitting on the bread, and Brad sends them out the road, and I'll get pictures back. We've been here before. It's not like we haven't done it before, but it is a pain. It's not like that personal service that I I've had, I've come to know for the last two years. Anyway, um, we're back to making sure your phones and your iPads work like they should, and they're taking good pictures, and you've got Zooms and everything else because you'll need everything you can get to help my growers to be out. And so y'all understand, in a situation that we're in right now with the water and the rain and the weather, that department is very viable to farmers. We are, we're, we're depending on their knowledge and what they've got and who they've got contacts with. I understand travel deals.
So that's what I have to offer as far as our department. And I'm sorry it can't be more, but you know, if, we we are bare bones down there now. What our budget does is funds our operation, just our operation. That's all it funds. It doesn't fund our programming. That is done through grants. Uh, and we receive a lot of grants. I think we received um maybe close to sixty thousand dollars worth of grants last year uh to put programming on. A lot of that's through the United Way and through donors and sponsors. So a a big thing that's going to help us is we do not have a facility big enough to house some of the trainings that we put on. You know, the most we can seat is in that arena with two hundred people. And we had a training last week that had four hundred people there, so it was standing room only uh with people in there. Uh, now that we do not have to pay for the, and I'm hoping this is still true, that we don't have to pay for the rental of the Expo Center, uh, we can have that meeting there uh and seat everybody that's coming to our meetings.
We did, we used to have to pay it because I had a program there. And my program had to pay for the rental of the Expo Center, so I hope that's true too. I just want everybody to appreciate and know what's done at the extent. It's the best-kept secret in Sampson County. They have programs, teaching photographs that teach people how to do things, teach you how to pan food, how to do recipes, how to shop on budget. It's the, because that's the program I worked with when I was there. I'm not saying it because I worked there. I'm saying it because it's true. It's a good program, and like Brad was talking about, the farmers, it just helps them. So we depend on our farmers. We depend on the fruit, the vegetables that they they grow and hogs and cows and all that kind of stuff that they produce. So it's a needed, very much needed. And I'm so glad that North Carolina State helps us out this, and A and T helps us out in so many ways financially to keep the program going.
And I'm glad you mentioned A and T because um we've got two vacancies right now. One was a hundred percent grant-funded. Um, and well, it was fifty percent grant-funded, fifty percent NC State-funded. The other one was fifty percent NC A and T-funded and fifty percent county-funded. And um we really need, I put in the reclassification for those two positions to be one position, uh to be the farmworker education. That's the one where we just had four hundred H-two-A workers in our building. Uh, that's a position that we are going to really need to look at. And what we're doing right now is looking at partnering with Johnson in Wayne County. Wayne is not, is not on board right now. Uh, but Wayne County uh hopefully will come on board so that if it's just us and Johnson County, it would be a thirty-three percent county and a thirty-three percent uh Johnson, and then a thirty-three percent NC State. Uh, our department, the College of Agriculture and Life Sciences, still has not lifted their hiring freeze. So we are still waiting on them to lift their hiring freeze if that position has not been cut out of the the um employment. And it would not add any other funding than we had last year. That thirty-three percent would be equal to the position that we were already paying for, so it would be a wash. And if Wayne County would come on, it would be less because it would be twenty-five percent to Sampson County to offer that.
Did you have any further questions for Brad?
On the uh, on the Expo Center, Jeff, was that something that's part of the proposed budget to not charge fees that has to be approved, or has it already been approved?
Just to not charge our own county departments.
Fees.
Fees. Since it's, because it's accountable. It, it's not, well, it's not really named in the budget. It's just that we didn't put any fees in county departments to pay for the Expo Center. That, because it's us paying ourselves.
Yeah, I agree.
Um, so I would have had to have budgeted fees as opposed to just saying, book them.
Yeah.
Um, so it's a way to save money.
Okay. I got you. Thank you.
Mm-hmm. But outside, they'll charge.
Brad, that's it, bro.
That's it?
Thank you so much.
Can you hang around for a couple minutes after the pitch? Can you hang around for a couple minutes after the pitch?
I can. Your grass look better. Does your grass look better?
Oh, it's high.
Thanks, Brad.
Thank you. I'll be here for a minute.
When you take right for then, or you come back recap?
Um, a couple of things. Nia has been on standby uh for Board of Elections.
Yeah.
So um if if she's available, but I thought we would actually take longer than this. I thought, so I'm a little off on my time schedule. You know, once again, I would call on Ray in the back of the room if he'd like to come up and fill time, but I don't know that he's, I think he's okay with not doing that, right, Ray?
I'm sorry?
Yeah, that's what I thought. No, I I do have a couple of things that I could go with the board, and it would take her a few minutes, so I could cover a couple of things, and then then y'all could take a break if you want.
Down we go.
So it's a couple of things. I I was asked a question about um travel and training and and what kind of impact that was in the budget. So to show the impact of that for this year, in the year that we're in right now today, FY twenty-five budget, your travel and training altogether was seven-hundred-and-eighty-eight-thousand-seven-oh-nine, seven-eight-eight-seven-oh-nine. Um, I asked that department heads cut all travel and training that that they did not consider essential. I even went so far as to say for maintaining licensure, certification, or required, just basically to maintain your program. And and in fact, it went from seven-eight-eight-seven-oh-nine down to s, down to five-nine-five-two-three-nine, five-nine-five-two-three-nine. So that difference is a hundred-and-ninety-three-thousand-four-seventy. If we're talking about multi-year budgeting, it's all about money. Well. That's it. What happened to it? Melissa, you were, I had shared this with y'all, you didn't delete it by any chance, did you?
No, we just saw it, it was, you could literally see it.
Yeah, it just come up.
You could see it before I clicked on it?
Yeah, it did show up.
Click inside the, um.
What, here? Well. What, this is just as weird a thing, maybe it's this. Hold on. I've run the numbers. Okay, well, I pull this out. And it does it. All right, all right, I know what happened. When I minimize that prior screen, it minimized me to another page. Okay. I got it now. All right, so what I've done, I've taken those statements, and we've applied dollars to them. Now, one thing to remember, you have a funding formula, so the funding formula with the school systems, that does say that 25% of the prior year revenues. So I've taken that into account, so next year, we ran the numbers based on a six cent increase, or based on a, say if it was a four and a half cent increase, what those dollar amounts, that dollar amount increase would be to the Boards of Education, because if you do increase taxes, then you do owe them 25%. But it's not, it's not any amount, and I've actually talked about this a little bit, it's what you would be able to pull out of your fund balance, because we've gone so low on fund balance this year, you have flexibility. So if you were doing, I just had Finance run two numbers for me, okay? So if you were doing a six cent tax increase, then the public education funding formula next year would need 274,000. If you did a 2% COLA, every 1% of the COLA, and I rounded, it's 339,000, so it's 678,000. If you did a $500 flat bonus per employee, it's 285,000. And if you wanted to increase travel and training, say you didn't do any more travel and training this year, if you want to increase travel and training next year by, if you were at 50% was, and I just added this in, 50% was 96,735, I just did a flat 100. So if you did a flat 100, based on a, this column, based on a 6% tax increase, you would need another $1 million. Well, you're going to probably get 600,000 or so more in natural growth of your tax base. So you would go to the fund balance, or if you had, if you had another revenue source, like if you had increased fees and charges, that would defer, you know, defray some of that, but the most you'd go to the fund balance is around 452. So you're still under 2 million. Right now, you're at 1,312. So 1,312, and you would add 252, so this just balances. And that's, that is 2%, this column is you do a 2% COLA, but you don't do the $500 flat bonus. Well, in this column, you did a six cent tax increase, you did a 2% COLA, but you did, you also did a $500 flat bonus. $500 for your full-time equivalents is 285,000. So you would go up to 1.3 million, of which 600,000 comes from an increase in your tax base, and your fund balance appropriation would be about 737 more. So you'd be right at 2 million. Now, if you, if you did not do a six cent increase, if you did, and I have not run other iterations, so I just did six and four and a half through Finance, you could do, if you do five and a half, it would be between that, obviously. So six, you're here, you know, either B or C column, B or C. If you did four and a half, the way I would, I would say you'd have to get to four and a half, is you don't put money away for county buildings, that's a half a penny, and then the one cent that you would be putting away for public school buildings, you just defer that, you don't do that penny. So that's one and a half pennies off. So if you were at four and a half cent, your, actually, your increase to public education goes dramatically down because of the way we're funding them this year with a proposed two cent increase. So that would only be 68,000 more. A 2% COLA is the same, 678 all the way across. Your $500 employee bonus, that's not in this one, it is in this one. Travel is the same, so here, you're at 846,000, which means 600,000 is natural growth, so you're only at 246,000 out of fund balance, additional out of fund balance. So you'd be, you know, 1.6, 1.5, 1.6. And remember, a portion of whatever you use out of fund balance, a portion of every one of these lines is going to come back to you by the end of the year when you have lap salary. Now, it's not just that amount, remember, you are doing 1,312,000 already. So it'll be 1,312,000 plus that. If you do four and a half cent property tax increase, it's just 68,000 more to the school systems. And by the way, that's not each school system, that's the two of them, split up by per pupil appropriation. So it's between the two. There's your 2% COLA, if you want to do a $500 per employee flat bonus, and once again, you can, you can change this if that is $250, if it's, you know, whatever it is. $100,000 travel and training, which can be any amount, if it's 50,075. But you'll see that, that these are all of your expenditures here, okay? So all of that, all of those are expenditures, and these are all, all the revenues that you've got to balance things out. And it does balance. So we do expect, according to Jim, about normal tax, tax base increase of $600,000 a year is about what you've been averaging. Now, this is other, other, I don't, I don't really think other factors into this recurring stuff, it's big stuff possibly, but it's one time. Now, this is not one time, I should say that, but Hobden High School, I think you try to continue to get state money to help with that $4 million, or you're going to have to hit fund balance, it's like 4.2 million. I know that Sampson County Schools has said 8 million, but I've also been told that the deal was, they do, you reuse your athletic facilities. So that keeps it at four. GFL, you negotiate it, or you fund balance it, or you fee it, and the maximum there is about 1.2 million. But they do need a sewer line right now that the county owns, and that is a chip on your bargaining table. So if you think about, if you think about it, here's this year's budget. There went my power cord. So, you know, you've got this year's budget, and you know exactly what this is, we talked about it, I presented it, you take that spreadsheet, there's next year's budget. That's it. Everything else holds the line, you allow movement inside departments, the differences that you really have from one year over the next would include your public education funding formula, it would include your 2% COLA, or a 1% COLA, or a no COLA, but if you do a no COLA, we know what we've heard. You can do a flat bonus per employee that would give a little bit more money to your lower paid positions, or no bonus, no flat bonus, and just do a percentage. And then you've got travel and training, which, which some amount of that should probably be reinstituted. All of those numbers on the spreadsheet could change, and they're all consistent with what I just showed you with this. Now, the reason these two, these two lines right here are in yellow, and I should probably, I should probably make that one yellow as well, is, is that this, these things are the, that's the money. So your, your public education funding formula, it can be, it can be as little as 68,000. And then a cost of living adjustment is whatever you want it to be for the following year, and your travel and training shall remain at the same level. And you don't, you don't even have to say, you absolutely don't need to say what your COLA is next year, you could certainly wait, or you could say our target is, our goal would be a minimum COLA of 2%. That is, that is some guidance, and then just wait and see what your actual revenues are. But remember, everything you do here is contingent upon the funding resources of county in that year. So of course, you need to see what your sales tax numbers are, you need to see what your other numbers are, but this is, this is, this is letting the public know, we are thinking ahead, and by, by having this spreadsheet, we're looking at what additional things, if you consider this budget your baseline, you've taken us back to, this is the minimum that county government's going to do, then you can also say, this is what we're going to do on top of that for next year, and you can plan for about how much money that would be. Kind of moving you to a two-year, at least a two-year budget planning cycle. That's all I got.
So what time do you want to meet tomorrow, sir? Are we going to meet at 10 and talk before, or are we going to be here at 1, and do what they do, and then we talk afterwards a little bit?
Whatever the Board would prefer, I would imagine with them here, you know, that's, I would say it's an hour. If you want, if the Board has time tomorrow afternoon, I would imagine you want to have an hour or two discussion among yourselves, but if you'd like to reconvene at, you know, 1:00 PM, have them at 1:00 PM, and then just after that, continue to meet until you're done, you could certainly do that. And we could, we could close up the day, Melissa could take, honestly, Melissa could take tomorrow morning and finish a couple of federal reports that we were working on, and also make all the changes that you've done to date. And we can let you know at, by 1:00 where we stand, because we've, we have, you know, we've done a few changes in money, so we can tell you up or down where you're at. And I think you're a net down.
My recommendation would be to just meet back at 1:00.
Before we go anywhere, I got a question.
All right, go ahead.
My question is, is yesterday during the audit, I wanted to ask this yesterday, I was ready to go home. The auditor said that we had cash in the bank at the end of 2024 fiscal year, which was last, June, ended last June, 41 million, and that, and of course, you said that that's just available, it's not necessarily unassigned, so, but he made, he makes it sound like it's actually cash sitting in the bank. And earlier this year, we got a report from the Finance Department that said that it was over $51 million in fund balance. So that's, makes me think when that report was generated, that it would be over $50 million cash in the bank. But not all of that is unassigned, it's like business banking. Could we get a report, breakdown of where our money is that's in the bank, and it itemized what is assigned, and where it's assigned to? She's passing that out now.
Is that quick enough?
It's not everything you just asked for, but.
No, it's not.
That's good, Melissa.
You're, actually, I guess it would be page 26.
And that's the audit.
And remember, your audit is, your current audit, your most current audit is June of '24. So your unassigned, and this is from the detail of the audit, which the presentation book he gave you is the presentation book.
That figure there is not even in the audit, per se. That 41 million dollars is just a snapshot of cash and cash equivalents, less your liabilities for that year. It's literally your operating cash that you have. That is, and he calls it fund balance, it's called fund balance, but the fund balance that we're speaking of is what I just passed out to you in this spreadsheet, in the sheet here, which is your available fund balance. And it tells you the different types of fund balances, what can be spent, what can be spent, what's available to appropriate.
But the money that's sitting in the bank that's not available, what's it waiting for? An invoice?
It's, it is. Well, it's a couple of things, it's operational, when you, when you levy taxes on July the 1st with your new tax rate, your taxes don't come in in 12 equal installments over the year, or 12th of it in, you know, July, 12th of July, you know, on like that, it comes in in different periods, you have a big influx in August, people are trying to take care of it, to take advantage of the 2% discount, and you got, got a lot coming in in December for, because they're doing January. So that is operational, it's for cash flow, it's also for emergencies, if we had a disaster that occurred, we'd have cash on hand in order to be able to operate and function providing what we needed.
So more or less, it's the cash that's coming in that's not being spent yet on such things as employee salaries, health insurance, FICA, 401K matches, gas and tires and everything, it's just your, it's just your cash flow operation.
And it's, and it's healthy, and the LGC looks at that number too.
But this, this number at the bottom of here, which does not include this year, that, that is 21 million, that is your unassigned, so we've been talking about fund balance that you can use for anything, so for instance, Hobden High School, or whatever comes in, you have to find 4 million, you can go to that number to get it. And to balance the budget, we're going to that number.
And this number is not actually true because.
It's a year old.
Well, and because the 11 million and a half that was appropriated last year will not actually be 11 million and a half, it would be more like 6 million.
Hopefully, yes.
So we'll actually be saving a little bit of money, so this number should be more like 26.
25, 26.
And that gets me to my next thing. The six cent, looking back at all of this, you know, the, even though over these years, fund balance was appropriated in each year, we never actually used that money, it's always growing. So my concern is, is based on the paper and the, and the projection of where the budget should be theoretically, there's a history of it not actually getting there theoretically. So based on the theory of where the budget is, and where we need to be cash-wise, it sounds like we need six cent. But my concern would be is if we pass a six cent, will all that, will all that do is just continue to increase the available cash balance of the county at the expense of the taxpayer?
In the. Hold on. I just took these off my desktop this morning, because I was like, I won't need that again. The. Let's see if that's not it. That's a budget message. Well. I'll go ahead, and I'll, I'll bring it up, it's in my budget presentation. So one of the things that's happened in past budgets that contributed to you budgeting fund balance that you never used, is you under-reported your revenues.
And you over-reported.
And you over-reported your expenditures. So I haven't, I haven't done that, your revenues are pushed as far as your revenues can go. So you're not going to get more money probably than I've listed. And in terms of expenditures, we've cut. So what is budgeted this year, I actually think that you will spend. Now, I don't think that we'll spend what we budgeted in FY25, so that 11.8 million, like we say, you know, I, half of it, if we, if we don't spend but half of it, then half of it adds to that 21 million, so you would have 26 million, 27 million. But in this year, there's, your revenues and expenditures are tight. So I don't, I don't believe that you'll have more windfall of revenue than I've budgeted, and I, and I think that everything that is listed as expenditures, a lot of it will be spent except for when you have vacancies. And so it may be that if you budget 1.3 million, that you might not, you know, I don't know, will you spend 1.3 million? You might not if we have enough vacancies to take care of that. And there will be some other thing that doesn't get bought probably, or a project that's not completed. I don't, I don't know that, in talking to department heads, there was actually, and there are department heads in the room, so I don't know if you want to verify this or not, but in my mind, a budget is a program of work. So if I put it in this budget, I expect you to do what's in the budget. I don't know that that's always been the case. So I expect, if there are five vehicles, I expect all five vehicles to be bought and put in service. If in the past, it was an expectation that you not, that even if it's in the budget, that you not do it for as long as possible, maybe that's another way that it reverted back.
That, that does make sense, and I realize that the, you know, the county and you have said that the, you know, there's less fluff in the budget, and income was under-projected, and expenses were over-projected, and that makes sense. And that would explain why, based on the 11 and a half million that was appropriated, which is equivalent to 16 cent, how we're able to only need a six cent tax increase with only doing basically 3% cuts across the board, when you average in the money that was increased, like to the schools. Because I know some departments have faced, have experienced more significant cuts, but the total average of cuts is only 3%. So it would appear that the cuts are not as significant as they are because of the increase in school funding, which is a good thing. What I'm trying to get at is, I just want to make sure that the six cent, we, if we pass a six cent tax increase, that it's truly needed, and it's not just going to cause fund balance to continue to grow, and you're, and you may be right, it may not because the budget is tighter, so.
Well, and with all respect, I don't want to be the only person. Well, and, and with all respect, I don't want to be the only person answering that. I, I do want to ask Nancy and Melissa, I mean, y'all have been there before, but I also don't want to really, I don't want to gloss over the fact that you all probably did not have input into past budgeting like you have had this year. But, but if you have anything to add to that, I'll just ask if you have anything to add.
Can I ask y'all a question, see if y'all know this? When I came on the Board of Commissioners, I know how much fund balance was here. Say twenty twenty-three, y'all remember how much fund balance was published? Seems like thirty-three million. We're down to twenty-one in two years. If that gives you any indication of direction we're going. And I think my numbers were pretty close to correct. We had a huge fund balance when I came. Now, with that said, we had a lot of giving from other sources during the time of COVID that increased to that, but we have used it in some directions or some other, some, some means.
Some more or less.
If that helps you some, yes, sir, correct.
So Mr. Crump, in our, in the economic development budget, which has now shifted this one particular account, in the twenty-four, twenty-five budget for the grant back in San Antonio as an example, it was budgeted based on prior year at the tax rate, so it was five hundred and fifty millions plus. Yeah, uh, yeah, five hundred and fifty thousand.
Very good.
And this year is budgeted based off of last year's tax rate. So there, in this, in my, in that budget for mine for the current year, there's about a two hundred thousand dollar, what you would call a windfall, but it's not a windfall. It would be just, it was over-budgeted. That number should have decreased when the tax rate decreased within the budget, if it not. So it created, uh, there'll be, that money added back to the balance at the end. Does that make sense? That's just one example, but I've got no margin on that.
I'm trying to get you to kind of pull it together.
Alan, your historical memory of the fact that when you arrived, fund balance that you were told that was available was greater than what it is being told to us now is available is indication that the county is starting to revert back to where we're not actually padding the fund balance. Whereas from two thousand twenty to when you came on board, it was steadily growing, and then it starts inverting and going back down.
Every, every year up until the, a plan went to effect, there was always millions, there was, there were, there were hundreds of thousands of dollars that were unencumbered, that they used to go into the fund balance. That's how they padded the fund balance. And most of the department heads will tell you that you are allowed to use salary line items at the end of the year to cover. They may, they may let you use the insurance and the dental to move to buy some few things, but like your unencumbered salary line items, that reverted back to the county. Your FICA, your retirement, all that, that went straight back to the county, and that's why they used to build the fund balance over the years.
Which now, if, if, if we have a, and, and we hope, we don't have one, but if we had a major storm come through, you better have some money somewhere.
That's right.
Because we go, I mean, really, you gotta have some money, that's when your fund balance will really get depleted. Am I wrong? I mean, we were probably.
Oh, sure, you'll front it.
We're gonna get some help, but we gotta do, we're gonna have to spend money upfront first. Now, that's, that's why you want money's there. I mean, I understand the point of it, but, but it's also usable, and we hope it does do enough sum as we cut through each year, which is a good thing. But had it got kind of out of hand to a point, therefore, do you feel like?
These, these slides are what I was looking for and couldn't find a second ago. So this is just from the, the budget presentation. That's your tax base growth, but it's not that you've had that much growth in your tax base. It's that that was the number, according to Jim, in the past, they, they had an extremely conservative reporting of what the tax base was that you're taxing on instead of the full tax base, they didn't report the full tax base. The figure on the right's the full tax base. And instead of ninety-seven and a half percent, they were using ninety-seven percent as your collection rate. And, um, now that's, that's your revenue based on the rate. So that went up nine hundred and fifteen thousand based on the tax base and your collection rate. Your sales tax was also generally under-reported. That, now that is a strong number, so I am hoping that sales keep strong because that is, that is, that's the strongest number I put up there. Here's another reason. They reported twenty-four, twenty-five, your investment earnings were five hundred and fifty thousand. The year before, it was one point seven eight million.
Now, did that, since we're changing the way we're doing it with the fire tax, those investments, that account, the interest that they obtained off of withholding the fire payments to the departments?
No, that, that's literally interest that we earned off of cash, stuff that we have in the bank. A lot of that large number, those two large numbers are from, um, federal funds that we had coming in during COVID, ARPA money, SCIF money.
But none of it was the interest that was on the fire tax money that we were withholding.
I, I don't know the answer.
I mean, we don't, I mean, we don't withhold the fire, we, we pay it every month. And then once it's earned that following month, the only thing that's left over is the little bit of the fund balance that we pay out on December thirty-first.
You're talking about when they would issue a bud, submit a budget, the difference in the budget and the tax received? That we would give them the budget money, not the full amount? From the budget?
Whereas now, we're going to be giving them their budget upon collection. We're not going to be holding on this one, so we'll be collecting the interest on this place.
We have, we, there's a little bit of a, I don't know if it's a miswording or a misunderstanding, but we've not held the fire department's funds. They get the taxes for, that are earned in, or paid in July, they get them in August. The, on July, um, for the regular property tax, they get paid on August the tenth. For vehicle tax, they get paid on August the twentieth. The only thing that's held is anything in excess of their budget. So their budget was two hundred thousand, so you're talking about that part.
Yeah, that's what I'm talking about.
Um, potentially, I don't know, I'd have to look.
I was just, I mean, it may not impact them up, I'm just wondering how much play there was.
I, I don't.
There's not a significant amount, most departments do meet their, their budget, but there, there are some that don't. There's a few this year that I don't think are going to meet their unexpected revenue because the payments just didn't come in.
In regard to what you were talking about, if you're going to, and I'll bring my computer on, I'll show you how you get to it from up the spreadsheet, but the local government, the local government commission has a comparative database where you can compare its account to other jurisdictions, and you can see the undesigned fund balance and the other stuff, to kind of give you an idea. The local government commission was eight percent.
Eight percent.
As per recommendation. And all this comes about from the nineteen twenty-nine stock market crash. Make sure that you have enough money in hand.
In case you got a crash.
For those two months of operation to move forward. And that's why a lot of the municipalities were able to remain solvent even during undetected times. But with us being a coastal county and remaining at that eight percent, we're at a dangerous level of being in a catastrophic situation, which we're due for. Those hundred-year floods come through every five years now, so.
But just consider what happened in the mountains, the flooding, unprecedented, unheard of.
So it's, I mean.
Any more good news?
I think there is, but, but, I mean, it's just like, I know at one time, a local municipality had fallen to thirty-seven percent. So, yeah, I mean, each one does things different.
The town of Roseboro has a hundred percent.
Hey. Yeah, I mean, you're talking about it.
Maybe they don't have to raise taxes for over your naked header budget. But that's not necessarily good for the taxpayer.
That's true.
I agree. You have to be careful with the bear, they're very, very violent.
Yeah, it's about, because if you, if you don't have enough and then you do have a catastrophe, what are you going to do?
Yeah.
Now, this, this is what we showed that we had told, um, department heads early on. We told them the estimated situation. This is from a couple of months ago, I guess. The estimated general fund usage, we thought would be four and a half, five and a half million. So what we just talked about, estimated July one twenty-five general fund, twenty-six, twenty-seven. So if you start out at twenty-six, twenty-seven and you're using for the following year, you're only using one point three, then, then that does give you some wiggle room, especially if in a year from now, you have to go into, uh, an estimated increased fund balance appropriation of, of some amount of money that's still, you know, still not five, six, seven million dollars, but you do have wiggle room that you can use to balance above the tax base. And, and you could also, by the way, you could also, if you have twenty-six million dollars, um, any amount of money that you want to increase from, and I, I said this as part of the options in that same presentation, uh, if, if you wanted to use fund balance instead of property tax base, one penny on the, one penny on the tax base is seven hundred and four thousand dollars. So every seven hundred and four thousand in fund balance is not one penny on the tax rate. But you, you do have, you do have some flexibility there.
Well, I just don't want to cut the proposed tax rate unless we're absolutely sure that the fund balance is not going to continue to grow because if it's, if it's going to, if it's going to start declining, as Alan is pointing out, that he feels like it is, and we don't do the six, six cent, and then we, we come up two years later and be like, you know, we shouldn't have done six cent, we happen to do another two cent now, and we'd rather do it all at one time than. Like you suggested yesterday, it's possible that we could get by until the next revaluation and then not do revenue neutral, and then technically it wouldn't be a tax rate increase. But it would be.
Don't, don't come over here with me. Slide back.
I mean, technically, it would not be, but it's a difference in revenue.
Yeah, it is a difference in revenue. Technically not a tax rate increase. I don't know, it's.
There's lots to consider.
Yeah.
There really is. And I like it that we're talking about it and we're looking for all angles because that's what we've got to do.
What bothers me about it, and this is, this is really a conversation for the outside of this room, but, you know, I'm a, I'm a, I believe in limited government spending. It just really bothers me the idea that I have to raise taxes. But also, I'm a practical person and I believe in financial responsibility.
I agree.
I, I was, we, we got to get it, Mo, and it really.
Well, I mean, I, I want you to all remember together, I mean, you know, you will have twenty-six, twenty-seven million dollars based on our estimates. And these are just estimates. We haven't, we haven't finished everything out. It'll be, it'll be a while before you know exactly where you ended up in this year that we're in right now. And certainly, if it's twenty-eight million, twenty-nine million, that just means you're in better financial position. But you do have latitude of use of fund balance and the tax rate increase or not. I mean, it's entirely, it's entirely what, what you choose to do. But at twenty-six, twenty-seven million, could you do two million? Could you do two and a half? Absolutely. Uh, next year, depending on what's on the screen now, I believe that, that you will need to use an, you know, you'll have another appropriation of fund balance. So, but still, you're starting at one point three million, you're not starting at eleven point eight million. I, I, I'll tell you, I haven't worried so much about what your fund balance is as I've worried about how close can I get recurring revenues to recurring expenditures. That's, that's really it. People, we can argue all day long about fund balance and whether it's, there are someone in the public right now that's saying, your available fund balance is thirty-seven million dollars? What are you worried about? Or, or the sheet that Melissa tossed out, for, I mean, for the benefit of the people listening, fund balance available, then you've got non-spendable, then you've got restricted fund balance, then you've got committed fund balance, you've got assigned fund balance and unassigned fund balance. And the unassigned fund balance is what I look at as, it's ready right now, what do you want to do with it? But none of the fund balances mean anything if incoming revenues are so out of touch with outgoing expenditures. It's the same as in your house.
That's true.
So if, if you look at that for next year, what, whatever you want to do next year, add that to your natural growth, which is probably around six hundred thousand a year in natural tax-based growth because of new houses and new stores and stuff like that. And, uh, and add, add whatever estimated increased fund balance appropriation that you have to that.
The big thing that really scares me, we know we've got several major capital projects that are going to be halting us on the horizon, the replacement of the radio tower. That's going to be every bit of two million dollars. So, I mean, if we, if we do have any that comes in, we can obligate it to the capital fund to save up, get it up to where that radio tower. Because that's going to have to be done to ensure communication systems.
And it's not right for us to continuously to go to the state and the federal government asking for handouts when it's our responsibility to do some of it ourselves. I mean, we want to get all we can from the state and the federal government and any other grant agencies, but at the same time, we're obligated to, to raise taxes ourself and to provide the basic services that we're responsible for.
Eventually, if, if you go, there's, I mean, just call it like it is, there's only so many times you can go to Senator Jackson.
Yeah.
And, uh, and Representative.
Brisk.
Brisk. I would save that time for when you really, really need it. I honestly, I don't, I don't think I ever would have told the superintendent last year, you need a new Sampson middle school roof, go see the senator. I mean, this, it's a, it's a county building that has a leaking roof that you can walk in and see that it's leaking, no one's lying about leaking roofs. So I would, I would save that call to the legislative delegation for when your courthouse finally is about on its last leg. And it's not a one or two or three million fix, it's a seventy-five million fix. And you say, we need ten, fifteen, twenty, um, something like that. Get, go after the big stuff. Ms. Chairman, I know it's three eighteen, you've had, you've had a day. I, I do want to tell you that, um, Ms. Dillman had, had some, some things that she wanted to talk about in terms of overall HR. If, if you, we had planned on going till four, you have a few more minutes. If, if you would like to hear her talk about overall HR in the county, we could do that and then end the day. Uh, or you can end it right now and, but if we do that and we reconvene at one o'clock with Boards of Education, that would be something that you need to talk about tomorrow.
I'd say listen to her now.
Kind of hometown way, if you don't, I'm here.
Nancy, will you talk about overall?
Yeah, can we take a five-minute break?
Yeah.
Give me, he said he needs a break. Five-minute break or we'll have to come.
So, Ms. Chairman, the, the question at break was about, um, the tax rate increase. Just one thing, there's a couple of different parts of it. Uh, there's recurring, there's built-in recurring, and then, uh, well, everything's recurring, but if it's six cent, two pennies was for the current operational budget of the school system. And that's, that is, that would be two pennies telling the public it's for public education, and it would roll directly into operational budgets and will keep on going for a long time. One penny was not going to the school system, but it was for public education, and that was capital expenditures, so we were just putting money aside for ourselves. So that one is more flexible in my mind. A half a penny was for our own cap, our own county buildings, and that was for ourselves, just putting money aside, so that one's also flexible. So a penny and a half are pretty flexible. Then two, what, two other pennies, one penny for cars and one penny for ambulances. Uh, and then a half a penny was for the community college capital outlay. Now, just remember, I cut all the community college capital, which was two fifty. So if you cut the, the, the penny, half a penny for the community college, that was a recurring annual thing, so you, you, you would need to put, you need to put that back in the community college budget. Now, if you cut a half a cent for county public buildings, then that's just paying ourselves, that's just setting money aside. And if something happened, we would go into our fund balance anyway. So, so that's not, that's not a revenue, or that's not expenditure you would have to put back in. So, um, just know that you, you do have access to fund balance. And, but, but how you set the tax rate and the fund balance, the, the taxes are different, different, for different purposes. So anyway, just, just something to, to keep in mind. I'm sorry, there was a question at break.
You're good. Commissioners, thank you for allowing me to speak to you this afternoon, and thank you for your patience because you've heard a lot. And I think what you've heard from every department is the same theme. And what I've heard from you all is to quote, I'm glad we're. glad we're finally moving forward. We're moving forward. We're moving forward." And we are moving forward. How many of you know the mission, vision statement for Sampson County Government?
I've read it before, but I can't remember it off the top of my head.
And I wouldn't expect you to, it's about this long. I can't remember, but please bear with me a moment. Sampson County is an inviting community, renowned for its rich agricultural heritage, abundant natural resources, economic prosperity, and unparalleled quality of life. Working with integrity and fiscal prudent Sampson County local government will partner with its citizens to create and sustain a safe, healthy, and prosperous community which affords all of its citizens the opportunities, resources, and services they need to protect or to enhance their lives. And that's a lot of nice words. I don't know when the, the mission statement came about, but it's like you said, none of us really remember all of those words, but we're charged with that. We've talked about our taxpayers and protected our tax base, and none of us want higher taxes, all of us want to provide quality services. I've sat here with each of you and heard the passion in each department head. I think you've heard the same message from all of them. We've cut as deep as we can go and still provide services. Well, HR's customers are internal. We have to support our employees so that they can go out and do the forward-facing. Just to give you a little history for, if you don't know, we didn't have an HR department until they did a salary study in 2014, and one of the results of that salary study is, how can you not have a HR department? We had a one lady payroll person who juggled 14 balls, and when I came here, everybody told me how they couldn't get in to see her, and she would snap at them. Well, I understand, woman couldn't do everything she was doing, and how she held it together as long as she did, I don't know. But we've expanded that so that we are looking at our workers' comp program, and we're cutting down on our response time, and we're cutting down on our claims and on the amount of claims. We're putting in a safety program, we're doing safety training, we're doing online training for all our employees, we're improving processes, we're moving to online services, and all this takes time and effort to do, and it's not just in HR, it's throughout. But I want to give you, if you will bear with me, a little overview about my clients, our clients, your employees. Out of all our employees, 48% of them have been with us less than five years. Now, we talked about the training and cutting out the budget, and you heard all about that. 48% have been here less than five years. So 5.26 is kind of the median. That tells me we got a lot of turnover. Right now, I have 21 vacancies. Y'all helped me with that because I was averaging about 40, but we cut 20 of them. So our vacancy rate went down immediately, so thank you for that piece. But we're averaging 21 vacancies. When they did the salary study in 2014, they made a lot of changes, and the whole purpose of a salary study is they take all of our positions, they take all of our job descriptions, they look at the pay grades, they look at the salary range, and they compare them to like counties and to the surrounding counties. And we get to choose the 10 counties we want to. And they look at them to say how we compete and compare across all angles, and then they assign a pay grade to those positions, and they come up with a salary scale, a mid, minimum, a midpoint, and a median, a maximum. And when I came here, we had a hiring rate, and we pulled everybody in at that hiring rate, and they had to stay there six months until they completed their probationary period, except for our LEOs had to do a whole year. And then we moved them to the minimum. Well, what we found out is people around us did away with that hiring rate, and they were able to bring people on and for six months go ahead and pay them that minimum rate. So we got behind because they implemented that pay scale over four years. I came here in the middle of it, and it was a nightmare trying to figure out and juggle who did what, where, when. So as a result of having to stretch it out over four years and make those changes because the county couldn't afford it otherwise, pardon me, there were some other things done. We increased contributions to 401K. We did away with post-employment health benefits for our retirees at a certain cutoff. We did away with longevity, and that's being phased out, and it's come way down. We have less than 100 employees now that they receive longevity. As a matter of fact, right now, we have seven employees with more than 30 years of service, and six of them have more than 35 years of service. We have 22 employees that are between 25 and 29, we have 39 with 20 to 24 years, and we have 24 employees with 15 to 19 years. So these are the 92 employees that receive a longevity check on the first Friday in December, and that is to pay them for their loyalty to the county and their years of service. This is a longstanding government action that has been phased out. Local governments phased it out, state government, because you're rewarding people for time in the seat rather than personal contributions, and it, it was in place for a long, long time. But most people are phasing it out now or not funding it to the level we did. So we're down to 92 employees, so that's a reduction every year for what that's costing us. But because we did not maintain the results of that 2014 salary study, which the county paid for and implemented and stretched out, we found ourselves facing another salary study in 2023. So we paid for two salary studies within that same time. As a result of that, we were able to provide a 4% increase, and we adjusted, anytime you do a salary study, it readjusts all your pay scales. And we did that across the board. There were some areas that we had to go back and revisit, and we got it right, and we're on par. And at that point in time, we kind of surpassed all of our surrounding counties. We've always been neck and neck with Duplin. We've never been able to compete with Johnston and Harnett. They've got much more coming in as far as resources. But with the salary study, it put us in a good place, that we were able to be competitive and our hiring challenges were reduced at that point in time. Okay, so we did, that was a 4% raise, and then this past year, we did a little bit to movement to the midpoint, because the goal is we want every employee within the 10 years, first 10 years they're moved into a position to reach the midpoint and hopefully go beyond. But every time you implement a COLA, the midpoint moves. Everything moves with a COLA, your whole pay scale adjusts. So our goal was to move these folks. Last year, we did a movement to the midpoint, and then we did the one and a half percent COLA, but we delayed it six months. It didn't take part until January. So take into account, we're only a year and a half into our new COLA that the county paid for. Got it? Okay. All right, that's an investment, that's an investment for our employees, that's an investment in our future, that's an investment where we're going with our position. So now, with the one and a half percent and delayed, it's like, hmm, what's going to happen? Because surrounding counties last year implemented 2% to 4% COLAs. They didn't quite catch up with us, but they almost did. Right now, what's being proposed, just so you know what's out there, statewide, it's recommended a 3.1% COLA statewide, with 45% of those municipalities and counties also implementing some form of merit pay. I don't like the word merit, that's old school too. I like performance-based for certain employees, but you have to have some kind of measurement to do that. We haven't established that here yet, I'm hoping we can get there. However, Harnett County, we can't compete with Harnett necessarily, but you need to realize, in the back of this building, we have three Campbell graduates who live on the Sampson-Harnett line. They could go anywhere, anytime. Harnett County is adding 21 new positions, a 3% COLA, and a one and a half percent performance pay. This is what's recommended. Now, we know it's not adopted yet. Cumberland County, right now, no COLA, but they're doing a one-time stipend because they have just implemented a new pay plan, so they're just on the back tail of that. Johnston County is adding 16 new positions to emergency services, 12 to DSS, three to health, two to communications, one, new building inspector, they're doing a pay adjustment in July and a performance adjustment later in the year. They're already way ahead of us. That's where, when we lose paramedics, they go to Johnston County. Lenore County, who is one of our comparison counties as far as population and income, is proposing a two and a half percent COLA, they're adding seven positions. Granville County, also one of our comparison counties, 2% COLA plus 4% merit paid for a pool. We now pay more for telecommunications, social workers, and detention officers than Granville, so we're still going to be in pretty shape, same shape with them. Duplin County, 3% COLA, two and a half percent merit, and they're absorbing the additional cost for their employees' health insurance. They're not passing that on to employees. Sampson County did that my first four years here. Anytime there's increase, we absorbed it before we passed it on. Wayne County is adding six full-time employees, two part-time, in emergency services and aging, 3% COLA, and targeted raises based on their salary plan they just completed. Fayetteville is in the midst of a public safety comprehensive salary study, and they've set aside 114 million for police and fire, 4% midpoint compensation, 1% addition to the 401K, 17 new positions. Pender County, where our new county manager's coming from, they are adding 16 new positions, four LEOs, four detention, one IT, seven in utilities, they're proposing a 3% COLA and a one, for their hard-to-fill positions, they're reclassifying them so they can give them greater raises, and they're doing a one-step increase for employees who were hired previous to 7-1, 2024. I give you that information because the more information you have, the better decisions you can make. I've sat here and listened to us talk about a COLA next year, a COLA next year, a COLA next year. Right now, we're in good shape. As soon as these budgets are adopted, assuming they're adopted with these pay increases, we're going to be losing employees. We're going to be losing social workers, most of our social workers don't live in this county now. They come from other places. We train them, we recruit them. You heard Patty talk about how long it takes to get one up to par before they can release them with their own paperwork and the liability we incur when we are releasing those. They're coming from out of county here now. You let these pay raises go forward, and we've already got them trained, they're gone. Our paramedics, they go to Johnston County. Now, I will say, some of them come back, the grass ain't always greener just because of money, but that's where we lose them too. When we've got that many employees who live in Dunn or on the county line, we're going to bleed employees to Harnett County, and there's not going to be the ones that you want to leave. It's going to be your brightest and your best, and then we're going to be backfilling again. But for our hard-to-fill positions, our LEOs, our detention officers, our social workers, our nurses, and our inspectors, you heard Devin sit here this morning and talk about, we have three brand-new inspectors and one vacancy we can't fill, so we've only got one seasoned inspector right now. Our surrounding counties, our larger cities, only require their inspectors to be qualified in one area. It might just be plumbing, it might just be electricity, it might just be building. We require all of it, so it takes longer to get them to a level three to pay them more. I'm not saying we should duplicate that model, I'm just saying inspectors are hot commodity right now, and what they're doing in a lot of places is they work here all day, and then they go moonlight for another county or another city on their day off and make even more money. What has allowed us to keep our inspectors, and we were in good shape for so long, is the flex schedule, and we allowed them because they could go do things on their day off. And we've got two that just retired, and one came back and helped in short term, but he's not interested in doing any longer, don't know about the other one, but we're going to be on bond there. Those are our hard-to-fill competitive positions. We have four department heads that could retire today. When I'm telling you all this, we've also got a training and development issue. We did leadership development in 2019, it was very well received. We contracted with UNC Wilmington, they came here monthly, met with our department heads. I don't think you'll find a negative comment, all of our feedback was positive. We gelled, we developed relationships, and we understood what each other was doing and how we might best support that. We had graduation in Wilmington in a culminating event the last weekend in February of 2020, and we shut down with COVID less than two weeks later. All that went right out the door. Half of those people aren't here anymore. We've got to develop the leadership within. We developed, last year, with your permission, we implemented the career ladder for paramedics. You've approved the one for telecommunications. We haven't been able to move telecommunications, you heard how little experience they have. But with our paramedics, we have been able to move them to paramedic one, two, and three level. That's helping us with retention, it's developing some supervisory skills, but we've got to develop our next wave of leaders. We've got to develop the skill sets that we want to see in people. AI is here, it ain't going away. I'm struggling, I'm, I'm, I'm not a natural native learner, but I am working with it. But it's going to change the way we do business. We've moved away from paper payroll checks or pay advices, that's been wonderful, finances making a dive into doing purchase orders online. We're going to be doing our time sheets, timekeeping online so that we're not doing all this paper. There's going to be new ways to do things, but we've got to prepare our folks. We can't just hand them a pen anymore and expect them to know what to do. So we've got a young workforce, and they're willing and they're able, but they don't have the institutional knowledge. We've got to grab that out of the folks that are getting ready to retire, we've got to prepare our young people, and then we've got to give them a reason to stay. You look at income and expenses, I'm looking at recruitment and the cost of business and how I fill these vacancies. I can tell you the quality of what I've got. As an example, you heard Rick talk about, we cut one of his positions at emergency services, we got one left. We had 50 applicants for that position. Five of them were qualified, and this is an entry-level clerical position, not entry-level, we did require some experience. So even though we get some interest, we're not just going to backfill a position, and anytime a department head comes to me and says, I'm losing somebody, before we fill it, we talk about, well, what skill sets are you missing? How can you realign your work and, and change your workaround so that we get what you need? Is there somebody we need to reclassify? Do we need to look at the duties and how they're structured? So we don't just backfill positions, but that takes time and effort, and then you've got that vacancy sitting there any longer. Sheriff's Office has a place, has it in place, and, you know, Mr. Pope could speak more to that, but they have a system for their training and logging, and it's pretty, it works well, it's paramilitary, but it works well for them, and we need all of our leadership to be able to understand what they need, what they need on the back end, how we're preparing. If we don't start some succession planning, we're going to be in worse shape than we are better shape. So we've got to get good people in here, and when we find talent, we've got to grab it, and then we've got to utilize it, and then we've got to make sure we're doing that training and we're spreading it around. But if we do not offer a COLA this year, and believe me, I feel your pain, but if we do not do something this year, this conversation's going to be a lot more difficult a year from now, because this, these employees are not going to wait a year on a promise that something may be coming. They don't have to. They have opportunities, they have options, and I just did not want to sit here without saying, please put that foremost in your minds. It's either we're going to pay now, or we're going to pay in recruitment and onboarding and training and replacing them, and then we're right back to being a meal for whoever hires them out from under us. But this is what's going on around us, so we've got to be responsive to meet the needs of our citizens, and I've got to be forthright in telling you the needs of our employees and what we're dealing with daily. I know where they're going. Everybody's not old like me and don't want to move. There are some folks that can move, and they look at those possibilities and they embrace them. So thank you for listening to me, I'm glad to answer any questions, but I wanted you to be aware of where we are with our employees.
The pay plan was implemented in July of 2023.
Three.
And then you had a COLA in January of 2025.
We implemented the pay plan, actually, in November of '23 is when we put it in, and then we had a bump in January, and then we did get a COLA in, we had a little movement to the midpoint last year, I don't remember the percentage, and then we got the one and a half percent COLA this past January.
So the employees have had a COLA this year, and if we delay a COLA until June, July of 2026, which would be fiscal year '27, that would be an 18-month timeframe between?
Yes, sir.
One COLA the next, and I get it, I mean, I worked, I worked eight years at $7.75 an hour. Had a daughter, my wife worked as a CPA, she made more money than I did, but I was working for a family business, it was easier to justify in my mind, but it's still, it's still just kind of. was easier to justify in my mind, but it's still, it's, it's still just kinda, doesn't sit well with me that, that COLAs have to be obligated every year, every year, every year. Uh, but I get that you're competing with other people.
That's right.
Uh, but...
And we're looking at partnerships. We talked with Devin about inspectors. We have actually gone to the community college and met with their buildings program about how might, because there isn't anywhere local that's, that's offering the courses for our building inspectors. They have to travel to Ashboro, Newburgh, wherever the courses are offered. So we have met twice with the community college, with Barney there, and what can you do that would set Sampson County, Sampson Community College partner, bring these people here for the training? And then we're local. We haven't had any success yet, but I'm hopeful. So we're trying to look at those partnerships for how we might better support our employees and, and bring training to them instead of sending them there. But, you know, we're gonna have to grow our own and we're gonna have to be able to incentivize young folks to stay.
You, you're very right because when they're young and they have that opportunity, funds make a difference more than anything.
They do. And then you look at right now, the generations we've got working here and those days off mean a lot to a lot of people. The money talks and we're worried about today, we're not so worried about what you're gonna do today. A lot of young folks don't believe there's gonna be a retirement system for them, so they want their money now and they'll decide what to do with it. And they do like days off and they, they want that work-life balance we hear about all, all the time. So what appeals to them's not necessarily what appeals to other folks.
I mean, when I was coming through, it was all about your retirement and what you were getting and how much you build up. And now if you talk to a kid about what you're gonna pay them right now, they don't worry about later on, they don't worry about tomorrow, it's what can I get today? I mean, I, I'm gonna hire people every day, so.
One of the things I wanted to mention to Rick earlier and I forgot to mention it because I think somebody else asked a question and it threw me off, but I wanted to throw out there an idea that at some point, I know it's probably not now, but at some point, the county's gonna have to figure out how to use AI to do the nine-one-one calls because AI's gonna be able to replace the telecommunicators. When they call in, AI immediately dispatches the call to the right place. Uh, I know that's not immediate, but that's coming and they need to be...
And not just there, there will be lots of opportunities. Yes, sir.
Opportunities to use AI.
And then as we embrace more technology and embrace better ways, then you have new opportunities because you don't need as many employees. And so it's easier when you don't have as many to offer more to those folks. But that's where that training and becoming comfortable and understanding the ramifications of what we're doing. So we're evolving, but you're exactly right, that is down the road.
It's coming quick.
But I just, I felt like you needed to have that piece in front of you to know what your current workforce looks like, to know what our recruiting challenges are, to know what surrounding counties are doing, to understand, we've made this investment twice, um, but if we don't keep it current, you know...
We'll be back in the same mode.
We will be.
Let's say expected turnover in the, I'm throwing in, I'm throwing it through, I know.
Yes, sir.
Expected turnover in the next six months, which they just like were right now.
If we have no COLA.
If we have no COLA, you're prepared to be, I know they're talking to the community, so.
You're gonna bleed DSS workers, you're gonna lose some more nurses. I, I dare say you'll lose an inspector, um, and you're gonna lose some deputies.
We gotta be realistic. We gotta, I mean, because what's gonna happen is if, if that happens, then you're gonna have all those people who said, go ahead and don't Band-Aid me right now, go ahead and do what you have to do for the county, are gonna come back and say, well, we told you. And you have those that are, that are just focused on nothing but budget and their money and their household and they don't want us to do anything. They don't, they're not worried about the people who work for the county. I mean, I'm being honest.
Yes.
It's, it's, it's a, it's a line that we're juggling and I think y'all would understand that, but, um...
And we're not gonna please them all.
Yeah, there's no way. So to that, I'm saying that we all just somehow tonight, think about where all you're at and what we're doing, the direction we gotta go in. And so you're looking, I'm gonna just say, you're talking about probably a sixteen percent increase turnover? I don't know where that number come from, but that's the number I got in my head.
I'm not good at percentages, but let me add one more caveat to it because we add the sheriff's department in and their ability to retire at fifty-five and to draw their special separation, that, that tsunami's already started as well and there's several that are gonna fall right in there. So they're gonna experience some seniority turnover coming pretty quick, um, that's gonna impact too. When you're putting young deputies on the road and they're having to cover, now, we're fully staffed with detention officers right now. We got four deputy positions at the moment and a captain. But yes, sir, it, it, as percentage-wise, I don't know, but I can tell you it's gonna be a severe uptick because these folks can go and they're already being recruited.
So either we propose two percent...
Three percent COLA and a two and a half percent merit and pick up the healthcare costs. And I would tell you, I called Duplin County, I, I try to maintain relationships with all of our, um, HR directors throughout because we share and we've got an online listserv, but I called around to get the information and Duplin wouldn't tell me. She's like, I can't release that. That was last week. So I kept going back and I thought, okay, they got to release it by June. So I, I was able to pull it off the, the internet this morning, but, um, she wouldn't even tell me what they were talking about.
You shared this earlier, the COLA at two percent's valued at roughly six hundred and fifty thousand dollars.
Every, every one percent is, just round it to three thirty-nine.
Three thirty-nine.
It's three thirty-eight and change, so round it to three thirty-nine for every one percent.
For one percent.
Yes, sir.
And Nancy, you did say we're close right now.
Right now, we're, we're good.
We're good.
But when they kick in these three percents all around us...
July one, July one, you're out. They, they increase and we don't.
We are. What time? I'm, uh, I don't understand where they are because I was here. I have retired and my retirement check is not enough to pay, to help take care of me. I have to do a part-time job to do that. And God forbid that it happens to anybody else, to other people. I don't, I didn't, I don't know how much the county had then, never asked them, but I know evidently I wasn't making enough to get a decent retirement check right now. And that's not a good place to be in because I started back in eighty-nine. That's been centuries ago. Still, I worked up until twenty-one, twenty-one. I should've been making something then, but everything I did. So I didn't complain. I stayed here and worked because I wanted to be here. I didn't wanna go anyplace else. I loved it here. I love my job. And that's why I didn't complain about it because I knew that what I was making was not gonna give me enough money to retire. But at the same time, I wasn't expecting my husband to die and I'm gonna lose his income to, as well as mine. So you just be, and see, they, like me, they don't know what they're gonna be when they retire. They don't know what situation they're gonna be in.
And we can't see the future.
No, no, but I could, but they're...
And I know you've got lots of decisions to make and lots of things to do, but this is one more piece of the puzzle. We want them to be providing customer service. Well, you know as well as I do, if I'm gonna be giving my best customer service, I gotta feel good about where I'm working and we've got to train and provide that support for our folks better than we are.
I, I just had a financial meeting with sixty teachers. And I brought in a financial person to talk to them. There's so many teachers that takes their funds, have to pay for class, and they're saying, I don't have enough money to put into savings. That's why I brought the guy in. One lady, sixty-nine, said, I'm still working. I wish I would've heard this twenty years ago. And, and the young people that was there, now, the thing is, they didn't talk about leaving. They're just saying what I did, that it would be nice to have an income that I wouldn't have to go anywhere. They didn't say they wasn't leaving anything, but that's where, I don't know where, where they would be at with that, but that's the part where the young people are. If they love it here, they stay, but...
Well, that's the way we all are. We wanna, we wanna feel appreciated, we wanna feel valued and we want some work that gives us purpose. You know, we really haven't done anything about employee appreciation since I've been here. We did away with the, uh, retirement plaques during COVID because we weren't meeting in person, um, but to, to acknowledge the value of what they bring to bear, to know that we are a competitive marketplace for folks, that we're a good choice, and then to provide some leadership in-house or what you've heard them say, just to go somewhere to hear how it's done elsewhere. If you've never been anywhere else, you don't know there are other options. You don't know there's better ways. That networking is invaluable in anything we can do. But to let our folks know that we're gonna remain competitive and that we're gonna be a good place to work, um, that's what we're working for every day. So I just wanted you to have that other piece because you've heard a lot. You've heard a lot about needs, you've heard a lot about wants, you've heard about cuts and then you're gonna hear from the public, we don't want taxes raised. I don't want taxes raised either, but there's a cost associated with everything. And so where do you pay?
Me and Ms. Leith have been over at Dupin County, I'm a legal, I'm a legal's job. When I got ready to walk out of there, and a hand took me, I'm going back, he patted me and he says, uh, that's what you didn't know. He said, we appreciate everyone that comes across this line to work in Dupin County. And then he patted me again, he said, and we're gonna do everything we can do to keep them.
That's what he said?
That was their county manager. Had his hand on my shoulder, he patted me very nicely and he told me he appreciated what, who we sent him to work in Dupin County. And he appreciated it. He says, and I'm gonna let you know, I'm gonna do what we can to keep everyone of them.
Retrain them?
So letting y'all know that you, that those people are not gonna quit and they're not gonna go anywhere. So it's just, it's just a fine line, I know it.
Ms. Chairman, I know you talked earlier about one o'clock. In light of this discussion and the discussion that y'all have to have, if, if you're with the school assistant board of education from one o'clock to say two-thirty, three o'clock, will you have enough time tomorrow to have the conversations that you need to have about all of this or should you come in earlier?
I'd do it at ten o'clock. But I, he said we might as well do it at ten o'clock. Y'all agree with him?
Well...
We got somewhere to be.
It sounds good. Yeah, I don't think so. I think we're good.
Uh, we'll be in here at ten, we'll just break at twelve. Everybody go eat what they want to, meet their wives what they want to do. That way you can, we're about done, we'll get our lunch. Everybody kinda do their thing and, uh, we'll go for it. Is that fair?
Yes, sir.
Ten o'clock, you good? And we're gonna...
I put two o'clock.
We'll change it to ten. Just, just take all this stuff and information that we've got and, uh, everybody was born to understand that I appreciate what you're doing. Some comments you make, I've, I've, you've asked me to be the chair and I appreciate it and it's for me to be in the middle and keep us all balanced and I hope that's what I'm doing. And, uh, and I appreciate what all you guys are doing, I really do. So, and everyone who spoke, I appreciate it and I appreciate what you've been for too. Um, but now we need to keep moving forward for this county and its employees and I understand that. I, I think everyone knows that this board is gonna do it best. That much I feel good about.
And it's a recess, sir, not in a German.
I got it. We are going to recess till tomorrow at ten.
We need a motion.
Well, before we make a motion, I'd like to say, when we were having our little brief